Okay, we're going to start our workshop portion of the evening here at five minutes after the hour, and we're going to go until about 20 minutes, and then start our regular meeting. We're going to make a slight shift in our agenda and move an application for a certificate of appropriateness up to 7:20 or thereabouts, and then we'll move into our regular agenda. So with that, I think, John, you had some information on the Dutchess County Housing Needs Assessment that you thought you'd share with the group here?
Yes. When we talked last time about the sort of things we should be looking at in the workshop, this came up. Affordable housing seems to be the hottest topic around Beacon, and it happens that the Dutchess County updated their housing needs assessment just earlier this year. And so if you haven't seen the presentation, this is their official presentation. I didn't make this up. I stole it off the Internet. Or at least, I edited it down. They had too many slides, but I made a shortened version of it so that we could go over their basic findings and recommendations, and then we could have a discussion from there if we have time. So Housing Needs Assessment's countywide, it looks at the existing housing stock and existing census figures and trends, and then tries to anticipate future demand and come up with recommendations. So they had sort of five or six basic findings. First, population is leveling out in Dutchess County, which is unusual. If you look at the chart, it's been going up and up and up, and all of a sudden in the last 10 years, it plateaued, and they expect that to continue to slow down. And the reason is, if you look at the right side, is that even though the number of households have been going up and up and up, the population per household has been going down and down pretty precipitously. In Beacon, it's gone down 12%, 13% in the last 20 years, the number of people per household. We have a lot more single-family couples, households without children, so we have elderly population, so we have a lot of houses that are relatively empty compared to what they were 20, 30, 40 years ago. And so even though we have more and more houses being built and apartments being built, they're being populated by much fewer people, and so therefore our housing population has plateaued, just like Dutchess County. We're basically flat from 2000 in Beacon. And it's hard to imagine because you think, well, it's such a bustling city, but in terms of population, it's leveled off. The other thing is that we're seeing an aging of the population. That's another function of how the household size has been going down because we have a lot of elderly households, obviously, without children, and a lot of times people are hanging on to their houses longer than they used to. And so we're having a lot of single-family houses in particular that have few people in them and mostly elderly people. So if you look at the graph there, you can see over time, from 2000 to 2019, the growth patterns are in the highest age categories, and the lower age categories, particularly the young school age categories, are going down.
Sorry, John, what do the bars represent, the pink color?
Those are, say, from the 35 to 44 age bracket, it's down 16,000 from 2000 to 2019.
Ah, okay, thank you.
Countywide.
Just hard to read from here.
Yeah, I know. I don't think their graphics were particularly good, but, you know, they were easy to show. If you look on the right, the median age of Dutchess County has gone up and up and up, over 42 years, and, you know, nationally, it's high comparatively speaking to other communities.
The biggest population growth is in the 55 to 64 bracket?
Mike, Mike.
You have to use the mic, Eric.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, yeah, so it looks like the largest population growth is in the 55 to 64 age bracket.
Which surprised me because you would, I would think the baby boomers, which are my age, sort of 65 and up, would be the highest because they tend to be the bulge in the, but I guess some of us are dying out at this age, and so the next layer is the greatest growth.
So that age category, the one you just mentioned, is represented as declining?
Apparently so. It's still above what it used to be, but it's not the highest bulge in the age bracket.
And then, and then there's a, there's a significant drop in growth in the younger age categories. So when you think about, you know, the need for jobs up here, it kind of starts to paint a picture, workforce.
Yes, and school enrollment has been going down steadily, and it's leveled off a couple, in the last couple of years, so we're sort of starting to see sort of a plateau there, too, but it's gone down something like 24% in Beacon since 2005, in terms of school, over school enrollment, so.
But the need for units overall has gone up.
Yes. There's still a demand for units. It's just that the population itself is going down, which isn't necessarily good for business because you don't have a growing population demand for goods, but you have a lot of households. The supply of housing is still dominated, this is Dutchess County, remember, not Beacon, is still dominated by single-family homes. And so if you look at the trends from 2000 to 2019, they're essentially static. People are still up in this area buying and building single-family homes. Now, you do see, in terms of new construction, a larger percentage are larger apartment buildings than there used to be, but overall, it's still pretty much 70% of the new construction units are, are single-family houses. Again, not in Beacon, but in countywide. Incomes have lagged behind housing costs, and that's not surprising. Housing has been going up pretty steadily since the Great Recession, and in particular, over the last three to five years, and incomes are not keeping up, and that's sort of the story everywhere. As a result, there's the bigger gap between what people can afford and what's available. And so if you look on the left, you know, the, the home value just, it does, is way above what the average home income is, and for rents, it's even more pronounced. And so if you look at the right, you can see in 2000, the median affordable rent could pay the median gross rent, you know, that somebody could pay for what's out there on average, and that's been declining ever since. Rents going up, incomes don't match it, and so people's real buying power in terms of particularly the rental market has been declining.
Sounds like a problem.
Oh, it is a problem.
And this, this is current, as if am I reading that right, May 2022, right? So this is very recent?
Yeah. Yes. Now, it was based on apparently 19 numbers, which are estimates, and the 2020 census, which is just coming out now, may change those numbers a little bit because I've always found the estimates to be less reliable, and...
Sorry, less what?
Less reliable.
Reliable.
Yeah, they have a bigger margin for error, and so you can't always rely on the 19 estimates. So, and we haven't got the full census numbers from 2020 to come in. We've got certain basic categories, but not all the detailed stuff that would allow you to update this analysis. I'm surprised they did this analysis and didn't wait for the 2020 census, but... And if you look at where the, where the real discrepancy between the incomes and available units, it's kind of odd. You could expect it at the lower income levels. Certainly the people who earn below $50,000, it's really hard to find housing that you can afford at that price range. But they're also saying, at least they come up with this, and it's kind of strange, I think, is that the highest income brackets, there's not enough units to meet demand. And so therefore, they say, you know, there's, there's not enough luxury units out there to meet the demand for what people want, and so there, the rich people are buying down the lower brackets and infiltrating into the market, and so therefore, it cascades down and then becomes a deficit at almost every income bracket. So their, their, their advice was to build more luxury housing to take care of the high-end market so that they didn't bump down middle class and bid up middle-class housing, and of course subsidize housing for $50,000 and below. And that's on both the renter and the owner's side of the equation. We don't have much sympathy for the rich people who can't buy what they want, right?
I understand what you're saying, though, because if you have people who are looking for a high-end home and they can't find it, so they go and buy a less expensive home and then put a, put an expansion on it or something, but they are taking homes out of a range that would be affordable to a person who has less, and then it's like, it's kind of cascading down, but on the face of it, it sounds, yeah, it's, you know, it makes you smile a little bit when you, you know, the idea of it, but I understand it.
So if you look at cost burdens for renters in particular, and that's based on 30% of your budget should be able to go for housing, and if it's higher than that 30% threshold, then therefore you're considered cost burdened. It starts eating into your food budget and your transportation budget and other things. So if you look at the renters, obviously, especially at the lowest income brackets, 70, 80, 90% of people are cost burdened at that income level. And it's getting worse. From 2000 to 2019, the numbers, the number of, the percentage of cost burdened people at the lower income brackets is going up and up. So to me, this says there's a serious problem here. There's a real mismatch between availability of housing, particularly for families who are earning less than $75,000 or 50, certainly $50,000. There's just not anything out there that you can afford, and so therefore, you're spending 40, 50, 60% of your budget on housing, and you have to really script to make other parts of the household budget work. So if those are the findings, essentially, we're aging, housing has become less and less affordable, what are the recommendations? So the simple one that comes out of this is the greatest level of need is renters earning under $50,000 a year. These are households, so they could be two-person households or single-person households who are earning less than $50,000 a year. They can't afford a place to live. 80, 90% of them can't. So you should focus your energy on providing subsidies and incentives and whatever else you can do to make that cost burden household at $50,000 or less have some options in the marketplace. So that's the first thing. Target 50,000 and under. We'll let the, the highest income bracket take care of themselves. And so they, they did a estimate of the number of households earning less than $50,000, and came up with this number, 2155, are the number of what they called interventions to resolve an existing cost burden. And that can be, they use the interventions not in terms of a substitute for construction, but something to make that house or that rental situation affordable for those people that are earning less than 50,000. And that could be providing subsidized housing, or, for instance, providing more Section 8 vouchers that they can use in the private marketplace. There's a limited number of those out there right now. It's not enough to meet the demand. There's waiting lists and, and difficulty finding landlords who will take Section 8, what's called Section 8, you know, it's called something else now.
And that's, that's out of the whole county. So we have, we have a county with about 300,000 people living in it, so they're saying there's a total of 2,155 households that fall into this category of the most burdened?
Ah!
Or is that, or is that just what they want to target as the?
Yes, I think.
The number they want to target?
The number, you know, I find this number to be incredibly low. Here you've said 80, 90% of the people at those age brackets, and I can't imagine there's only 2,000 people in those, those income categories. And I, and so therefore, let me finish up the recommendations, and then we'll have a discussion about it. Because I find these numbers not nearly justifiable. It seems to me we need a lot more than this. So the, the first thing is they came up with this number over, that's over 20 years. 21,555, 21, 2155. And that means 108 per year countywide, which seems incredibly small, like I spit in the bucket. And then they apply, their second recommendation is to use a fair share approach, which is what they did in the previous Housing Needs Assessment, meaning everybody, all the communities in Dutchess County should take a fair shot at meeting these goals. And so that means spreading it out amongst communities, you know, that, you know, Beacon and Poughkeepsie would have more than Armenia and Dover, but Dover and Armenia, those rural towns, should take a fair share of it. And so these are the numbers they came up with in this report. For Beacon, it's five units a year for 20 years, which seems to me absurd. And I'm also of the opinion that places that have central locations with transit services and walkability and jobs availability, not like Armenia and Dover, but places like Poughkeepsie, Beacon, Town of Poughkeepsie, Town, Town officials should take a larger share of the burden. And they do because they prorate it by population, but it does seem ridiculously small. If you say there's all these thousands of people who, who are cost burdened, it doesn't seem enough to beat the demand. And so I called up the people who put this thing together, not the private consultant, but the county staff who worked on it with them, and I said, what's, what's the story, you know? And, you know, they, they explained a lot of things away, that it's primarily about fair share and everything else. But I compared it to, say, the 2008, '09, which was the previous version of this housing needs survey, and the numbers were much higher in those days, and the need was much less in terms of population. And why are they, you know, lowballing it now? And I think, and this is what, it wasn't, it wasn't what was said to me, this is but what I surmise, or at least I guess, is the reasons why these numbers are low. First of all, they want to put out a low number so that they meet it, and, you know, you don't want to put out high expectations and never meet it. That's what happened in 2008, '09. They put out a housing needs survey, they put a lot of numbers. It was much higher in terms of everybody's target, and the recession came along and nobody met it because nobody built any housing from 2008 to 2012 or so. And so those numbers just went in to report on the shelf, and nobody did anything.
I mean, the, the danger, though, is you, you run the risk of sounding a little tone-deaf when you say we have people who are in a dire situation because they're cost burdened. If we just helped five a year, by 20 years, we could probably get them out, and it's like, who's going to last 20 years, you know, waiting for intervention?
That was my complaint, and I, I still don't believe these numbers. But, you know, this was the official survey. It went through a, you know, vetting process with a steering committee made of local officials. There was somebody who represented, who was on the Beacon City Council, who was on this committee. So I'm still waiting for a good explanation as to why the numbers seem so low. The second reason, so they wanted to have lower expectations because they wanted to be able to convince people to actually make the effort, because it seemed like an easy number to match, right? So that's my sort of first suspicion. The second suspicion, and this is kind of a strange one, but all those baby boomers, people who are 75, are going to come, their houses are going to come vacant sooner rather than later. They're going to age out of all those houses that are sitting with elderly population in them. And there's a lot of them, when you look at it, there's a lot of places, particularly in central locations, that have a lot of elderly population who are holding on to their homes until they can't hold on to them anymore, and that's a bulge in the, in the population. And so they may anticipate that a lot of the housing stock is going to become available, a higher percentage of the housing stock is going to become available as the baby boomers pass on. That's a suspicion, but that's still a slow-motion thing, and the need is great.
So the first, the first thought that I have that would be interesting to me from a pragmatic standpoint, has anybody ever published any kind of numbers on what, and this is maybe sounds a little, maybe too pragmatic and a little bit cold, but has anybody ever published numbers on what sort of population of people working in service-related industry do you need to maintain a city of a certain size? So when you have a city, you have restaurants, shops, stores, you know, and everything that you've got to do to maintain, but, but often these are comparatively lower-paid positions, right? But if you don't take care of those people, provide them with a place to live or a living wage, you've got them driving or busing themselves in from God knows where because they can't afford your standard of living in your environs, right? And I wonder, I wonder if those numbers, if anyone's ever calculated that, how would that compare to the number of people they're saying are in this category that needs an intervention? It doesn't seem like, you know, with 105 households, staff, all of the, you know, minimum wage range or, or $50,000 or lower dollar jobs that you have to keep all those positions in Beacon running?
No. I, I just don't see it. I think we ought to cut it off here, and maybe next time we'll pick it up with a discussion of where we go from here in Beacon, what we make of this, and, and, you know, strategies to go forward.
Yeah, no, this is all very useful, interesting. Be curious to see how it may eventually down the road impact how we look at our zoning. Okay, so with that, we'll open our regular meeting a little bit early. First item of business, having to do with last month's meeting notes. Any feedback for Amanda on any adjustments?
I circulated just a couple of little edits, you know, correcting names.
Okay, and you're in receipt of those, Amanda?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Motion to approve last month's meeting notes?
Motion.
Motion by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, as I mentioned at the start, we're going to shift this agenda just a little bit so that we can address a special request for review of a architectural review. And this is a certificate for, excuse me, certificate of appropriateness for 145 Main Street, right?
Hey, John, I want to mention that there's lots of empty seats before standing.
Oh, yeah, good point. For those of you standing, you may not be able to see, there are a good amount of empty seats, so come on in, make yourselves comfortable. Going to be a long night.
Hi.
Hi, good evening. You know, usually, you did this to yourself. You don't have such an adoring public to present to. It's at the end of the night and everybody's gone. So how are you? And so you have an application for a sign?
Yes.
Before us?
This one.
We do?
Yes.
So this is for hunkamunkas, and you've shared with us a couple of illustrations. So you've got a, so it's a white background with your logo, and then forgive me, is this?
Yeah, so there's two signatures.
This is also part of it?
Yeah, so that would be like a large signature sign, and that's a writer's sign attached because we're the same building, so.
Is this where, is this where colorant used to be?
Yes.
Mike?
Sorry, this is where colorant used to be?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to tap you every time, Kevin. Okay, so we've got a 26-inch deep bracket. This is blade sign style, 18 by 24. What material is, are these two?
I think it's wood. I think it's very hand-painted.
Hand-painted wood?
Yeah. This one's like vinyl, like vinyl detail.
Are these two of the same thing?
They're the same thing.
Okay.
The ones hanging a little bit on, or the?
Yeah, so it's like attached, like a little, like writer's sign.
No, I was just referring to the submission. It's like we have two.
Right, just two signs, right?
Of the same, no, no, two of the same drawing.
One, right.
It's just, yeah, I think I emailed it today.
Yeah.
Not the same.
Yeah.
How thick, how thick is the material, like seen from the side?
I'm not sure. I remember on the form, all the numbers.
Oh, on the form?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that didn't carry?
No, yeah, I don't, there's no, that information's not here.
So one of the, one of the sign is wood, and this one is?
They're both wood, but that one was just hand-painted, and then the bottom one was a vinyl.
Oh, it's a vinyl application.
It's the same, they're the same.
I haven't, he hasn't even made it yet till I got it approved, I guess, so.
Okay, yeah, I mean, the only thing I would say is that...
He did like most of the other signs on the street.
Wood under, you know, harsh Main Street conditions year-round, I don't know how, how successful you'll be with a lasting sign, but if it's an approved material by the building department, I'm just going to accept a motion to approve, unless anybody else has any other questions.
Motion?
Motion by Kevin. JC, do you have a question?
Seconded.
Second by JC. All in favor?
Aye.
You're done. Thank you. And good luck.
No.
Nope?
I think it should be an appropriateness thing.
Okay, thank you. Have a great ni- night. And so in fairness to the second certificate of appropriateness, Jill has made mention of the fact that we might want to, because it may be a long night, address 149 Main Street. Is that applicant here? Let's just get this business out of the way. Okay, well, in that case, we'll then move to our main agenda. First item on the agenda is Beacon Views at Conklin, and we see the applicant here with us. Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Richard Cantor.
Having a hard time hearing you. If you wouldn't mind, really got to power into the mic. Very hard time hearing you.
My name is Richard Cantor.
Thank you.
Sorry. I'm with the firm of Tehan and Constantino on behalf of the Beacon Views applicant. We've been before you for a long time at many meetings. We believe we have at this point provided all of the information that the board and its consultants have requested, made the changes in the project that the board and its consultants suggested. We now contemplate access through the adjoining 13-lot subdivision, which is to be built out. The traffic reports were approved and were just updated by Dr. Greeley. The wetlands and mitigation have been discussed in detail. There's one-to-one mitigation on-site. There's additional mitigation off-site if required by the Army Corps. I believe that in-site engineering has provided all of the information and responses that Mr. Russo has requested. So with, with that, we would ask that you continue the SEACRA hearing if there's someone who wants to speak, and if not, close it. We would ask that you consider making a determination of significance, and the one we would like you to make is a negative declaration. We would then ask you to hear whoever wishes to address you on site plan and special permit. So with that, I'm going to get away from the microphone.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So as you mentioned, we are in open public hearing for SEACRA. Before we go back out to the public for that, just make a quick tour around our planner. The further items you want to make mention of, John?
Uh, no, they've addressed all my planning concerns. There's a few steps that have to be taken still for any sort of vote on approval, but I don't have any particular comments that are outstanding.
Great, thank you. Mr. Russo?
No, as Mr. Cantor said, they have to approach the outside agencies, Department of Health for water and sewer, DEC for sewer, also Army Corps with regards to the wetlands. I am asking them to update their stormwater report based upon revisions to the plans, and then I'm just asking for some minor changes on the plans themselves.
Great, thank you. And then I heard you mention there were some updates to your traffic study. I'm sure we were in receipt of that. Stark, any, or not?
No.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
You had mentioned in your opening here that there were some updates to your, your traffic study.
There was a letter from Phil Greeley, who's now with Colly.
There was a letter from Phil Greeley, who's now with Collier Engineering, that was sent in before this evening after last meeting, saying he's reviewed the earlier traffic reports, and his opinion, they're still valid.
Okay, okay, thank you.
A brief letter.
I heard you say "updates," so that piqued my curiosity about whether we were up to date as a city in reviewing your traffic study.
It was, that response letter was kind of in part for a public comment that was just asking about the date of the data that was used for the traffic study.
I see.
Verified during the public meeting or planning meeting.
Okay, great. So then, Stark, any other, and I know you're not on microphone at the moment, but any other observations by the city relative to your review of the applicant's traffic study?
We don't have any outstanding comments regarding the project.
Great, thank you. So then we'll open it up to the board. Any other observations or comments or questions by the board?
I have a question if no one else does. Mr. Cantor, you just said that the additional mitigation would be if requested by the Army Corps of Engineers, and I'm just, I was reading the letter from Ecological Analysis from James Bates, and that letter says additionally, the applicant has agreed to provide a further one-to-one mitigation area at another site with the city beacon doubling the net wetland area as a result of the project's construction. So that letter made me think that that decision had been made and we were going to receive the additional mitigation, but you just, I think what you just said was that it was contingent on if the Army Corps requested it?
It's my understanding, and I believe the, Mr. Bates is here and he can speak to it more directly, but it's my understanding that it's an Army Corps call.
As far as the two-on-one mitigation, it's normally what was required by the Army Corps, so that's why it's in my letter for the wetlands. I'm not sure what they're gonna ask for at this time. I know it's at least a one-to-one, oh, I'm sorry.
We can hear you, but there's times when the engineer can't pick up, so it doesn't get on the record, so thank you.
Okay, so that's why it's there, is to make sure that we will be providing if required. I'm assuming it's gonna be required, it usually is. That, you know, that it's, how much mitigation the Army Corps requires, they're own agency, I can never make that decision for them.
So the text just came across as being a little bit more emphatic than it actually is. You expect it to be required, but you don't know that it will be, you're prepared to do it, and I'm just, you know, I'm just wondering, given some of the concerns about, you know, that the loss of habitat, you know, that maybe we just, can we just ask for it?
For?
There's really gonna be no net loss of habitat on-site because what, the amount of wetlands that are there now, at the end of the mitigation, is exactly what's
Be the same amount.
So.
Yeah, I mean, mitigation also comes with it some disturbance, right? So we want to be gentle about reaching that balance. Does that satisfy?
Yeah, I guess I'm just curious whether there's any, any kind of desire on the part of the city to just request the two-to-one since it's being, you know, and I, you know, it's kind of written up as if, hey, you know, this is gonna happen and this should be perceived as a benefit, but then I hear that it's, you know, it's not, it's contingent on what the Army Corps directs, and so just, you know, I'm thinking about some of the public comments about, you know, the area that's gonna be disturbed and the diversity of some wildlife that the, you know, the nearby residents observed, and if we did get the two-to-one mitigation, it wouldn't, you know, we would be at least improving habitat, you know, somewhere else in the city, so it would be, you know, we're just kind of getting the best benefit that we can for the, you know, for our overall community, given the fact that there's gonna be a disturbance and.
Yeah, that's a good point, good question. I'm not sure that we can require it.
Probably wouldn't have gotten focused on it if the letter hadn't made it sound like it was definitely happening.
Yeah. Jen, I'd look for your direction on what the ability of the planning board to extend or apply a requirement.
Yep, so your jurisdiction there, your, the extent of your authority would be, you can impose a condition like that if it's directly mitigating an impact from the project. So if you feel that the one-to-one mitigation that's being offered on-site, and it's part of the project now, so no net loss in wetland area on-site is what's part of the project. If you feel that's not sufficient to mitigate the disturbances to the wetlands as that's currently proposed, then you can then turn to the off-site mitigation and require that as part of their required mitigation for your approval.
So that would mean that we'd have to make some, well, we could, but we'd have to make some determination as a basis for actually making that request?
Correct.
Are you prepared to do that? That's the question.
Right, and I would just be going, right now I can only do it on the basis of kind of anecdotal information and just, you know, working off the public comment, and, you know, the public had, over the past several meetings, commented that they had observed a diversity of wildlife in the area, and the area will be cleared and developed, there'll be some impact on the wetland, that's part of the overall habitat, and just.
So the one-for-one, if I'm correct in understanding this, reflects a no net loss?
Correct.
Right? So we're at a stasis in terms of the habitat and the wildlife?
But it isn't unusual to ask for something more than a one-for-one, understanding that, you know, you haven't created disturbance and, you know, you can rehabilitate, but it's never quite the same as after it's been disturbed, right?
Yep.
It's really, if it's gonna be some significant burden, you know, for us to be able to, you know, without seeming arbitrary and capricious.
Yeah, I don't know that I would be prepared to advise you as we sit here tonight. I think I'd have to take a look at the record and see what we do have in the record that would support that. I know we have Mr. Bates here, who is the wetland scientist. You can ask him what his opinion is about, you know, the one-to-one mitigation on-site and its effect on habitat, and we'd have to look to the record to see if there is support for extending that mitigation requirement off-site.
Yeah, unless the applicant expecting that the Corps will request it.
May just offer it voluntarily. The voluntary offer is, would be acceptable as well.
Normally, the Corps goes from anywhere from one-to-one to three-to-one, I'm sorry. The Corps goes from one-to-one to three-to-one. They usually go somewhere around two-to-one. Sometimes it's one-and-a-half-to-one. We have been prepared to provide more, basically on my understanding that that's usually the one-to-one never quite occurs. Now, also remember that right now, as it stands, that wetland gets a lot of debris and things like that, so as part of this, in, excuse me, as a restoration, you know, we've agreed to take out, and we will for the Army Corps as well, the garbage and stuff like that's in there, so you're actually gonna get a better functioning wetland, at least temporarily, until people start dumping crap in it again, which I can't control, and even the people who don't live in there won't be able to control, because it's right at the end of the road.
I did read that, yeah. You would remove litter and debris as from the.
Well, it's usually part of the, the Army Corps normally requires, and John, your engineer, Mr. Russo, is aware of this, they normally require a five-year monitoring plan. You have to remove the invasive species and remove the garbage and things like that from the wetlands. In fact, I believe it's the city that has one that's open with the Army Corps now.
They do.
I had one question. If the city had identified a degraded wetland that existed nearby, and we felt like it was an appropriate and beneficial place for additional mitigation to occur, would, is there an understanding of what the process would be for us to have input on that with either the Corps of Engineers or, so that we weren't, so that the off-site mitigation didn't occur in a place that wasn't to the maximum benefit, both of the wildlife and to the public?
As I understand it, there had been a location already selected as a candidate site for off-site mitigation if it was required, right?
There has been. We went through an exhaustive look last summer.
Yeah.
Trying to find wetlands, and then we found a couple areas, but then they were in the park, and we couldn't cut trees, and it was, or they were owned by private property, and those people just, you know, wanted no part of it.
So if the Army Corps comes back and says, "We'd like a one-to-two," are there additional areas identified by you that you, as you say, you're prepared to mitigate? Okay.
There's already a site, I believe, so I wasn't looking to reopen that.
So that's the answer. All right. Let me ask you just something, just to cut to the chase. If the Army Corps doesn't come back and says, "Okay, one-to-one's fine," but it sounds like you anticipate that they won't, it'll be greater, right, a greater request, which you're prepared for. If by chance they come back and say one-to-one, would you accept or be accepting of a planning board request for one-to-one and a half or one-to-two?
That's not up to me. I'm just the biologist in this whole matter.
I'm asking you, the applicant.
The, the answer is several folds. The best answer I can give you is I don't know for sure, but the applicant has every intention to cooperate. We have purchased an easement in the city so that we have the legal right to do additional wetland mitigation to satisfy the Army Corps, and we're open to discussing with you or Mr. Russo or John, between now and when we hopefully get approval, whatever requests or concerns you have. If we can do it within reason, we'll be happy to. We gave up three units in order to be able to do the one-on-one on-site. That's a lot of dollars over a period of time to give up three units. I think that's a strong indication of cooperation. If there's more cooperation needed off-site, we will do it. And again, we have purchased and we own a recorded easement for wetland mitigation if required.
Looks like this gentleman behind you has something he wants to say.
Greg Kamidolski for the record, and.
I don't know where he is.
Yeah, he just snuck up on you.
He took me, he took the words right out of my mouth. We're, we have the extra land available to us, and if we're willing to be cooperative if there's a desire to have more than one-to-one.
My suggestion, you can take it or leave it, is there's not much in the code that gives, our precedent with other projects, that gives us the clear ability to, to do this sort of arbitrary, well, we want two-for-one instead of one-for-one. My suggestion is if you aren't in mind that you think more than one-for-one is a good thing, you could express that to the Army Corps as part of the conditions of the adoption of whatever, and having the community say that to the Army Corps, I think would probably be, and they have both the expertise and the ability to make these decisions based on precedent and experience and expertise. So that's what I would suggest.
Thanks, John.
Rather than you come up with a number, an arbitrary number, make a recommendation to the Corps that you would welcome the, something more than one-for-one on this alternative site that the applicant has picked.
Yeah, no, that's wise. I know Lynn agrees, probably Kevin. What do you think, Jill?
My concern is, as stated before, I think, that I'm not in favor of building in areas that maybe are better left unbuilt. I appreciate the one-to-one mitigation, but that sort of begs the question about what happens once that's done. There's 37 units now occupied with all the accompanying traffic and human interaction, and does, I mean, you're, you're not on the hook for long-term maintenance or anything like that, so I, it seems to me sort of a perfunctory gesture to, even to do the one-to-one or even a one-to-two, that it's long-term, it's inevitable that that environment, the ecology of that environment will change. That's my take on it.
Yep, so just, I wanted to get your thoughts on our, as a group, sharing our thinking about an increase in abatement beyond one-to-one with the Army Corps.
That would be better than nothing, yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we'll do that, and so I'm assuming, Jen, you'll work to help us craft that communication to the Army Corps?
Sure.
Okay. What level? One-to-one and a half, one-to-two?
Aim high.
I recommend two-to-one, as an ask or a comment to the Corps.
Yeah, I think, I think John Clark's recommendation was to leave the ultimate number up to the Army Corps, but to express
Oh, gotcha.
Your recommendation that, you know, that you would be in favor of them requiring something more than one-to-one.
That's fair. Okay, so we can leave it at that?
On off-site, yep.
Great, thank you.
Out of curiosity, where is the easement that you purchased? Is it?
It's the, it's owned by Mr. Van Buren, by the church property. It's on his property, and we have a, we have an agreement with him and an easement that's recorded to allow us to do mitigation work on his property. He has an existing, or he butts an existing wetland that, that would be great to mitigate. The other thing I'd like to say is, and Jim, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but as part of the Army Corps of Engineer mitigation plan, it's a requirement of the applicant that they monitor the mitigation work for a five-year period, and in fact, it has to be inspected on an annual basis for five years and a report submitted to the Army Corps of Engineers. So it, it's a little more long-term than just going in and doing the work and.
Sure. The, it's not just we have to report, no, there's conditions. We have to make sure that it functions as designed, that invasive species aren't taking over the mitigation area, and if, and if the plants are dying or invasive species have come in, then we have to go in and clean them out. So it is actual, you know, work that has to be done by the applicant as part of permit. It's not just put it in, walk away.
Okay.
So with that, we'll go to public comment on this part of the process, the SECRH public comment. There are a few written, if I have this right, two written comments, which I believe are in the record currently, one from an individual named Monique Quigley, generally concerned about pedestrian state, excuse me, safety and stormwater management, so we have that captured, and another from a Javid Avzali. Hard to characterize, just making some observations, but again, entered into the record. So with that, anyone from the public who'd like to make comments on this? Did we have a sign and sheet for this one?
No.
No? Okay. Yes?
Good evening, my name is Colleen Cook. I live at 11 Hastings Drive, also known as Highland Meadows. I'm here at the request of quite a few of the residents that live there. I'm representing them, I'm not representing the management, I want to make that very clear, but I have been asked to come and once again speak about the concerns of using Hastings Drive as an entrance and egress. What hit me was this past several days with the nice weather, a lot of our residents who do not have cars, who are stuck in, were able to sit out front, enjoy being social, getting to see the wonderful view of the mountain, et cetera, with clean, fresh air and without noise pollution. And if Hastings Drive is used as the main entrance and egress, not only is it going to be traffic up the gazu, there's gonna be congestion, there's gonna be carbon footprint, there's gonna be noise, okay, there's gonna be speeding. Please remember also, on this street, not only do we have Highland Meadows, which is a senior resident, we have also Wingate Nursing Home and also a special education school for young children. Now, I myself saw just today where the fire department and some of the ambulances had to go to Wingate to pick up, unfortunately, somebody who needed to be taken to the hospital. It's happened at my residence several times, and things like that, the ambulances. And things like that, the ambulances, the fire department, people who are depending on ambulates to drive them places, people who need to get to appointments, and the children who are waiting for their parents, and since these are special education childrens, they might tend to get a little disruptive and upset if their parents aren't on time. How are they going to get to us if there's all this traffic coming and going? There's going to be 37 units, three bedrooms. How many cars are there going to be? How much traffic is it going to involve? It's going to be hard for the people who need to be taken care of to get the services they need. A lot of the people in my building have aides. These aides need to get here on time. If they're sitting in traffic on Delavan Avenue trying to get up to Hastings or trying to make a turn and they can't do it, this becomes a serious medical problem for them. Okay? The other thing is that there is a volunteer EMT on Delavan Avenue, a very active one. And what happens when they can't get out to go to a call because Delavan Avenue is congested and backed up? There is no way that this can be done. Also, it's a precarious corner. There's a curve right before it, and a lot of times you can't see the car coming around the curve. Or does the car coming around the curve on Fishkill see the people coming out of Delavan? So I'm not trying to throw this at another neighborhood, but I think that there is an issue, there are issues here that really have to be considered as far as the safety of the people who live in Beacon, who live in the housing all around Hastings Drive, which is actually an easement. And train of thought, we were told that that was a private street by the department, one of the departments of Beacon, who one of the neighbors called and said, when are you going to do the fire hydrant flushing on Hastings Drive? And the reply was, that's a private street and we don't take care of private streets. So how come all of a sudden it can become a public passageway when everything else is considered private and all of the snow plowing, et cetera, is done privately?
Can we ask the applicant to respond to this question of whether Hastings Drive is still the major ingress and egress? Because I thought that Leonard was going to become the major ingress and egress, and I didn't want to interrupt, but I just wanted to
Just never made clear.
I wanted to possibly allay your concerns after, and I very much appreciate your input, but I just
Thank you, Lynn. Thank you.
Good evening. Adam Thieberg in Site Engineering, serving landscape architecture, PC. The board is aware for the
Townsend, I'm sorry.
Clarity for the public, the connection to Hastings Drive is not contemplated as any kind of main or continual regular entrance to the site. It is specifically shown as a gated emergency access only. That'll only have traffic on it in the case of an emergency fire, you know, type emergency.
I misspoke before. I said Leonard, but it's Townsend is the
Townsend is contemplated to be the primary access.
Great. Thank you.
Just wanted to make sure your concerns were allayed.
Teresa. And so, sorry, and this isn't because you're up. I just wanted to make a general statement because we have a long agenda.
I'll make a quick
And we have a number of, and I'm just, not just for you, though, but for everybody here. We have a number of public hearings, so I'm going to request that we keep our, you know, comments brief, that we work as a kind of a team here, three-minute minimum, and that if anyone
Maximum.
Excuse me, three-minute maximum. Thank you, Jill. And that should your comments, if you hear somebody coming before you making the same comments that you were going to, that you just say that, you know, you would, you want to reinforce the prior point made. We don't need to hear the same points made over and over again. And again, this isn't just because we don't want to, it's more just to help the process along and to make sure that we're out of here at least before 1:00. So with that, thank you, Teresa.
Don't start the clock before
Three-minute minimum.
I just hope the City of Beacon takes some of their royalties and whatever they're making off the movies and TV shows flooding our city to buy a new PA system for this city. I, like many other concerned residents, have also been attending those many meetings mentioned by the applicant voicing our concerns. Some of many concerns are regarding the wetlands included on the undeveloped site as well as the general section of Beacon. Many other concerns that large development would infringe on the quality of life for the existing families who are established in this community. This build-out will bring in a lot of cars with the potential for fuel and oil runoff, emissions, traffic and traffic noise. This will affect our quality of life. I'm opposed to the scale of this project on this parcel that includes a wetland. The mitigation is across at Hidden Brook Parcel. It is a game, a card-gate shuffle, and we are watching your hand played in voting to scale this project back. Harming the area's flora and fauna at either location would be an epic fail. It's too big.
Thank you, Teresa.
Hi. Nuntia Gervado, 19 Townsend Street. I couldn't agree more with what the lady's saying there, but in the same token, you put us in the same situation at Townsend Street, looking for my benefit and the neighborhood's benefit, all the traffic going through our neighborhood. If we look back when they were trying to subdivide the old Knights of Columbus property, and when final to final subdivision was approved, it was a gate through a new parcel for emergency purposes only. And let's not switch it to the other side, because the neighborhood would have been fully opposed to this here if it was going to be a cut-through property. If you want to look back at the minutes, we could look back saying that that was never meant to have a cut-through property from an adjacent property. I'm not here to stop progress. I'm sure they want to do their thing, but we've got to look at the big picture. Don't pull a wool over people's faces that agree that it's going to happen to a certain way, and now we're going to have cut-through property. Because if we look back at the minutes, it was never put for cut-through traffic. The problem we would create, it'd be bigger than if going through Dillon Avenue, because Townsend Street is narrower and 52 is narrower at that opening. If you look back before Casey had that property there, which is an empty parcel, we'll be talking the same talk right now if the Knights of Columbus was there. All right? So, you know, to wrap it all up basically is, you know, I couldn't agree more than Mr. Reynolds says. Maybe certain things are not meant to be. You know, we're trying to switch from one way to another. Originally, that was not a cut-through property. It was meant for first responder, emergency vehicles that be gated, and if they had to get access to a new parcel, they could go through those gates to provide emergencies, emergency for whoever's on the other side. Now, you're telling us that they're trying to put a cut-through property. It would really louse up a lot of people's, you know, lives and way of living. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you.
Hi. Can you hear me? I'm Michael Mart, and I live in the neighborhood, and
I'm sorry, just for the record, did you get her name?
No.
Sorry, your name?
Michael Mart.
Your address?
Mead Avenue.
Mead. Thank you.
Yeah. So I just wanted to say, this is a secret determination, the traffic impact from going through Townsend, it's going into a neighborhood that has about 50 homes, and you're adding 37 homes in addition to the 13 from Knights of Columbus. So you're basically doubling the traffic that's going through the neighborhood. And like my neighbor said, Townsend is very narrow, has no sidewalk, and I consider that a very significant impact. So when you're trying to determine the impact, please take that into consideration.
Thank you. Yes, please. Sorry, ma'am, we had someone here ahead of you. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Martha Davies. I also live at 11 Hastings Drive, Highland Meadows, senior residence. A number of the topics that my neighbor, Colleen, just mentioned were on my notes, but there are a couple of things that have just come up in discussion that would just like some clarification if possible. When you mentioned that, the gentleman mentioned that Hastings Drive was not going to be the main access and egress for the Beacon Fuse, did mention that, as this other gentleman has mentioned, it was going to be, in the case of Hastings Drive, just an entrance and egress for emergency vehicles. And we were just curious if that does, in fact, happen to be the case. How far in from the Hastings Drive land, property, drive, would the, I guess what I'm asking is, would there be any, would it be a clear cut with the gate? Will there be some trees and foliage left or, and how far in from the, starting from the grass at the curb of Hastings Drive? Would the gate be placed? And the second question is, I understand, as the gentleman regarding Townsend has spoken about, Townsend is narrow, but I will point out that Hastings Drive is also a narrow road. It's a two-car, one in each direction. There's not a way for three to get by. And we also don't have sidewalks on Hastings Drive. And further to the topic of the seniors, we have a number of seniors in the building who don't drive, but they do walk on Hastings Drive with either the assistance of their aides, or a number of them have walkers, and they'll go out on their own on Hastings Drive and just walk about, you know, up in front of our, in front of our building. They'll come down through our parking lot. And again, that's a serious safety issue that we have a concern for, for the number of seniors that do walk out on Hastings Drive. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Likewise. Actually, yeah, I was going to ask, if you wouldn't mind just very quickly addressing the question, sorry, don't mean to bump you again, but just for one minute. Thank you.
Yes, just a couple of quick things. With regard to the gate, the gate would be located just at the very start of the emergency access. You can see it if you kind of squint your eyes here, as Hastings Drive hooks up here to the north and to the west. Just as you get to the offshoot, that is the emergency access, the gate would be right there. We've also shown another gate at the other end, so the entire, the entire length would be gated off from both ends. There was also a comment about, and I'm not sure I picked it up exactly, but there was a comment about sidewalks. We've also shown an off-site improvements plan as part of our site plan set that is, that includes improvements related to requirements, you know, in the easement agreement. That includes a sidewalk connection across the roadway that goes by the Highland Meadows facility out to Delavan.
Thank you.
Pam Weatherby, 66 Mead Avenue. I am concerned about my neighborhood, too. Townsend is just one parcel away from myself, and it's between me and the rest of the neighborhood other than four houses. This parcel, as Jill Reynolds says, really sometimes when somebody buys landlocked property with wetlands, maybe it's not meant to be built. This parcel is 2.5 acres of wetlands. It is the second-largest wetlands in Beacon, other than behind Beacon High School. If I'm reading this correctly, which I was told to look at, that's huge. They're not even building on some of the property. They're building right up against the wetlands. I am concerned about the stormwater runoff. I also, in my 34 years of living in this neighborhood, I have witnessed the prison property, the drainage that comes down from snowmelt, and it comes into my neighborhood. It comes onto 52. It makes a lot of us inconvenience because 52 gets blocked. And it's going to happen again, and it's going to happen more often. I am concerned about my neighbors on De Soto who have low-lying property, what this is going to do to their property, and also if eventually, maybe after five years, when they don't care about it anymore, that it's going to flood onto De Soto Avenue. I don't, there isn't a lot of garbage that I was aware of, other than maybe hundreds of years of garbage being dumped. We have the adjoining property of the South. For whatever reason, they're not accessing that. I know there is a lawsuit there because of this situation. The adjoining property of the North at 25 Townsend, where the Knights of Columbus just got demolished, I'm not sure if they've gotten into agreement with them, if they can clarify that, if they have communicated with the only other access other than if they have communicated with the other property on Matteawan Road. And I just feel that, again, as someone said, we have about 50 houses in our neighborhood. The 13 houses currently approved with that emergency access only at 25 Townsend, and plus, if you add 37 here, that's another 50. We're doubling the property. We walk through our neighborhoods, too. We have animals. We would like to enjoy our neighborhood with our children and grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Stephen Rieger. I'm one of the principals of Rieger Homes. My brother Ian is here with us, with me. We purchased the 25 Townsend Street property, and we took down the Knights of Columbus Hall, and we're starting the site development to extend Townsend Street and to build 13 homes. And we're going to be back shortly, in the next month or so, to preview our architecture with you so that you'll be familiar with what we're trying to do. We're new to this process, you know, I know that the applicant has been before you many times, and there's been a lot of conversation about this issue. I just want to say that we've talked to neighbors. They've expressed their sincere and serious concern about this project, and we're trying to be good stewards of our property and to take their concerns seriously in the way we are developing our site. And I wanted to pass that along to you, that we're hearing it, and we're hearing it loud and clear. I do have one question, and that is that we are, we are putting in an extension to Townsend Street, and we've offered that, the 50-foot right-of-way for dedication to the city of Beacon. And while we are, until that road is dedicated, we own it, and we are responsible for maintaining it, repairing it, and getting it into shape for the city to accept. And so during that period of time, are we, are we subject to the construction vehicles and other vehicles of a neighboring property, or are they going to have to wait until it's a city road?
I think that's up to you. We can't require you to allow vehicles on your own private property. So that would be an agreement between you and
And the property owner.
And the property owner here, yeah.
Okay. So that'll impact the timing of this project in any event? Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Voice loud enough? My name is Peg O'Leary. I'm here this evening representing Highland Meadows. In response to the submission by the applicants, I see that the wetlands consultant had submitted a report. In that report, the wetlands consultant stated that the Army Corps would not start its review or issue a permit without a conditional site plan. That is not accurate. We've asked our attorney to forward to you the requirements of the Army Corps for wetlands permits, be it a general permit or be it a nationwide. More specifically, in June of 2020, there was a full EAF submitted by the applicant. In that EAF, it stated that a general permit application was submitted to the Army Corps on October 1st, 2019. In that report, the wetlands consultant stated that the Army Corps would not start its review or issue a permit without a conditional site plan. That is not accurate. We've asked our attorney to forward to you the requirements of the Army Corps for wetlands permits, be it a general permit or be it a nationwide. More specifically, in June of 2020, there was a full EAF submitted by the applicant. In that EA, EAF, it stated that a general permit application was submitted to the Army Corps on October 1st, 2019. The cover letter for that submission on June 2020 also referenced within it that the permit for the Army Corps had been submitted. My question would be, is at that time, the applicant was also representing that wetlands could be placed on the Meadow Ridge property, specifically in the stormwater management easement. That was not true, and that has since been rescinded. But we would really like to know what the Army Corps has stated based on the October 1st, 2019 submission, and what the dialogue has been with the Army Corps since. Wetlands is critical to SEACRA. It's a critical component. The documents submitted to date by the applicant are incomplete relative to wetlands. The consultant has stood here to, this evening, and stated that Army Corps will probably request two to one. My question is, based on the October 2019 submission, has Army Corps already stated that they want the two to one? I ask this board to seriously consider the impact of the wetlands. I also ask this board to seriously consider, as we have been stating, that the stormwater easement that was granted to the applicant does not permit the construction of a stormwater facility. To that extent, again, the full EAF from June 30th of 2020 states that the stormwater facility would be on-site. That full EAF also states that the water, the stormwater would be impounded on-site. I ask this board to please review the June 2020 full EAF form. I also ask this board to please consider that Highland Meadows has been coming to each and every, uh, one of these meetings and bringing forth to the board information that perhaps, well, definitely the board should know. I am stating here this evening that the stormwater easement does not include wetlands, which has been established. It is also Highland Meadows' position that that stormwater easement, which clearly states drainage and discharge, does not permit a stormwater facility. And that the fact that the applicant put that on their full EAF in June of 2020, which I believe is the document that this board is basing its SEACRA meetings on, public hearings on, I sincerely ask you to review those. In closing, I would ask that this planning board please not close the SEACRA public hearing until all of the information is submitted and all of the information verified.
Thank you. I'll just, I'll just state for the record that this board does thoroughly review every aspect of every application. That is our job, that's our purview. So, uh, with that as well, our planner and, uh, city engineer do the same for us on our behalf. So I'm going to ask John or John, is there anything about the AAF that you've found that's either incomplete, incorrect, or otherwise misstated by this applicant?
I don't believe I have.
No? Thank you.
Um, I can't comment on the easement and what is and what isn't allowed. Um, that, that's beyond my expertise.
That's the easement, right? Of course, different subject.
But, you know, when we reviewed the EAF originally, two years ago, it was complete.
Got it, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you add anything?
Um, briefly, yes.
Once again, I'm Jim Bates for Ecological Analysis. Um, as both your planner and engineer understand is, the EAF is a living document. You start at one point, the board goes through its all decisions, changes are made. That's typical, that an EAF, the first submittal isn't the end. I'm unaware of a 2019 submittal to the Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, I was brought on afterwards, as, as you, you folks all know. The Army Corps may or may not look at a submittal from, from anywhere. They will not thoroughly review and they will not issue any permits without at least a conditional site plan approval. They will allow us to start moving through the process once SEACRA's done, but quite frankly, they're so backed up that, you know, they're not, they don't want to look at anything that's not going to happen, and I'm sure you can understand that. Uh, the DEC is the same way. Uh, they require roughly the same documents, and now with the latest revisions, we have to file what's called a joint application. So when we submit the documents to the Army Corps, the same documents go to the DEC because I need a water quality certification from them. Um, you, like I said, excuse me, your engineer's quite aware of this. He's done numerous projects. So if, if I was misstating, I'm sure I'd get a phone call.
Fair, thank you. Anyone else from the public on this particular application SEACRA public hearing?
Drew D. Castro, 21 Conklin Street, um, to the city of Beacon. Not every piece of property needs to be built and developed. Just leave it alone. Plain and simple. I understand they spent money, they are looking for a return on their investment, but that's not in the best interest of the people that live here currently and have lived here my entire life. My parents bought the house when they found out they were pregnant with me. I've lived here my entire life. I played in that property as a kid. Just leave it alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just want to make one more, uh, quick point of clarity. Uh, with regard to a previous application to the Army Corps of Engineers, um, we were previously, as the board's aware, working with a, with another wetland consultant, uh, Mike Newick. He was no longer on the project. He may have started some, uh, application, but we've never received any response or have seen any, uh, correspondence to the Army Corps.
Thank you. Did you have something?
I, I just, I guess I should make the point, just for clarity purposes, the planning board, uh, doesn't set zoning in the city.
I know. I was thinking the same.
This property was zoned for, um, RD, um, multifamily housing by the city council some time back, including the wetlands. We've done everything we can to protect the wetlands as part of this project, but the, the applicant and the planning board has to abide by the zoning law in which the, it says that this property is designated, one of the few in the city that's designated for multifamily housing. Um, when the board approved the 25 Townsend, the 13-lot subdivision, it was included a easement, a, a designated right-of-way to connect to this process, project, or this property, so that if and when it was developed, it would go through the Townsend property. So this has been in the books for a long time, and the zoning has been in place for a long time. And the planning board can't just say, um, we don't like it and, and, um, without just cause, because it is zoned for multifamily housing and what we can do is protect the wetland as best possible.
Yeah, that, that, thank you for mentioning that, John. It's something that when appeals to not do anything, when an applicant is in front of us, um, we can't not do anything. That's simply not our role. And we are an administrative body, not a legislative body. The legislative body that creates the zoning is the city council. So if there are any appeals to have an impact on zoning, those should be directed toward your elected officials and the city council. They take up zoning and they make the laws. But we have to then work with an applicant on their rightfully owned properly, property to do our jobs as the planning board, uh, and make sure that they're following the rules. Thank you.
Just one final point?
Yeah, please.
Uh, just based on zoning, uh, the permitted density, uh, the calculation, uh, works out to 50 units that, uh, could be proposed, uh, based on the existing condition in the area of the slot. Um, and of, and of course, you know, it's 37 that are being proposed, as again, as opposed to the 50 that are, it's zoned for.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Are there variances associated with this? Are there any variances, uh...
No.
...associated with this?
No. Uh, I'm going to accept a motion to close the SEACRA public hearing. Can I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Len, first motion by myself, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
You'd like to keep it open? So we have, can I, can I ask why? I'm just curious.
To close, you're, are we closing the public hearing?
Yes.
SEACRA public hearing. And then there's a site plan and subdivision public hearing that's noticed to be open tonight if you move forward with SEACRA.
I'm sorry, didn't hear that.
Yep, so the, the public hearing that's currently open is, uh, public hearing for SEACRA reveal. You have before you a draft, Part II of the EAF, a draft, Part III of the EAF, and a negative declaration, uh, in draft form for you to review tonight. Um, if you're inclined to act upon that tonight, you would close this SEACRA public hearing, adopt the SEACRA documents that have been provided to you for review, um, and you also have noticed tonight the opening of a site plan and subdivision public hearing on the underlying application. That would be your next procedural step.
Okay. Aye.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
This is of closing the SEACRA public hearing.
Yeah.
I think we have unanimous agreement.
Are we, do we have unanimous?
Were there any nays?
There was before.
There was before. I, I, I have to tell you, I, um, uh, we had a request to not, uh, close the SEACRA from one of the, you, uh, brought up what I thought were some questions that were, uh, could have been significant. And, and to be honest, I didn't, uh, I didn't know, I don't know that I understood that it was, that they were addressed entirely, um, about the... What, what further questions do you have, Kevin?
About the Army Corps of Engineer applications and, um, uh, the, uh, whether or not the process had been, uh, had been completely, uh...
Okay, so your own record is voting no, not to close. We have four in favor, we're going to close. But Kevin, any questions further that you have in regard to what you just mentioned here? Let's take those up and make sure those are answered for you. So you're very clear on what we're talking about and reviewing here tonight. Okay?
I mean, is there anything, John, that you can just add briefly about, you know, to Kevin's question about this? The, the Corps is just going to go through and, and review the permanent application for, for discharge of fill to like 0.28 acres of wetlands and the proposed mitigation. And likely they're going to, you know, they'll, they'll make some decision on what the ultimate amount of mitigation that they request. We're going to provide input to that process, but, but I don't believe there's any, like, kind of esoteric issue or in this process that would, I mean, are you aware of anything in that part of the process that would merit holding, just for, just to clear the air? I don't think there's anything that would merit holding open the SEACRA public hearing.
With regards to the wetlands, no.
You know, that's, that's my, I take on also, but just to...
Yeah, and, and as well, we do have, we, because last month, I understand, we authorized our attorney to draft a neg deck, right? So at that point, we were of the thinking and of the mind that we were ready to entertain and discuss adopting a neg deck. So Kevin, since that is on the table in front of us now, and we're required to, at this point, um, review our position on the neg deck based on all of the work, all of the review by ourselves, our engineers, et cetera, up until this point, um, work to, um, act on that resolution. So I would, I would recommend that if there's anything of question in your mind, that we answer those sooner and later, meaning now, so...
Okay, um, is it, will it not go forward if I vote?
We have, we need four.
We need four, okay. Um, I, I think I was, I, I may change my vote. Just to, to, yeah, yeah.
So just, I think for clarity purposes, I, I think we should do a redo of the motion to close the public hearing.
Yes, I'm in agreement with that, because it seems like Kevin would like to now...
I, I think we need to have a clear understanding of what the vote is on the motion to close the SEACRA public hearing.
Let's rehear. So the motion was by myself to close the SEACRA public hearing.
I seconded it.
The second was by Len. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. We are all in favor. Unanimous to close. So now, um, we have a draft, negative deck resolution?
Yes, so, um, a draft, Part II of the EAF, uh, was circulated to the planning board, and these documents are also available on the city's website. Um, also a Part III of the full EAF, uh, was provided, um, along with the attachment to the Part III, which is a, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 11-page single-spaced document that really goes through, um, each of the categories of environmental review outlined in the EAF, and recites to documents in the record with respect to each of those categories, uh, relevant categories of environmental review, such as, um, the Water and Wastewater Engineering Report, the various wetland, um, evaluation reports that have been submitted to the board, the traffic impact studies that have been submitted and reviewed by the board, Threatened and Endangered Species Habitat Suitability Assessment Report, which was submitted to the board, all prepared by the applicant's professionals, reviewed by the planning board's professionals, um, and discussed at prior meetings. So this document outlines, um, all of that review and concludes that, um, the project will not have a significant adverse environmental impact.
Thank you, gentlemen, believe it or not. I have reviewed all of this. I've read all of it. I understand it, and I'm in agreement with you. Um, so any other conversation around the board relative to this draft resolution? Any questions for Jennifer?
So, I read the narrative, the attachment, and just want to ask our consultants, did anybody have any, find any factual comments on the narrative or that passed muster for anyone?
I should have, I should add one thing. Um, John Russo had mentioned to me earlier today, with respect to the section on stormwater, uh, what I might suggest is that we add a statement that says that the planning board understands that the specific stormwater management practices, um, may be altered based on the revised layout that you reviewed at your last meeting, that went from 40 units down to 37 units. There may be some slight adjustments in the actual practices being used, um, but nonetheless, uh, the project still, you know, will not create a significant adverse environmental impact as a result of those changes.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, I didn't mean to steal your thunder, John Russo, if you were going to mention that.
He gets plenty of airtime. I figured you were going to bring it up somewheres. All right, thank you, Jennifer. Any other thoughts, questions?
I would just like to say that I'm, I'm not in favor of the impact that this will have on this particular property, but I recognize that they, the applicants have done everything correctly and within the rules, and so they deserve the, the positive, you know, the aye vote on the SEACRA.
The, the positive vote on the negative declaration?
Yes.
I love this part of it.
Personally, I don't care for it, but...
Well, you know, so this, this goes back to the, the comment I brought up before, is that the, the wetland, if I understand, understand correctly, the characterization of the wetland was that its highest function was primarily for management of stormwater and infiltration, and, uh, it was not ranked highly for habitat or diversity of species, and therefore, um, you know, getting, getting some, getting the one-to-one mitigation on-site to, uh, ameliorate the disturbance of the wetland is, you know, to, to do some additional mitigation elsewhere in a more high-value habitat, you know, that, that's why I felt that, that provides a benefit where it's going to, it's going to provide much more bang for our buck. And, you know, it, it addresses people's concerns about any wetland being disturbed, but it, it gives us some mitigation benefit at an off-site location where you have a higher value habitat and, and some mitigation and improvement there will pay off bigger dividends, I think, than, than doing anything more on this site, given the characterization that's been presented to us. But, so I, I think I'm just trying to say that I kind of understand, Jill, your comment about you don't like to see a wetland disturbed as a matter of, of, um, you know, just a matter of practice, but, you know, I would think that... but, you know, I would think that there's a, there's a benefit that we could all recognize if we get, if we did get like a two-to-one mitigation with some beneficial intervention at a more high-value habitat off-site. You know, overall for the community, there's a benefit, even though it's not perhaps, as you know, onsite.
Excellent, and you get the word of the night so far, ameliorate? Awesome. Prefunctory is good too, they're neck and neck.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll accept the motion to adopt this negative declaration.
Can I just say something?
Oh, Jason, yes, please.
I appreciate the comments from the public, I just wanted to reiterate what we said earlier, you know, that our role sometimes, we have to consider what's an applicant's as-of-right to do development versus not as-of-right. And so, when there's no variances being accepted and the development is within the constraints of the code, as John Clark pointed out, I give deference, I give a lot of weight to when our consultants both consider that their concerns were addressed. And so I think that's part of the, something I think the public needs to keep in mind, that we're not here to approve something that we just dislike or like. We're here to try to follow the zoning that's been adopted by the city. And so when there's a variance, then I think there's a bigger discussion to be had, but, so I'm happy with moving forward.
Thank you, Jason. So, motion is on the table, or excuse me, I'll accept a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt a negative declaration.
Motion by Len. Do I have a second? It's going to be a long night, guys, come on. Motion's on the table.
Second.
Second. Thank you, all in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. So, now, we move to, I'll accept a motion to open the public hearing for this application for, where are we at here? Site, yeah.
Motion.
Motion by Jill.
Seconded.
Seconded by Len. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is public hearing on application for subdivision and site plan approval. So, moving to that. Just first want to get any characterization of where we're at as far as the applicant and our consultant's latest review of their material. We'll start with you, John. No, I don't have any comments. Great. Mr. Russo?
No more than what I had previously.
Great, thank you. Any thoughts, comments around the board, questions at this point for the applicant before we go to the public on site plan, public hearing? Okay, anyone here for site, for this same application? Yes, it is.
Site plan, public hearing.
I just want to say, I hope that the public, what, I hope what the public witnessed in the previous public hearing, showing how members of this board can be swayed to change their vote through a louder voice at the table, does not set precedent to the other four public hearings on tonight's agenda. And you wonder why the public is upset with the overdevelopment in this city. Regarding this second public hearing, the development plan as redesigned is still too big for this parcel's small footprint at this location, and Beacon does not need another towering building that will take away from the beauty of Beacon and the views heading west towards the river. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ham Weatherby, 66 Mead Avenue. I realize I left paper up here. I'm not 100% sure of what the difference is at this moment, but I would ask that you look at the scope of this, the site plan, and consider the single-family residents all around it. And, you know, I know it was mentioned, they were willing to cut it down by another three, I heard that earlier, so I hope they strongly consider that. And I don't agree with it, but I guess that's just the way it is in the city of Beacon. Thank you.
I just want to clarify, I think the comment from the applicant earlier was that they have already cut, cut the project down by three, so it was previously 40, as of a couple months ago, and now it's 37.
Thank you.
Sorry, I just have a procedural question about the SECRE vote. From what I remember in the past, aren't you supposed to go over the different criteria? And like, say for each one, if you think there is a significant impact or not?
Yes, that's been, that's been, sorry, go ahead, Jen.
Yep, that's been done, the board had before it, and it's also available on the website, the part two of the EAF, which goes through each of those impact categories. The board reviewed that, had the opportunity to make any revisions to that, they agreed with it. They didn't want to make any revisions, so they moved on to the part three.
So, you think that there is no impact to traffic?
Yes, we have found that there is no adverse environmental impact through our thorough review. So I will also note that there is a mountain of available information, some here already know that, that is publicly accessible on every single application. It's a lot, we cover it, it's part of our job to read it, review it, you're welcome to as well. Great. This is less toward you, but more for the general public. So, at this point, if there's no one else, I think, I think we have a few things just around... We could talk about directing, Jen, to, you know, authorizing draft resolution to adopt at this point. Doing that, we should maybe consider keeping this public hearing open until next month, until we have that draft resolution. Any thoughts on that?
As opposed to closing it tonight? Yeah, I would support keeping it open.
Okay, anyone else? Great. So we'll, we'll keep it open, and so then, I'll accept the motion to authorize Jennifer's office to draft resolution approval.
Motion to draft a resolution?
Motion to authorize, authorize...
Yeah, Jennifer to draft a resolution.
Great, so we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And at this point, I think that covers it for you. Any other questions from the applicant, moment?
Just a brief procedural point, the statute allows the waiving of public hearing on final plat when the final plat is unchanged from the preliminary plat. And so we would ask you, following the statutory structure, to waive public hearing on the final.
As a matter of practice, your resolutions for subdivision approval do typically, do have that embedded into it. As you know, subdivision applications have two, really two approvals associated with them, preliminary approval and final approval. Final approval is, is more of an administrative item, it's to, you know, after satisfaction of several conditions in preliminary. The way, the Beacon Planning Board typically, yes, yes, the way the Beacon Planning Board typically conducts its practice is you grant preliminary and final at the same time. So in your subdivision resolution, you'll, you, you know, I'm sure you recall seeing you grant preliminary approval, you recognize that the final plat will not be substantially dissimilar from the preliminary plat, so you waive the public hearing on the final and also grant final. And then that's subject to several conditions that need to be met before the chairman is authorized to sign that final plat.
Yeah.
So that's your typical procedure.
So...
So, just confirming that your typical procedure marries up with what Mr. Cantor is requesting.
Yep, fair.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Request a two-minute break. Yeah, it's going to be a long one, this was an hour plus for application number one, an hour and a half, but, thank you. Two-minute break. Everyone in the public, please, we're going to get going again. Thank you for accommodating that quick break. So we're going to move to the next item on the agenda, and that is, if I could ask for quiet, please, thank you. To continue public hearing, this is second item on the agenda. This is our continued public hearing for the SECRE environmental review on applications for site plan approval, special use permit, and subdivision approval. This is for multifamily residential, 62 units at 16 West Main Street. Good evening.
Good evening. Steve Spina from JMC, we're the site engineer, here with R.A. Siegel, the project architect as well. On May 10th, we presented to the public and the board here. We believe we answered a good amount of questions, we also received some questions. We went back and we responded to those as best as we could. We also had some outstanding comments from the board's consultants that we believe we responded to the majority of them. There's still a couple of kind of construction-related phase questions that we still need to chip away at. We're working with the building department, water department, fire department on those. But, you know, we feel that we're in a pretty good place in terms of the comments received and what we've addressed, and, you know, we're just hoping tonight to try to close the public hearing and, you know, move, move the process to the next, to the next board for our special permit.
Okay, so thank you, sticking with SECRE at the moment, we are in continued public hearing. Public hearing is open at the moment. Just real quick, as far as characterization of some of the traffic analysis, I wanted to understand, and I think this is to you, Stark, just relative to this application, the traffic analysis done in context of the other neighboring properties, which we also understand have quite a significant addition of units, how, how that falls relative to basically monitoring over time, right? And understanding the incremental impacts to the, this, not just this application, but this application in context of the neighborhood and the number of increasing units coming online eventually. So, wanted to get, get your thoughts on that, and of course, discuss this around the board as well, specifically in relationship to the traffic analysis at this point. And of course, we'll start with that, but anything else relevant to SECRE around the board? So, I know you don't have a mic.
Yeah, what do you think? I can just go further.
Come on, thank you. Whatever happened to our handheld? Sorry, we need, we need new mics at the tables, we need new chairs, and we need a new handheld. We'll do a GoFundMe.
Starkip with Creighton Manning, a professional engineer, the city's traffic consultant, for the record. To answer, I guess I can start with answering your question as far as monitoring goes. You know, the first, what applicants will do is a traffic study, which is meant to kind of look ahead and understand the impacts of what a project, the impacts that a project will have. This applicant has conducted a traffic study, but one of our comments, our recent comments was to update that traffic study, given that it looks at a forecasted year of 2022. That comment is in our most recent letter.
So wait, how is, how is a forecast the year that we're in right now?
Correct, that, it's, it's a, the, this project began, I can't recall, I might have actually, I don't think I was working with the board at that time.
Right, about 2019, yeah.
So, that is kind of to kick off answering your question, yes. Before monitoring, there's kind of forecasting. Now, your question about monitoring is, I'm guessing, in regards to improvements or certain?
Just back to the, to the, what I guess we refer to as the build year?
Right.
The analysis. Given, given that the analysis is based on basically 2022 data, right?
That's a misnomer, no. They, they collected their data in February of 2020. So we could say that their, the traffic data they collected, one is from, when they, when they collected is pre-COVID, which is something that we have to take into account with traffic studies in the time that we're in. But they forecast their data to get an understanding of what the traffic would be like when the project is built and occupied.
Ah, understood, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And then as far as monitoring, I mean, I think that's more, more, at least from my perspective, something that we as a board, well, I'll speak for myself anyway, as a member of the board, are interested in understanding how the aggregate impacts of this development along with others that would be coming online, I don't know, around the same time, sooner, but relatively close to, but ultimately so adjacent that there may be aggregate impacts. And specifically Edgewater, right? That, that, that there is, there is a requirement, I think, of that particular applicant for monitoring at specific intervals, right?
I believe so.
Yeah, I can speak to that, so for the Edgewater application that was approved several years ago, 2018, there was a condition of that approval that within six to 12 months after full occupancy, the applicants required to monitor two intersections to determine whether there is, the signal, traffic signal is warranted by the traffic at that time, and if it is, then they're required to pay their fair share contribution towards installation of that traffic signal. So I think what you're asking is whether that sort of mechanism may, may, may make sense.
That's exactly where I was leading, yes.
As well.
And then for that, for that same provision around the, any necessary improvements around monitoring results, the fair share as well of any improvements required based on that of this applicant. Did you have something, Len? Sorry.
Thank you, I was going to ask, is one of those intersections Tompkins and Walcott?
Yes.
Thank you.
The other is Beekman and West Main.
So, just sort of putting it out there, that's something that I think personally is important, right? That there is a level of monitoring and that, that the applicant that we discuss making this part of a requirement to the applicant around their relevant intersections and adjacent intersections. Any thoughts on the subject?
I mean, I, I think we, we discussed last time, and I maintain the concern that this is a location where pedestrians are walking to and from the train station along West Main. And, and I think we had talked about the potential that future residents of 16 West Main, you know, might exit the facility and turn onto Bank Street and, you know, access Tompkins to get out to Walcott, right? And go, you know, take that loop. And so, I understand that there's been discussion about putting in a crosswalk facility at Bank Street to, you know, protect pedestrians that are crossing there. Do we feel that that is an adequate improvement to, you know, understanding that, that pedestrian access is, is a significant, you know, is an important access to the train station?
Yes, so the applicant we reviewed, there was three other improvement sites. And one of them, or in addition to the crosswalk that they're proposing and curb ramp improvements that they're proposing at that Bank Street and West Main Street intersection, because one of our comments was to clarify pedestrian access to the train station, given that this is a, considered a transit-oriented development. So they have proposed that crosswalk and the curb ramp improvements there. They looked at other improvements at Bank Street and Tompkins, and then also at Tompkins and Walcott. The improvements that they're proposing would increase pedestrian safety. And then the third site is a, the installation of a full stop control, or full, yeah, full four, three-way, well, four-way because of this driveway, stopped intersection at West Main Street and Beekman. The applicant responded saying that they didn't have enough data to complete a full analysis, a warrant analysis for a full four-way stop-controlled intersection. One of our recommendations is that they obtain the data necessary to complete... One of our recommendations is that they obtain the data necessary to complete that warrant analysis so that the board can make a, or have a better, more complete information on that installation.
Yeah, and that's something that they can do now as part of their analysis, right?
Correct, I mean, yes. We're recommending that they provide a revised traffic impact study that forecasts traffic to a year beyond the present.
2023, right?
At least.
Yep.
That's what we would assume.
So, in terms of the build year, I would agree, board?
Yes.
And then, the warrant, the warrant analysis and the data around that, it's your recommendation to us that the applicant augment their analysis, their study with that additional information?
Right, they would need, they need to collect, the warrant analysis is based on eight hours of traffic data. So, they would need to obtain, you know, an additional four hours. If they're gonna put the equipment out, my recommendation would be to just put equipment out and collect data for at least eight hours. Now, keep in mind that it's data collected now, and as I said, in the time of COVID, they can calibrate it accordingly, and we're able to review their methods for that and confirm that the information they're providing is not impacted.
Okay, great, yeah, we're gonna reinforce as a board that recommendation, so, thank you.
I mean, other than that, we didn't have any other, like, major comments. Those are the two kind of action items, I think, the revised TIS and the warrant analysis for the full four-way stop-controlled intersection.
Appreciate it, thank you. Sorry, gentlemen, the back of the room, gentlemen? If you're gonna have a conversation, do you mind taking it outside? Thank you. Any other questions around the board on the SECRE component of this application?
That was my main concern, was pedestrian safety and traffic impacts.
Yep.
The only thing is, I'll just remind everybody that they'll still need a special permit from the city council to put the parking on the residentially zoned portion of their property in the back.
Yep.
So, I don't think we can do that until we finish SECRE, but it shouldn't be forgotten and...
Sure.
That's gonna take a while, so it'll extend this thing even further.
Appreciate that. Thanks, John. Mr. Russo?
So, in conjunction with what Stark had said, and the concepts that they had presented for safety, additional safety measures for pedestrians, I'm asking that that be discussed in the traffic impact study itself. I didn't see it mentioned in the report anywhere, not even in the conclusion. So, it should be expanded upon. And then, all these improvements at the proposing offsite should be part of the formal plan set. And along with the timeframes, I looked at their construction schedule that they submitted. They're proposing to start in October. And doing four months of site work, retaining walls, other stuff during the winter months, and I just don't see that occurring in a four-month period, honestly, to do that. When you have possible bad winters, frozen ground.
Sure.
It's gonna be difficult.
Where did our applicant go?
He's sitting down, he's right there.
Oh, just resting.
He's taking notes on all of it.
Okay, good, so...
Sorry.
So, the items, I'm sorry, did you have anything else, John?
The rest of it has to do with some of the utilities and some concerns we have with connections and complying with Department of Health regulations.
Okay, great. Any questions or thoughts or feedback on our professional consultant's observations? Back to you.
Sure, yeah, I think as far as the traffic study comments, you know, as Stark mentioned, you know, the counts pre-COVID, we think are better than doing it now. So, we think that, you know, having counted before that is a more conservative approach. We're not opposed to the warrant analysis, of course, for the traffic, for that intersection. It may, adding a four-way stop may prove to help there, it may not, but, you know, we certainly can do that. We don't think it'll impact the project in terms of, you know, its overall impact on the, you know, the site plan approval and the SECRE process, but certainly warrant analysis, you know, to add that one extra, you know, the stop signs for east and west on Beekman, you know, may decrease the delay a little bit there, maybe. And then, as far as the build year, yeah, I mean, we've been here for so many years, I guess it just, we just kinda have to project it out one more year. But I think similarly, there wouldn't be much impact on that, because as you go with a build, a no-build condition, and you project it out one more year, you're just gonna add the general growth, you know, you're adding apples to apples, and it's not gonna change, you know, level of services and stuff like that, but we can, we can do that, too.
Yep, yeah, no, I know these are studies and...
Yeah, no, you know, I understand, I wanna just...
You can characterize it as, it might not. I think we wanna make sure that we're dealing with the most recent, most current information so that we can be as close to knowing as we possibly can. So, I'm gonna, again, reinforce our recommendation by our consultant on those items. So, again, we are in SECRE public hearing. Is there anything else you wanted to add before we go to the public?
No, I think that's, that's...
Actually, before we do that, any other questions around the board?
Questions or comments?
Both.
Well, I have a concern about the landscaping, the final landscaping, and the effect on the landscape during construction. That it looks like the whole, the entire tree line around the property is being taken down, removed, the whole tree line, and replaced with a fraction of what was there. So, I know that that's gonna have an impact on the building next door to it. So, where are we with that? I'm not sure what can be, what we can do about that.
Is that a question to the applicant?
Yeah, I think regarding that, you know, we definitely acknowledge there is a good amount of tree removal, especially in the two areas, on the west side where Bank Street is, and on the north rear lot. At least on the north rear lot, we tried to keep a lot of the existing trees on the perimeter, but certainly along Bank Street, those are gonna come out, because the buildings proposed there, retaining walls, they will need to be removed. We did go through a series of renderings and plans with the board that I thought we arrived at, you know, where everybody was comfortable with.
You have one more with the ARB, right? You have a meeting scheduled?
Yeah.
Another one?
Yes.
Actually, I was asking specifically about, I believe that's the east side of the lot, between 16, between your lot and 18 West Main.
Oh, right, yeah, there's some trees there.
It's completely, it's, I just looked at it today, it's completely filled with trees.
Yeah, so some of those are to be removed.
On the construction drawing, it's, they're all removed.
Yes, so, well, I don't believe we're removing all of them, but we are removing a good amount on that side. Most of them are smaller trees that have vines and, you know, kind of invasive and overgrown, but there are a couple of trees there that are, you know, fairly large, and they are, you know, they're within a construction easement that we're seeking from the adjacent property owner in order to build the project. So, they, you know, they're shown to be removed. And that's...
So, you're saying that that property owner is okay with them being removed?
Yes, yes, we've had conversations with them, and we're finalizing easements to build the project. And part of that is a temporary construction easement into their property, you know, in order to install the retaining wall and the building.
There was, there was at least one small business owner, I remember, at the last meeting, who raised an issue about the impact of construction dust on her business, because she has open windows and doors in a Pilates studio there, and that that, she was concerned about that during construction. So, anything that could be done to mitigate that, I think, would be...
Yes, in the conversations with that neighbor next door, the owner of the property next door for the easements, you know, we've talked to them about replacing some trees and obviously trying to, you know, put back vegetation along that right side near the building, the future proposed building. They haven't given us any feedback, I don't think, exactly what they're looking for, but there has been talks about that. So, I think as we get closer to finalizing the easement with them, I think we'll have a little more of an idea, and then we could certainly, you know, provide that information as a follow-up to the board.
Okay, thank you. Anything else around the board relevant to SECRE? Did you have something?
I just wanted to find out where they stand with all the easements that they need, because it's not only on the neighboring property, it's also on the residential property to the rear of the site, that they also need easements on for construction. So, Steve, can you tell us where all these easements stand?
So, the residential property to the north, those easements have been signed, so that, that property owner, that coordination has been completed, and we believe we're close on the east side.
So, Jennifer, do, as they get them signed, do you want copies of all those?
Yes, those, yeah, those should be completed if they are finalized. Those should be submitted.
Well, yeah, we should be getting those from the land use attorneys any day, so... As soon as we get some, yeah, we'll definitely submit them.
Great, thank you. So, we'll go to the public on the SECRE public hearing.
Hi, my name is Anne Marie Calucci. I live at 23 Hammond Plaza. I actually came for another item, but I just learned about this one, a new homeowner in the area, young child would like to have another child, so we live right on Beekman, right? And so, I just wanna voice my concern about the extra traffic from this. I don't know if there's still opportunity to lower the amount of units that are being built there, or if that's beyond that in the process, but I just would like to advocate for that. It's already sort of dangerous for our children in our little development to play on the grass near Beekman because of all the train traffic, and then also the pollution and from the cars, and then the noise traffic with the train and Newburgh and the planes and the boats. So, to add to that is just a little bit concerning in terms of, like, quality of life and then all the other development that's happening right around the same area.
Thank you.
Teresa Craft. This, the large build-out plan is still too big for this parcel's footprint. Beacon does not need another generic-looking block of apartments building, making a visual wall along that road. Take into account how congested this area is and will become when you throw an Edgewater into the mix. This is a continuation of Beacon allowing overdevelopment to strip our historic view sheds from the river view. It will have a serious impact on our environment and change the neighborhood character forever and the quality of life and safety for the existing area residents. Unlike tonight's workshop stating residents are aging out, is this how they should live their golden years? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thoughts on, I mean, my thinking is, we wanna maybe consider keeping SECRE public hearing open until we have final disposition on applicant's traffic analysis, dots?
I would support keeping it open until we have the additional questions answered on the traffic analysis.
Motion?
I don't know if we have to act on keeping it open.
Oh, okay.
Let it hang, we'll keep it open. All right, applicant, anything else at this point? Again, just making note, you have a June 17 ARB meeting scheduled, right?
Yes, yeah, I mean, all I can say is, you know, we really wanna close the public hearing so we can move on to get the special permit that John mentioned. It's been a long process, and it just, you know, we really just wanna take that next step. So, we think that we obviously commit to addressing these comments, but we're just hoping that it wouldn't, you know, hold up the process in terms of the SECRE. That's all I'll say.
So, you're asking us to close tonight?
Yes, please. Yes.
So, since there's additional information that's gonna be forthcoming, I would recommend keeping it open. But if you wanted to take sort of a half-step forward, you could direct preparation of a draft negative declaration for the next meeting, assuming that all of the traffic comments are addressed, then you'd have that document ready and waiting for you if you're ready.
Thank you, I was just gonna go there and recommend that half-step. So, though it might not satisfy the applicant at the moment, I'm gonna make a motion unless there's any discussion around the matter, but we can certainly discuss it while the motion's on the table. I'll make the motion to authorize Jennifer's office to draft neg deck on SECRE for review next month. Second?
Second.
Second by Len, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, we appreciate the progress.
Okay, we're gonna move to the next item on our agenda, which is... Yep. Hang on, I'll get to it. Yeah, really, jeez, Len. Public hearing on application for a special use permit and site plan approval, this is for an accessory apartment at 18 North Wald. The applicant with us, evening.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. So, first order of business, I'm gonna accept a motion to open the public hearing on this application on special use permit and site plan appro, excuse me.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Motion by Len.
Second.
Second by Kevin, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then, with that, anything you guys would like to share with us, since your last visit with us?
Not necessarily, we had a great meeting with the zoning board, they gave us the variance. Your positive recommendation from our previous meeting was very helpful, so thank you for that. We believe we've addressed all the issues that were brought up by Mr. Russo and Mr. Clark in their letters with our designs. We've shared those back with you, so I don't think we have anything else.
Great, yep, I note you have unanimous approval on your variance.
You got your lighting comments?
Sorry?
You got your light fixture comments sorted out on the...
Yes.
Yeah, I'll go over my comments, one last.
Trying to move it along, okay. Thank you. Mr. Clark?
Yes. A few minor things.
Sure.
There was a couple, I want, a couple notes on your plans, one confirming the variance, and the other one just saying that your porch light on the new building would conform to the lighting requirements in the code.
Yes, absolutely.
And there's no 30% requirement in that district, so you can just leave that blank, you can leave the rest of the stuff on there. And then, there was one mistake in the table as well.
Yes, and those have actually all been addressed. They were addressed from your letter even yesterday, so I have this...
And a detail on the privacy fence, the new fence, replacement fence. So, as long as those are on the final plan, all my concerns have been addressed, and I'm fine with final sign-off.
Yep, great, just make sure they get to the final plan, so when it comes time for me to sign it, I can sign it.
Yeah.
Mr. Russo?
I had no further comments at this time.
Great, thank you. Anything else by the board? All right, we'll go to the public. Anyone here for public comment on this application? Would you disappoint us if you did? No, you'd disappoint us if you didn't, Teresa, my goodness.
Hi, Teresa Craft. I previously spoke to support this project at the planning board meeting and the May's ZBA public hearing. Looking at the architectural plans with this application, I believe this owner's occupied property is exactly the type of quality-designed accessory apartment residents would hope to see from other applicants that come before the city board. This project saw at only 138-square-foot variance, which was granted, and the applicant is reducing the overall footprint of that existing garage. I don't believe this new accessory apartment will change the character of this neighborhood. I hope you grant it, thank you.
I'll just make a note that in order to receive Teresa Craft's special stamp of approval, you gotta be doing something right, so... Great, anyone else from the public? Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Jill.
Second.
Second by Kevin, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we do have a draft resolution, everything in order here in terms of this resolution, Jen?
No, it is your standard resolution with standard conditions for an accessory apartment, special permit and site plan, nothing unusual here.
Fantastic, I'll accept a motion to adopt this resolution for special permit.
Motion to adopt the resolution.
And site plan approval. Motion by Len, second by Jill, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you very much.
Because certainly you'll be out of here before we are.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move to item number four, this is a public hearing on application for special use permit and site plan approval, indoor/outdoor event space for Hannah Lane, submitted by Jason Hughes. Good evening.
Good evening. Get this ready.
I'm gonna just go ahead and accept a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Jill.
Seconded.
Second by Len, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, good evening, so the property is at 4 Hannah Lane, it's the old Talix Foundry property, and as you said, the owner's proposing to have an indoor event venue and an outdoor event venue. And it's basically to legalize the use that he's been doing on a one-by-one permit basis. So we submitted revised drawings based on the comments we got last month, we clarified some of the site features, we also now set a quantity for the outside area audience parking. So I'll let Jason talk about it, but I think he's still in conversation with the Talix property owner about some of those things on their property.
Okay. How are you?
All right, good evening. You're going to hear from a number of the Talix owners. You're going to hear from a number of the members of the Talix Commercial Condo Association this evening. I believe that the president of the board is on his way here now, I was tech, he asked me to let him know when the public hearing before mine started, so he could head over. So they'll be here this evening and they will speak to that, we are moving along, they've had some other issues that they've been dealing with, and in one of those I ran into John Russo on the property last week, and we had a good conversation about some of these things. And, and yeah, so we, you know, I think we're in good shape on that. The one issue, I wanted to respond to John Clark's latest comment letter, comment number two, you brought up pedestrian access, and I wanted to first thank the city for the new three-way stop at Main and Herbert as well as the crosswalk there. Once the Hannah Lane sewer project is completed and Hannah Lane is repaved, I think we have pretty good accessibility from that end of Main Street there. I think the reality of Hannah Lane is that ever since the dog park went in, there has been enough daily foot traffic on Hannah Lane to warrant a crosswalk across Fishkill Avenue there for the people going to and from the dog park. Whether a curb cut out on Fishkill Avenue on the far side and a crosswalk across right there would alleviate your concern about pedestrian accessibility to the yard and would serve the many people who go to the dog park who come from the different facilities over on the other side, over off of Delavan. You know, a lot of people use Hannah Lane now as a pass-through, a lot of pedestrians. And so, you know, a crosswalk there would address your concerns, I agree with you, we want pedestrians, we want them to be safe getting to us, help us do that, please.
Okay. All right, at this point, we'll just hear from our planner and engineer about any highlights to their reviews, maybe specifically addressing that one, John?
Most of my comments are holdovers until they get their agreement on the parking lot from the neighboring owner. We did talk about having a crosswalk across the, here, you should show that on the plans and how you get from here to there, so that it completes the link from Main Street walking, I think. It'd be nice to have something across Fishkill Avenue and there are future plans for a development of, redevelopment of Fishkill Avenue, maybe you'll get that. The one thing that I did want to bring up that's different this time is that you've reduced the size of the calculation for parking on the outdoor venue space, and it didn't seem to me that reflects the full volume of how people would use that space, there's a sort of a dotted line here that reduces it from, what was it, 5,850 square feet to 3,860 square feet. It seemed kind of arbitrary in order to reduce the number of required parking spaces rather than to reflect how the space might be used.
Yeah, I think, when I originally had that outline, that was more arbitrary, just trying to generally locate that area where the audience would be sitting, and then when we looked about at, you know, how it would actually work with the stage area and keeping some reasonable amount of circulation around where people might be sitting, I pulled that in a little bit, and also because the, you know, the building inspector determined that it was, you know, one car per 100 square feet, which is really an interior sort of standard, but there's no outside kind of standard to apply here, so the way it's actually used is, you know, I think that's still pretty conservative.
Will it be?
And it sort of lines up with Jason's projections.
Will there be people sitting on the grass or standing around, or will there be fixed chairs or portable chairs?
It's mostly people bringing their own chairs and, you know.
So my guess is that they're going to spread out is the point, but you're right, that the standard is not designed for an outdoor venue, so.
Right.
But I think, you know, I think you need some more justification for how you came up with that number, because it is, that's how you determine your parking count.
Right.
And it looked to me like you arbitrarily brought the square footage down in order to cut down the parking to meet your.
Yeah, it was really, like I said, to try to reflect how it would really be used and to keep some circulation around it as well, you know, because people are kind of spread out on the ground and you want to keep, you know, some kind of reasonable way to get around when that's happening.
Maybe one way you could do it is to estimate the number of people who've used that outdoor space, since you've already had events there.
Yeah.
How many people generally come to that on a peak condition?
Well, that was the thing, because, you know, I spoke with Jason about that and what that area yields winds up with his experience, closer than the other ones.
If you could document a couple large venues in which you say, well, the maximum capacity of what we have out there is X number of people and that fits within our calculation.
Yeah, okay.
Something to justify, because it seems to me the way the lines are drawn seems pretty arbitrary to me.
Okay.
And doesn't fully make the space available. But I understand your predicament, it's our parking table is not precise.
Right. Okay, I'll get some notes on there to document that.
And the other ones I think are pretty self-explanatory.
Thanks, John. John?
So the applicant has retained Hudson Land Design to prepare an infiltration and inflow, basically an I&amp;I study of the existing building, so we're still waiting upon that to be submitted. As Mr. Hughes had noted, I had met out on the site with him, during that conversation it came to light that the original utility hookups into the existing building with regards to sewer was not going to work. So they will be extending their sewer lateral out to Hannah Lane, and the city currently has out to bid a sewer improvement project to replace the city sewer that's running through Hannah Lane now, so he will be able, or will be provided with a connection point to allow for that to occur. Aria, the stop sign, you keep telling me it's on the side, I keep going out there and it's in the center.
Oh, it is now, but I'll clarify that that'll be relocated there.
He knows when you're going out there and he moves it every time.
Every time I've been out there, it's been in the same spot. It's never. I'll take care of that, and also I should note that you sent me the drawing of where that sewer hookup is.
I did send you the drawing, so.
Yeah, so I'll locate that.
And on the plans it notes that we're going to extend a stub out of that one manhole to allow for connection. The rest of them are minor comments, you know.
Thank you. Board, any questions of the applicant or other comments?
No comment.
Okay.
No questions or concerns?
Okay, great, so we'll go to the public, first we have a number of written comments submitted, there are eight that we have on record, all on the same subject, meaning they're exactly the same, they're just signed by different people, so those are in the record. I will note, though, these do make mention of the fact that the applicant has, right, you know, as they should, obtained noise permits or permits for events and that no noise complaints have been at least recorded, but however, you know, they want to make sure that, and again, this is eight people making the same observation, that the applicant, moving forward, has taken steps to make sure that there are no future noise disturbances. So just want to make sure that it's understood that those observations by eight people on the same subject have been made and are in the record. Then three others, one, two, three, four in favor. Again, those have been entered into the record. Anyone from the public who would like to share their comments with us, thank you. Oh, excuse me, more than four, quite a few in favor.
All right, good evening, my name is Katie Sheehan Lopez, I'm a homeowner, homeowner at 16 Blackburn Ave. I also have two young children living with me, and I just want to say that in general I'm in support of local events and local businesses, and the noise from the yard normally doesn't bother me, but however, I do live directly across the street, and over the last year or so, there's been a few instances where the noise, the music has gone on quite loud and quite late, in one case it was past 11:00 PM. I did not ever make a formal complaint, just because it was infrequent and it didn't seem really worth it, but my concern is that with the expansion, these loud events are going to go on more often and maybe later. So what I'm asking is that not, I'm not in opposition to the build-out, but I am asking that the noise and amplified music have a really strict end time in compliance with the city ordinance, which my understanding is 9:00 PM, and that they're limited in frequency. So just asking the board and the business owner to remember that there's lots of residences directly across and lots of small children in the neighborhood also with bedtimes. Thank you.
Thank you. Quick question to the applicant, have you, have you self-limited cutoff times?
Absolutely.
What is your cutoff time?
Well, it depends on the noise permit for which we've applied. The latest we've ever applied for is 11:00. There was, there was one DJ once at a fundraiser who at 11:00, sort of in defiance, turned it up for a minute until somebody got to it and turned it off. But no, we enforce these things, we take them very seriously. If our neighbors hate us, we're going to fail.
So you're applying on a case-by-case basis?
We have been.
Yep.
We, we applied for an annual noise permit that Dave Buckley approved pending site plan approval, approved pending this process.
Great, thank you.
Which will be for the remainder of 2022, assuming this process is completed, and then up for review in the future, or at any time.
Did you have something, John?
Well, I asked for hours of operation, especially, and they said on their application here that evening event performances will end no later than 10:00 PM.
No later than 10:00.
Right, I haven't checked the noise ordinance to see if there's anything specific about end times on amplified music, I will do that before the next meeting.
I'm sure Dave knows.
I mean.
Well, Dave knows, sure, yeah, well, I don't know, maybe he does.
I would say that there's a difference between a concert with amplified music and, you know, an event with a tent outside and a small PA playing inside the tent, no outdoor music, you know, and so I think that there's a, there's a difference there in what the neighbors hear. We have a tent up right now, we had, at, we cut the music at 11:00, at 10:30 we cut the music outside, at 11:00 PM I walked the entire perimeter of the property with a decibel meter, we were at 59 decibels at the property line, not even 10 feet off the property line, with, you know, background music playing in the tent. So I mean, you know, this is something that I'm very conscious of, I'm constantly aware of it.
Yeah, that's good, that's good, I mean, it looks, it sounds like you're doing the right thing. Noise is noise, people perceive it differently, you know, you're neighbor to other people, so it's just a matter of being very cognizant of the fact that.
Agreed.
Some kids have to get to sleep early, some adults have to get to sleep early. Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Bridgette Flanagan, I live at 7 Franklin Avenue, which is diagonal from where this venue is going to be taking place. I have a problem with their noise, I get up at 2:00 in the morning every day, I am the property owner of the house, I've lived there for 23 years, I shouldn't have to relocate, me and my family, because somebody wants to operate an all-night business. Last summer I was interrupted with my sleep and my schedule with noise that was coming on from across the street. I'm not the only one with kids on my block, there's several young families that have recently moved in, approximately six, within the past four years on my block alone, I live on a one-way block, okay, and these children are, I would say, five and under, we don't need this in our neighborhood. We didn't buy their homes to have other people come in and have music blasting all night. You want to do that, take it down the block, it doesn't need to be on our block.
Thank you.
And I wish for you to review this very seriously.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Amanda Means, and I live at 5 Hannah Lane, number five, right across from Jason. I have known Jason Hughes for nearly 10 years, he became my neighbor on Hannah Lane in 2013, I had been living there since 2008. In an early conversation with Jason, I remember him saying that after his becoming a resident of Beacon, his priority was to be sure that all of his projects would be geared toward having a positive effect on our Beacon community. He had bought this large property on Hannah Lane that used to be part of the Talix Foundry, there was a big warehouse building there with a large grassy area on the side, he calls the property L&amp;J and the yard. For the past nine years, Jason has been holding many different types of events on the property. These include both private and public events. The private events include things like weddings and other types of family gatherings or other kinds of gatherings for different sorts of groups. The events open to the public include various pop-up markets, the spring pop-up market, holiday markets, there was a wonderful one last year for Christmas, to support area artisans and provide local handmade items and foods for the Hudson River Valley community. There are fundraisers that help support not-for-profit groups such as Fairground, Beacon for Black Lives, the Firefly Festival for Common Ground Farm, Land to Learn, when it was Hudson Valley Seed, and a comedy benefit show for Planned Parenthood. Fundraisers that provide enrichment for the community as well as financial support for the yard such as concerts, films, and community parties, for example, a wonderful Halloween party last year called The Undead Bazaar, which maybe some of you attended, it was completely sold out. I am one of seven condo residents who live directly across from Jason's property. There are also three commercial owners that are part of the Talix Commercial Condom and Homes property. Jason has been considerate and responsible toward us every time he's held an event. I hear the music, but it doesn't bother me, but I'm not sure why, maybe because I don't have little kids. He notifies us ahead of time with his events and asks permission to use some of our parking areas when it is needed. He helps keep parking organized with signs that he provides, he does what he can to minimize any disruption to our condo community across the street. If there's a problem, as far as I know, he probably takes care of it. I'm completely in support of granting Jason of granting Jason Hughes the special use permit and site plan approval that he requests in order to convert his building to an indoor/outdoor event space. Until now, Jason has had to apply for a permit each time he holds an event. With a special use permit, this will no longer be necessary. He'll be able to hold events much more easily without so much red tape. Jason has already, for the past nine years, proven himself capable of handling all of these events in a safe, responsible, and considerate manner. He's a pleasure to have him, and the yard is my neighbor. He has helped the Talex community owners with our interest in developing a neighborhood with a cooperative spirit and the spirit of equality and diversity. I'm wholeheartedly in favor of granting Jason the special use permit and site plan approval that he has requested.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
I will note, I appreciate your comments. You also submitted them.
Yes.
So we have them in the record.
I just wanted to be here in person.
Appreciate it. Thank you. So, but anyone else who's, just mention this, out of, you know, a spirit of expediency, not to you necessarily, but anyone else who's already submitted in writing, don't feel it necessary that you, unless you really feel you need to, don't feel it necessary to also then repeat your comments here. So, thank you. Anyone else?
Teresa Kraft. I have concerns about the noise from this venue late in the early evenings from, um, hang on. Sorry. It's been a long day. I have concerns about noise from this venue late in the early evenings for the neighboring residents, and I also hear it across the creek. I hope they follow city noise ordinance codes, and if necessary, that they are enforced by the city. With this type of permanent event space, like most, I want the city to install a flashing crosswalk system on Route 52 and Blackburn for their patron and visitors who will eventually go to and from Memorial Park, as well as all park visitors and schoolchildren. I hope you grant this special use permit with stipulation it meets the noise ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would note that we did get a series of letters from people on Herbert, written comments about noise in particular. And I would, I would like to see the applicant address those specifically and how they might change the configuration of their stage or our speaker system or whatever, so that the direction of the noise is not towards the neighbors to, on the Blackburn or Herbert Street side.
Well, there isn't, I mean, as I've stated at a couple of previous meetings, there isn't a set stage configuration. We have had, in our last three concerts, we had the stage in three different locations. We learned things from those. One of those locations was unsuccessful from a noise mitigation standpoint. We would never do that setup again.
Well, you show a stage location here and a layout for seating, so you imply that you're going to put your stage and speakers over on the far corner on the, on the Blackburn Street side.
It's a multi-
Pointed towards Herbert Street. So I'm asking that you should document, if you have learned how to mitigate noise, how you're going to do it in the future so that your neighbors aren't upset about it.
It's a multipurpose venue. I, I mean, that's, it's an indication, that is an indication of one potential usage. A pop-up market won't have a stage in that corner. I mean, I understand what you're saying. I just want to be clear that we're not building a stage in that corner. We're not adding a big PA there. What I can say that we've learned is that we need less bass. We've cut the subwoofers from most of our setups. And, and then the other thing that I would think is that, some of what we're getting with that setup, with the setup that's shown in REA's drawing, the biggest concern is reflection off of our building, audio-wise. I think that our food service container that's, that is proposed to be added over on the other side is actually at a good spot to dampen reflections, to help with some of that noise mitigation. I think that there are some things that can be done on the property. And I think that we are already, I mean, I know that we are already doing those things. Whenever we do a setup, we walk around and listen. We, I mean, not just on the property, off the property as well. So this is something that we are conscientious about. This is something we take very seriously.
Well, I just need, it should be reflected in the application because, you know, we were, we were told that there was no noise complaints, and we've gotten noise complaints, so I think you have to address that more carefully than you have at this point. That's my opinion.
Yeah, so just to kind of clarify that further, characterize it further. I'm sure you're in receipt of this specific letter written by neighbors on both Blackburn and Herbert. And so...
I have not.
The, and I'm not going to-
I do not have those letters.
You don't?
No.
Okay. So they're now a matter of public record, so...
They're on the website.
You can access them. So just, just, just to highlight, though, and this is part of the statement, and Israel making the same statement, "We appreciate that proper permits were obtained for the three concert events already held at 4 Hanalein. However, it is a logical fallacy to assume that since none of the setups resulted in noise complaints, no one was disturbed, and therefore, the introduction of comparable events on a routine basis will be problem-free," right? So I'm just emphasizing this so that you're aware of your, the experience of your neighbors. "We wish to correct the mistaken conclusion that because no formal complaints were filed, that surrounding residents were not disturbed by the noise. We were disturbed greatly. The event organizers may have obtained proper permits, but to our knowledge, no one reached out to homeowners in the surrounding area to inform them about the outdoor events that were planned, nor was there any other follow-up with neighbors afterward to inquire about any adverse reactions. Had either, either of these measures been taken, they would have received a vocal negative response. It should also be noted that many among us, who know and respect the owners of LNJ, were trying to be good neighbors as well. We do not want to create trouble for our friends in the community, and we hoped and assumed these would be rare or ideally one-time happenings." I just, I highlight this part of it. There's more to the letter, just so that you're aware of, though I understand you're taking great lengths to be a good and respectful neighbor, there are those who experience things beyond your understanding currently of their, honestly, their experience. So...
To my neighbors whose suffering I was unaware of, I'm sorry. We will do everything we can to be better.
Yeah, no, this was, again, this was just to highlight the fact that, again, I know you're taking, we know you're taking great pains to be a good neighbor.
And now that I'm aware of that, I can do more.
Good, good. That's the, that's the reason why I mentioned it.
Thank you.
Um, great. Thank you. Did we already cover, yes, we did. Anything else around the board? Characteristic.
I just agree with that, you know, that concerns, it sounds like more work has to be done to figure out exactly what are the regs for the noise, you know, hours, decibel levels, and then understand, you know, because the applicant is saying that they're monitoring with a decibel meter at the perimeter, so either the standards aren't enough to protect the neighbors' sensitivities, or there's some disconnect there, right? So we, we need to figure out what that is so that we can proceed accordingly.
Thanks, Lynn. So at this point, how do we want to, how do we want to proceed, Board? Do we want to maintain, keep the public hearing open? Yeah. Agreed. Yep. Okay. So applicant, thank you. We'll, we'll see you next month. We're going to keep the public hearing open, and we'll go from there. Appreciate it. Thank you. We'll move to the next agenda item, then. And given that this is a public hearing, I'm going to suggest another one-minute break. Forgive me. All right. So, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
This is our next agenda item, which is number five on the agenda, public hearing on application for special use permit and site plan approval, hotel and event space, 1113 Walcott Avenue.
Again, good evening. Good super moon, full moon evening to all of you, evidenced by our public hearing night tonight.
We wouldn't know. We're stuck in here.
For the record, my name is Taylor Palmer. I'm a partner with the law firm of Cuddy and Fader, on behalf of the Alton Prophecy Theater LLC, regarding the property located at 1113 Walcott Avenue. Tonight, I am joined by our project architect, R.A. Siegel, as well as our parking consultant and traffic consultant, Rich DeAndrea of Colliers Engineering, our engineer, Mike Bodendorf of Hudson Land Design. We're also joined by the applicants and owners, Gavin Hecker and Lauren Walling of Prophecy Theater. As the chairman mentioned, we are before you this evening in connection with our public hearing for the site plan special permit. For this, there's no subdivision involved in this application. For the record, as this is a public hearing, we did notice the application with the signage, the appropriate mailings and notice required by the Beacon zoning code. Just by way of brief update, we did provide a supplemental submission to you dated May 31. We did also include a June 8 submission, which just included some of the additional letters of support. So we've had more than a dozen letter of support that we've submitted to you. We just also provided some additionals, and we note that Amanda also posted some more to the website. We did want to point out one item. I did want to give a quick background, of course, as this is a public hearing for the benefit of the public. There may have been some misinformation that has been circulated about the project, so we hope that tonight's presentation can help some of those here with us this evening understand the project more fully. Just for the benefit of the board, excuse me, and the public, the applicant first appeared before your board in July of 2021. Since that time, the applicant has been before both your board and the zoning board of appeals. The property consists of a through lot from Walcott Avenue through to Beakman Street, just up the road, or down the road, I guess, for those that parked at the back end of City Hall tonight. It's presently improved by a historic church, as well as the rectory and the cemetery. It's collectively known as the Reformed Church of Beacon. It's our understanding that the capacity of the church is 336 people existing today. It is in the city's R141 Family Residence District, and it's also in the city's Historic District, Landmark Overlay District, which permits the hotel and accessory uses that we're proposing on this property. The refined program, scope, programmatic scope, excuse me, that has been reduced from the original envision of this project. So we have reduced it significantly since the beginning of the project. Collectively, the adaptive reuse of the project, or excuse me, the adaptive reuse of the church and the property involves expanding the existing two-and-a-half-story, third, excuse me, expanding the rectory into a two-and-a-half-story, 30-room hotel with 31 off-street parking spaces on the site. We'll also be renovating the existing church into an accessory-use space that includes conference events, dining facilities for a cafe, restaurant, bar. We're also restoring the cemetery to a public park, which will be including a walkthrough from Beakman to Walcott Avenue. The previous capacity that was proposed for those accessory events was 420 people for larger weekend events, and that expected capacity had been reduced, as is presently before your board, to a maximum for the limited events of 350 people. So we did want to note importantly, that notwithstanding that capacity, that maximum capacity on the site, for these occasional larger weekend events that typically are expected, are typically expected to have far fewer people from events ranging from 125 people to 200 people. Along that same line, instead of hosting events seven days a week, there are fine scope of our project that has conference center programming. Would like to be limited only to weekends with smaller functions and seminars, workshops generally held Wednesday to Friday, ranging from 50 to 200 people. So again, those larger events, those, the maximum capacity are limited, and limited to those days, as noted. The hotel will, of course, be two, 365 days a year, 24/7. The dining facilities will also be situated in a portion of the historic church, and will serve reception guests for the hotel, and offer breakfast, lunch, and dinner to hotel guests and members of the public. The dining facilities are expected to operate, again, seven days a week, but they will also align with the hotel operations and guests. Ultimately, I know it's been a long night before you, so I do want to just get some procedural items noted, and I will let Gavin also speak to sort of the history of the church and their involvement in finding the property and their experience at other sites, and then also have Rich DeAndrea touch on, more importantly, the traffic and parking analysis that's been done on the site. Before I do turn it over to them, I just want to highlight a few more procedural items, as I did see a number of the zoning board of appeals here this evening. This application was previously referred to the building department, who made a determination associated with the application for the use, and ultimately made a determination, determination of the off-street parking requirement. The application does require a parking variance from the zoning board of appeals. So as part of that, your seeker review, which we're currently under at your board as an involved agency, we referred over to zoning for their comments, and they provided a memo to your board. Much of that discussion with the board, of course, focused on the, the parking, which is the issue that zoning would face if that application is ultimately referred to them. We are, of course, before you for our hearing tonight and the continued seeker review. So with that, I will turn it to Gavin, just to orient the public to how they've came about the property and their, their goals and vision for the site, and then we'll have Rich, please, go through the extensive work that's been done to highlight the effectiveness and the availability of, of parking in proximity to the site, and how our, our traffic management plan and sensitivity analysis helps ensure that we won't have a potentially significant adverse environmental impact. Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. My name is Gavin Hecker, and I am a partner in this project. So I'm going to try to make this pretty brief. I have two pages here. "Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the Reformed Church of Beacon and the parsonage and our plans to preserve it. I want to take some time to bring history into this conversation and establish a proper timeline. The church building predates all of Beacon's modern developments, including the two adjacent developments. The original church built on this site in 1813 was determined to be too small for the growing congregation, and in 1861, the existing church was completed, thereby increasing its size to accommodate the growing number of attendees. This came at a time when many people regularly attended religious services and when churches were at the heart of a community, providing people with a sense of belonging, education, hope, and song. In 1861, 100 years before, Lyndon B. Johnson's program to combat poverty, churches were also places where people sought help in times of need. This is to say that churches were very important and busy institutions. Accordingly, accordingly, the church was built to accommodate over 330 people. Things have changed, and unfortunately, the importance of churches in America has declined. There has been a steady decline in religiosity in the United States. Consider this, just 20 years ago in 1999, 70% of Americans said they belonged to a church. In 2020, that number was down to just 47%. This means that large churches are emptying out and become financially unviable unless they find new life. As I noted, the church was built to accommodate well over 300 patrons and has existed for over 150 years, predating the surrounding developments. We have come up with a plan that would give the church new life and would allow us to preserve this historic building. Our proposed operating model shows plans to adaptively reuse, improve, and maintain two existing structures, and rehabilitate an abandoned cemetery on 2.2 acres of land. Importantly, our plan includes a way to preserve the church by using it as a cultural space, which will be, which will be open to the public. Like any religious congregation would, however, we need to meet a certain threshold of revenue to preserve the church. Our proposed plan is not immune to the need for patrons. Let me elaborate on this further. On the one hand, the city of Beacon designated the property as historic, signaling that it has an interest in preserving the building, and on the other hand, however, it puts rules and regulations in place that directly interfere with our or any other owner's ability to pay for the preservation of the church. In other words, limited parking and a reduction in building occupancy severely limits the ways in which the building can be preserved. And I, I want to be very clear at this, that this problem would not go away if the church would continue to be a church. Only a large mega church would have enough members to support this building. To be clear, any future religious congregation would look to maximize use of the property with maximum-capacity events that typically occur on weekends and rely on off-site parking. There are thousands of churches across the country, as well as neighboring communities like Cold Spring, that use or rent their space for large, nonreligious events. This undoubtedly would have been the eventual progressive, progression of this building if it had maintained its current use. It is completely permissible today for 336 people to occupy the church for events at all times without limitations. Our proposal provides a solution that accommodates for the currently existing occupancy and implements a strategic plan to ensure the survival and preservation of this building. Furthermore, we have planned for and taken the necessary actions required to manage, improve, and improve upon the needs associated with the mitigation of parking and neighborhood-related issues required for this special use permit. And now I'd like to take a moment- And now I'd like to take a moment to speak about parking and how it relates here. With the expansion of the parsonage house, our plan includes a 30-room boutique hotel and onsite parking to accommodate. As an accessory to the hotel, use of the event space will be limited. Because of the size of the existing church and the desire to preserve green space, it was decided that we would rather not propose to pave paradise for an additional parking that would remain empty most of the time. Our parking and traffic studies show that our need for additional off-site parking is more than adequately accounted for by nearby available parking within a five-minute walking distance. Due to limited frequency of use, it is common for event spaces to rely on off-site parking, especially those of historic significance. Beacon is a pedestrian-friendly city and has worked hard to provide a safe network of crosswalks and paths that already connect our site with available parking. We will ensure the safety of our patrons and neighbors by designating security to oversee and ensure a smooth and non-disruptive operation outdoors and indoors. I understand that, at the time the neighboring developments were built, the church was minimally active, but a minimally active church is not a long-term financially sustainable option for the Reformed Church, which is precisely the reason why the church became available for sale in 2020. The church was purchased with the blessing of the former congregation, who also weighed in and supports our plan for adaptive reuse. Our decision to pursue this project was further solidified by support from city officials and the mayor, who at the time were also contemplating the future of this property. They had voiced their opinion that the church and parsonage would be well-served as a commercial establishment, which would help link the MTA station to Main Street and be woven into the fabric of downtown Beacon. I am deeply sympathetic to my neighbors, and I know that change is hard and scary sometimes. I can assure you that I have read each and every letter and take their concerns seriously. I regret that the Reformed Church was no longer able to sustain itself. That said, the future of the building is and has to be an active one for the building to survive, and this is your chance to weigh in on that future. Our intent to pursue a non-exclusive operating model is significantly hindered with a reduction in capacity. We want the church building to function as a space that benefits our entire community and not rely solely on serving as an expensive venue for weddings or corporate events. Only with the support generated by our ability to host an audience suited for the currently existing capacity can we sustain affordable programming that allows for intimate and quality cultural events. I hear our neighbors and understand that some would rather we host events with substantially less people and cater to a more exclusive affluent crowd, but I object to that exclusion. Churches have historically opened their doors to their communities, and we wish to do the same. Coming from a background rooted in nonprofit theater, it is of utmost importance that we are not shutting out members of our community by establishing a cultural institution which can only function by catering to people with substantial wealth. We plan to have a flexible seating to accommodate a maximum audience of approximately 320 people and limit these maximum-capacity events to weekends. At other times, the church facility will be available for workshops, rehearsals, retreats, seminars, art exhibitions, classes, and smaller talks or lectures. I have read our neighbors' letters carefully and have spoken with many of them in person and can relate to their concerns. I, too, am a member of this community with small kids of my own and cherish quiet nights. I also see that there is substantial support from our neighbors for cultural use of the church. To me, this is a choice to prioritize cultural and inclusive community engagement over more development that would give nothing back to the community. Change, especially for the church, is inevitable, and I am asking for the support to make it a change Beacon will be proud of, one that our neighbors will benefit from, and which succeeds with our and the city's goals to preserve the church, cemetery, and parsonage.
Thank you. I just should note, I neglected an important procedural item, and that is to open the public hearing. I'm sure you were just about to jump up and tell me to do that. So with that, I'll accept the motion to open the public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Jill.
Seconded.
Seconded by Len. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Good evening. Rich DeAndrea, Colliers Engineering and Design. And I'm just going to try to briefly touch on and reiterate some of the work we've done on the traffic for everybody's benefit, the traffic and the parking. As the board's aware, we prepared a traffic and parking impact study that was presented to your board and reviewed by your consultant. That focused on the traffic impact, the traffic generation of the potential projects, and separately, the parking impact, and what's, how we are accommodating that in the area. We've also prepared a sensitivity analysis at the board's request, which accounted for less number of hotel guests attending the events, and also looking at how that traffic, the potential traffic impacts of that, of those events going to the specific locations where we're identifying off-site parking, how that impacts the traffic and flow in the area. Together with those two studies, we pretty much identified that there's really no significant traffic impact associated with this project from a traffic flow standpoint. There was some recommendations for some single adjustments up at the intersection of Beekman Street, but that's a more of a cumulative mitigation for the overall area and more related to the train station. So that, on the traffic end of things, that was generally what we concluded. The parking, obviously, is the big concern here, where we are currently deficient by, for the special events, by 88 to 79 spaces, depending on how we go about accounting that, for that. And, you know, what we did was, we looked at all the parking that's available in the area. And REA, actually, if you can pull up the, that slide right there. This slide identifies all the parking that we looked at as part of our study. Obviously, the closest parking is the municipal lot here, the Tompkins Lot across the street, and the Beacon Street parking. Together, those, what's currently available, we looked at those during all hours of the day to identify what's available there today, what do we need for parking for the facility, and we believe that there's sufficient parking as it stands right now to accommodate that. There's other parking beyond those areas. The applicant's working to identify other locations for off-site parking that we can dedicate to the project as well, and that can mitigate the parking needs for the project. And overall, we've shown that there is sufficient parking in the vicinity to accommodate the parking for these special events. The hotel itself is accommodated by the parking, the parking needs for the hotel itself are accommodated by the onsite parking, and the cafe would also, in the times when there's not events, there would also be a need for off-site parking for the cafe as well. That's another, that's 17 spaces. At the end of the day, you know, working with your board and the zoning board, we prepared a traffic and parking management plan for the project. One of the things that we looked at heavily is the circulation on the site, and REA, if you can jump down to the next slide. Since the last meeting, we've adjusted the circulation on the project, on the site to be a one-way clockwise circulation. All traffic entering only, at all times, at the southern entrance, at the southern driveway. All traffic exiting only at all times at the northern driveway. That was something that we discussed heavily at the last meeting. We've heard that concern from the board and we made that adjustment. So that'll be the onsite circulation at all times during, regardless of events, that'll be the circulation. As part of the traffic and management, parking management plan, we still propose to, as Gavin mentioned, we still propose to have onsite monitors to manage the traffic flow, manage the pickup and drop-off throughout the, those events, which we understand is a necessity for the larger events that we're proposing. And that traffic and parking management plan not only deals with the onsite circulation, but also how do we mitigate the parking off-site? You know, what that plan identifies is a way to disseminate information to the attendees on where the optimal locations are for parking, where we should, we've shown that there's readily available parking in the area, and that information will be, also be available through the onsite parking attendants to disseminate it as well, as people are driving in for pickup and drop-off. One of the other things that we've identified in the traffic and parking management plan, if you can go down to the next slide, REA, is the implementation of some off-site signage. This would, could include temporary signage at the River Ridge and West End Lofts driveways to indicate that there's no parking in those facilities. We don't want people parking there. And also some signage to identify other locations off-site for where the parking is, identifying parking at Tompkins Lot, identifying parking at municipal lot at other off-site locations that we've identified. So that's all included in the traffic and parking management plan, and we feel that, together with that plan and what we have identified as available parking, that we've shown that there is sufficient parking in the area to accommodate these occasional events of larger size.
So just a few, two things. One, I heard you make mention of traffic.
Yep.
And that your analysis concludes that there is no significant impact to traffic. I'm assuming you're stating that based on a maximum-capacity 350-person event?
Correct.
Help me understand that.
Okay.
Guys, I would appreciate no, either, you know, verbal or otherwise clapping. Thank you.
So the traffic analysis, and we've gone through this with the board several times, but the traffic analysis, there's two different parts to it. We did the non-event condition, and then we did the event condition. We looked at Friday evenings and Saturdays, which we identified to be the peak times when these events would likely occur, and we looked at the peak traffic during those time periods on Friday evenings and Saturdays. What's the highest existing background traffic that's out there today? We made projection, we then made projections of what the project will generate during those events, as far as flow of traffic lines.
Just another data point here. When you say Friday evenings and Saturday evenings, starting when and ending when?
So Friday evenings, we focused on the hours between 3:00 PM and 7:00 PM?
Overlapping with a Friday evening commute?
Correct.
Okay.
So we conservatively assumed that the events could overlap with the Friday evening commute. Is that necessarily what's going to happen? No. It's likely that those events may start later, but to provide a conservative analysis, we assumed that on a Friday evening, those events would occur at the same time as the commuter peak. Similarly, on Saturday, we looked more at the midday hours when traffic volumes are higher generally than on a Saturday even, later in the day or evening, to conservatively assess those, those traffic impacts for those projects. So once we identified what those background traffic volumes were, we made projections of the future traffic volumes, including other developments in the area, making, growing the volumes by a standard yearly growth rate, and then making projections of what the project's going to generate itself for traffic into and out of the site during those events. Then running the analysis for the intersections that we studied, which were from Verplank down to the south end of South Avenue along 9D, none of the intersections that we studied showed a significant increase in, in delay or level of service, with the exception of Beekman Street currently operates at a poor level of service leaving Beekman Street on the Friday afternoon.
So, so you just mentioned Beacon Street. I'm also reading.
Beekmin.
That's what I said, Beekman.
Okay. I heard Beacon.
Now, it's a different part of town.
Well, it's right across the street, right?
Yes.
Don't enrage him now, though. Not a good idea.
I'm also, I'm also reading from our consultant's review that Church Street currently operates with a capacity constraint during Friday PM peak hour.
Right. That's the Beekman Street, Church Street intersection.
Yeah.
But the actual poor level of service is on the Beekman Street approach as you exit Beekman Street, due to the traffic exiting the train station.
Right. And that, based on that, you're recommending considering modifying the signal phasing.
Correct. And it's similar, similar recommendations we've made for other projects previously.
Right. And that's subject to DOT approval?
Correct.
Can I ask a question here?
Yeah, sure.
Can you, can you just help me kind of visualize, and I'm not sure this is applicable, but if it is applicable, can you help me visualize the sort of, the way the stream of arriving vehicles was divided up? And I'm just imagining that the model had some vehicles proceeding, you know, directly down Beekman to like the train station parking, and not stopping at the event space to drop people off.
So we actually did it two ways. In our initial study, we assumed that everybody was going to come to the site, and that everybody was going to leave the site, to get an idea of, if we had all that pickup and drop-off happening at the site, what are the impacts there? And does the, does the access at the site work? Right? Then, in the sensitivity analysis, we did separate analysis with different distributions where we divided it up and said, okay, this number of people are going to go to the municipal lot. This number of people are going to go to Tompkins Lot. This number of people are going to be Ubered to the site and dropped off, and they're not going to park anywhere. This number of people are going to go down to the train station. And we divided that up to see how that was going to function.
So, so, sorry, just a point of clarity here.
Yep.
So your study then takes into account a dispersed parking model, and therefore, at least in the adjacent area of parking to the church, your count is what? Is it simply the 30 or 30 odd that are available at the church property?
No. The 30 that are available at the church property are reserved for the hotel, right? So that distribution is separate from the, the event distribution, the arrival distribution.
So you're studying its impact on the city, then?
Yeah.
Is this, is based on this dispersed model?
Well, we, again, we studied it both ways, right? The initial study said, everybody's coming to the site.
Then they still have to go to another parking after that. And I just wanted to ask one question about that, that sort of like worst-case scenario for access to the site.
Yep.
That's where you were saying that, I think you were saying that you could stack eight cars in the driveway and perhaps 16 if they did it, if they felt, the attendants felt they had to use like two rows to accommodate.
Right, right. Yep.
And so, in that study, was there, I don't even know if you characterize this, but what amount of time was required to process the 100, you know, were you working, what's your total, you're working with a total of 79 cars or 90 cars for that, for this kind of like, you know, access to the event scenario? If you, if you laid out for us, it'd be...
So it's, it's a little bit different for traffic generation versus parking generation. We, in the...
We'll get to parking in a sec.
No, but it kind of relates to the way he asked the question.
And right now, I guess maybe if it helps, I would focus my question on traffic generation.
Yeah, okay.
To say, what, what's happening to congestion on 9D when you run a model where, say, 90 cars all come to the venue to drop somebody off, and they get, they're stacked up in 16, there's some time elapsed to get people out, and then do that rotation. They're also not going to be able to get out of the site until there's opening in traffic to pull out and all that stuff.
So all that kind of goes to the traffic and parking management plan. Like, our intent is not for all...
Right. Yeah, that was a worse, that's like a worst case.
Right.
But what did that look like? And this goes to John's question of, explain to us how it turned out in these scenarios, that there wasn't an unmanageable or undesirable impact, or there wasn't a measurable impact of them.
So the traffic analysis is, is built over an hour-long period, right? So the, the traffic coming in, the traffic coming out, in our modeling, accounts for that entire hour. And that's, so there's no, and the assumption is that, as part of this, yeah, there's going to be a, probably a peak 15-minute period where they're going to, there's going to be more cars coming in, but there is going to be some dispersment of the time period to where they come in and out. As part of that, you know, the analysis doesn't show that there's a significant impact on 9D because it doesn't specifically, it doesn't specifically account for what you're talking about with the drop-offs. We could do that separately... account for what you're talking about with the drop offs. We could do that separately, and we can look at, okay, what is the time to actually do a drop off? What is the queue generated from that? And then, and then make certain that what we're saying, the eight to sixteen vehicles can be accommodated in the driveway. But that's a separate analysis.
I just want to say, right now at the moment, I'm not asking for anything, but I think it would be good for everybody who's here and has an interest in it, you know, and wants to make comments at the public hearing, to kind of understand.
No.
And so, if you can give like a, just a really quick summary and say something like, you know, a typical scenario would be, you know, ninety vehicles bringing concert goers, and we had thirty of those proceed directly down Beakman and park at the train station. Twenty did drop offs. Ten of them went and tried to park on Rombout, where there was, you know, side street parking, because they didn't, you know, they just figured they'd go for it rather than try to hit one of the public lots. And twenty went to Tompkins. And it's just, I think it would just help people to grasp probably what's being modeled, right, if they knew, you know?
If I may, just to touch on that, I think what would be particularly effective, if I understand your comment, Len, specifically, is if we highlight, for example, a typical large event scale, like Taylor's going to be coming from Uber, John's going to be coming from, you know, the train station, you know, Rich is going to be riding his bike, you know, and all of those analyses, kind of understanding how, what that traffic management plan does. Because we're, we're speaking of it, you know, as if we have been, which we've been reviewing this with your consultant for a prolonged period of time. So there's a lot that's gone into it. As we mentioned, there's a sort of a twofold way that this study's been developed. It was the worst-case scenario, but then your consultant suggested, well, don't just take, you know, there are people that are staying at this hotel that, you know, were conservatively, and in our case, not taking it credit for, that will be patroning this, you know, the accessory use. That's, that's sort of the nature of how this functioned. That's why.
Add at least some.
Some. So, so we, but we went to the sensitivity analysis to say, okay, throw that assumption out, make it worse, make it more conservative, so that you have even more people, you know, knowing, everybody's just staying at the hotel because they want to go, you know, to some other event. You know, that, that part of it, that's why we did the sensitivity analysis. So if, if it's, if the board sees fit, you know, we're taking the comments from you tonight, and certainly going to work. This is not a one public hearing meeting. We understand that we're early in this review process. We encourage the public's participation because as, as the applicant mentioned, we want to hear the public's comments. We want to work it into our design. So I think when we come back to you, we might be able to make up, tonight's more about the higher level, getting into those, those details. These comments, I think we can work into that presentation. So it's, it's a real world. This is an event. This is as managed. You know, Taylor's out there with his flag jacket on, saying, here's where you're going, handing out the pamphlets. Jill's pamphlets from, you know, Metro North are there, saying, you know, this is how you should get to the event. So I think those are the ways that can better explain what that management study says.
I, I think it would be extremely helpful that, because, you know, modeling is somewhat theoretical, right? And it's all based on the inputs, right? And that we have a good sense of how potential real-world scenarios model out beyond, you know, a single sort of dataset input. And to that end, the larger-scale events, different scenarios as far as availability of parking, and some of these sort of random unintended, right? So, you know, and again, we're going to get to parking in a second, but, you know, this idea of an established available parking based on offsite presupposes that everybody's going to do that, right? As opposed to come and park on Rombout, or whatever, right? These unintended consequences. As well, an understanding on our part of when, at what point, does the management plan kick in, right? What, you know, what scale event, what's the, what's the number to where you start?
We've said, we've said this previously, but the intent is that the traffic and parking management plan goes for all events.
All events from a ten-person or whatever?
Yeah, I mean, if we have ten people coming to an event, do we need three parking attendants? Maybe not. But the intent is that the information gets disseminated the same way for every event, that there is attendance onsite to manage traffic flow and manage drop off.
Yep.
And disseminate information as people come in and out, and that, that for every event, that, that, that traffic and parking management plan would be in place.
Okay. So, so just, just in terms of what you're hearing from us, is it clear that, you know, just in terms of, just the, the scale, right? And really understanding some of these real-world potentialities and eventualities around a parking, a parking analysis.
You know, it's, because there's, what's happening is too, I mean, we've had the city's consultant review our report. From a technical standpoint, it's, it's not showing a, a negative impact. But we understand the perceived impacts because of those, those exact discussions. What, whether, and what we're trying to do with that management plan is keep vehicles away from, you know, from River Ridge, or from, you know, from the West End Lofts and all of the other projects. And we've been meeting with those folks and trying to make sure that that information is getting out. And that's in our plans, and that's in our reports. But we'll, we'll certainly, I think we can repackage that in a way that goes to a more, you know, just feels the event itself, so that it's understood that whether it is the hundred person or the, you know, the max three hundred person, again, these are not every day. They're, you know, occasional larger events to, to help limit the frequency of the events. But we, we hear you, and we will...
Yeah, and I think, I think, again, and we'll get to this, but I think we want to have a conversation about some of these larger-scale events.
Right.
What the intent around a frequency is, right? Is this once a year? Is it twice a year? And we want to establish that. So there's a clear understanding that this isn't, hopefully, every other weekend, where we're, we're seeing a max-out event. So, hopefully we can drill down into that with your help as well. So, any other questions about traffic? We'll go to parking in a second. Also offering, if you have any observations you'd like to make relative to traffic at the moment, please do. Thank you.
Yeah. The, I just wanted to kind of reinforce that the, the studies that Collars has performed, the initial study looked at, as, as Rich said, all traffic going straight to the site, based on points made or recommendations made to the board, and then requests made from the board to look at a dispersed trip distribution to account for the parking sites, offsite parking sites that they had identified, based on their evaluation. That's where the sensitivity analysis came in, which, again, we upped the trip generation of the site because we were not taking credits that were initially taken for the hotel. When you look at those two, that's, that's what Rich is making a reference to about, you, the, if you look at the two combined, the site traffic, with all the traffic going to it, was not a major issue. And the parking distribution showed that there was not a major traffic issue when the parking, or when the trips were distributed to the off-street parking, or offsite parking locations. And that's what has been our continued review of their technical materials. And that's kind of what our comment letter hits on, is that we have no further technical comments regarding traffic. It's more of about how they're going to handle the variance they're requesting for parking. Parking is the big item. And that kind of plays into the parking management plan that we're going to keep discussing.
Yeah, a good segue, because there would be no conversation about traffic without this concept of the need for additional parking. And let me just also clarify, when you, when you shared with us the, what you're seeking in terms of additional off-street parking, you set a variance from the planning, excuse me, zoning board of a hundred and four, correct?
Yeah, I think it's actually a hundred and five right now, but yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm seeing different numbers. You said eighty-something. It says a hundred and four for zoning.
The variance itself right now, as it stands, is one oh five. We initially, we had previously had thirty-two spaces onsite. We're now at thirty-one. So...
Going in the wrong direction. Okay. So then, just, let's stick on traffic real quick. Any other questions for the applicant on traffic or our consultant board? So then we'll go to parking. So you have been in front of the zoning board?
Yes.
So, just if I may, we have, we don't have an active application before the zoning board because we're still before the board for this hearing. But the board would have to make a secret determination before the zoning board could act, as it is.
Understood.
So, we are not actively before, we were on a seeker referral, but not for a particular variance application.
So you were, you were in front of them. You shared your, your plans with them.
Yes.
They heard you, and they shared with us their concerns.
Yes. And if I may, that, we did note in our letter to your board, I keep doing this, this is, but, we did note in our letter to your board, some of the characterizations that were in that letter were very specific to the seeker process, which is appropriate. I mean, it was a referral based on that discussion. But I would say that, that the communications or the discussions with the board were, you know, we provided them with copies of our studies, and the notions were more of a perceived than they were a technical nature. So again, the concerns that were represented back to this board, having appeared at that, that board for the three months that, that took place, there, the discussions about what was taking place on the site, the activities, those are accounted for. And we really put together the responses technically to those concerns. But they're, they remain, I think, what I would refer to as perceived impacts, not those that are, are, you know, and that's, that's part of where we were. But again, with the zoning board, we tried to present the application for, for the relief for the parking. We didn't agree with the building inspectors' characterization. There's a, I'm not going to get into the, the tailor math of, of the nineteen sixty-four exception and other parking.
Don't even go there.
I know. We're not going to do that. But yes, we did have a conversation with them. We did provide their memo. We did provide feedback in our letter to you about how we read their, their comments.
So when you say perceived impacts, I'm going to assume you're saying that very specifically in regard to some alternate facts.
So they, I think the perception was, for example, there was a comment in the, the memo referred to your board about whether someone would walk from a parking lot, and that, that closing a door of a car was a potential community character impact. You got a train that I can hear during our meetings while we're talking. So I, you know, some of those comments were perceived impacts. Closing of a car door in a parking lot isn't, shouldn't rise to the level of a significant environmental impact. So that's what I meant from a, some of the impacts are perceived as to where these cars in a city would be parking at the off-street locations.
So, so, okay, let me just stick with that. So, and I'll start with their somewhat summary. They're sharing with us their observation thusly, "Suffice it to say that the potential for significant adverse environmental impacts would increase if the applicant sought a parking variance for more than a hundred and four off-street parking spaces." So I think I'm hearing you correctly in saying that, that you, you sensed that the basis for them saying that is somewhat, what?
Taylor is at pains to help you interpret that statement.
No, I want to hear it from Taylor.
[laughing]
The applicant, I should say.
The applicant has provided the technical reports and materials and supports in their studies that adequately addressed off-street parking and traffic. The comments that were made by the board were of absolutely appropriate from a zoning board perspective of, we live in the city, we, we know what's going to happen, but your studies, you know, they, the studies identify and say what they say. They don't, there's no, the, the materials have been reviewed, so the perceived impacts are still there, whether it would have a potential impact on Beacon Street, whether it would...
I understand.
Those are there.
We need to meet the technical merits of a significant environmental impact. I get it. So, so that's our charge. I'm just, I'm just curious about your take on what the zoning board is sharing with us. And of course, I'm sharing this so that it's fresh in the board's minds.
I think they're saying the size was too, they think that the size was too large.
So I'll, I'll go on to say this, in regard to how they've characterized, again, in further summation, they're, they're sharing with us, "Significant uncertainty remains regarding parking availability during large events. Impacts on vehicle and pedestrian traffic, and the ability of parking enforcement to ensure patrons park in designated off-site locations," something I just addressed before. "A parking variance of a hundred and four off-street parking spaces would be substantial." Based on this input of city planner John Clark, I'd love to draw you into this stuff, "It appears that the only action that would avoid significant adverse impacts, as opposed to mitigating against them," and again, they're not, they're not saying environmental impacts here. They're saying adverse impacts, generally. That's how I'm reading this. So, keep that in mind. "Would be to reduce or eliminate the amount of off-site parking needed. Even though the applicant is working on securing parking off-site, it would likely be difficult to force patrons to park in these locations if closer, more convenient parking is available," this whole law of unintended consequences I'm referring to. "The zoning board is generally in support of the reuse of this historic building, but the zoning board has major concerns and, as discussed above, ultimately believes that the project may result in significant adverse impacts to the community." Okay? So there's a distinction there. And the way I sort of read that and sum it up, it's in align with our observation that a request for a hundred and four off-street parking spaces, variance for that, is significant. Okay. So, that being said, you have presented to us a plan around how you might address that off-street parking through means, right? Some of them city-supported, others private relationship or contract-related. Again, future, looking future, unintended consequences. What happens when the parking lot that you have an agreement on with the private owner then becomes developed? What does the city do then?
Right. And I think we had, at least the preliminary discussion, I can't recall if it was with your board, or if it was the zoning board of appeals, in that concept, or, for example, other discussions we've had about whether or not the, the public lots became otherwise utilized as a, you know, another development, or was not available, not again taking credit for any future new parking that the city creates. You know, there is the ability of this board as conditions to appropriately address that. We have already pro-offered, the applicant has a post-monitoring study, so as to, and that's incorporated in our traffic report details, that would, again, sort of, you know, prove the, prove, the proof is in the pudding, would, would go to show that the operations, as we designed them, and that management plan worked, and the sensitivity analysis addresses that. So beyond the approval, we've identified that there are mechanisms through, whether it's conditions or otherwise, if necessary, to incorporate those. I mean, there's a lot of things that we're, we're doing here. That management plan is not a, you know, it's like your comprehensive plan. It's a living document. So ultimately, it's designed to be adaptive to the conditions on the site. You know, other development that could come in the future, other things that work or, or don't work. But we are, you know, we've, we've pro-offered things like a post-monitoring study that would help, you know, for these exact questions that Len mentioned, whether there is, you know, a night where a car went onto 9D, what happened? Did somebody get a flat tire in the, you know, something to pinpoint what went wrong. That's not a, you know, a blimp falls from the sky. That might be tougher to control the traffic. I mean, there's, there's, you know, I don't mean to be so flip, but those are things that can happen. And I've, we've dealt with similar issues in other municipalities where questions of that variety will have come up. The plan is here designed to reflect that. But we hear you on the size, and I think, you know, we're going to take that back. And the applicants are, of course, here. And of course, we're going to hear from the public too, on their feelings, and hopefully we'll be able to work that in. But we have been providing, and we're working with those other areas, you know, private, you know, other lots, to try and manage it, but conditionable to bring us back to court, so to speak, if in fact those things were to...
Yeah, no, clear. And you have shared in the past before the fact that there are post-development mechanisms for monitoring and analyzing, you know, what then the real-world situation ends up being. You can, you can, I hope, completely understand as the applicant our concerns as this board representing the community on, and ask this large, right? For a variance this large. And look, it's, it's taking, it's taking out of the conversation right now, all of the, you know, stated benefits of, you know, community, you know, art and theater and all of that stuff.
Historic reservation, yep.
It's, 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 you know, right now, trying to grapple and get our heads around this idea, this significant ask.
Yes. And, and it is, you know, I don't, I don't need to belabor the point. I know the, the public is here and probably wants to cover, comment too.
Yep.
But, you know, this is a church today. It has a significant capacity. And as Gavin eloquently pointed out...
The church has the capacity. The site does not have the capacity.
The site, the site is approved for the use and could have weddings today for three, you know, for, we don't need to get, I don't want to go down that wormhole, but it is a...
I'll just sum it up. The, the site does not contain the capacity to harbor the number of parking spaces required for the use and the size of the...
For the existing approved use that is operational today without restriction.
Can I make a, a safety analogy really quickly, in just in terms of how I think we should tackle this collectively? From, you know, from a safety perspective, if you have a hazardous condition and workers are being exposed to it, you know, sometimes someone might say, "Let's just have everybody work a four-hour shift and just change people out more frequently." And then they, you know, they don't get for exposed as long. We don't have to do anything else. And that, that's very undesirable compared to fixing the problem with engineering controls, like, you know, getting, you know, or substituting the chemical or doing something to protect people. And I just, I just think I would, I would rather have us collectively figure out a way to manage the parking and manage the traffic so that we're not asking Gavin or the applicant questions like, "Well, how many..." questions like, well, how many decent-sized concerts are you going to have per year? Just one or four? Because there is a very, very, you know, bedrock thing here of, of being profitable and maintaining the building and meeting costs and making this successful. So I think we should move away from trying to put a cap, you know, or put, put some unrealistically small cap on the larger events that are going to be profitable and, and make sure that we address the, the, the issues. And if that includes something like considering, you know, some cities have resident parking zones where you don't get to park on a street unless you have a residence sticker and they, you know, it can differ by neighborhood. If we have to, I think if we need to consider something to protect residents on Rambout and Beacon from the disturbance of having tons of cars lined up on their streets during events, where if you don't have a residence sticker, you get towed, I would rather get those kind of controls and a, and a robust parking and traffic plan in place so that the events can happen and people are forced to go park at the train station because they know that if they glom up all the residential streets, they're going to get towed or ticketed. But make it work and, and, you know, let the place thrive, but, but have the robust structure to make it happen.
Sure. Yeah, no, I think, I think you're obviously working toward what I'm hoping for, for us to be able to confidently and with certainty leave.
Yes.
Understanding that we're not setting the city up, not just the city, but also this very, you know, almost dense community surrounding the church for problems.
Right.
Right? So I want certainty. So that's, that's just, so.
With that, I did just want to point out, just because I know the public is here as well, I'm going to speak for REA and I'll play mic for just a minute. We also have incorporated renderings, which are now up on the screen of the, of the proposal involving the hotel. So I did just want to highlight, just for the benefit of the public, we have also changed the design of this site to also mitigate and manage potential impacts to adjoining properties. So we've incorporated landscaping, we've pulled away, we used to have a, a drop-off circle in front of the church, which is one of the existing driveways. We've pulled that out of the application and we are working with Deborah Adamsons of Beacon, who is preparing our landscaping or has prepared our landscaping plan. So we've taken a lot of thought of our surrounding neighbors based on meetings that we've had, some more productive than others, about how to address those concerns. So a lot of those other community character potential impacts, we are mitigating and managing through those other implementations. So I know that the focus is on parking for, for good reason. We've heard you and, and, and the other, the zoning board with respect to the size of the larger events, but we are, you know, these things are getting put into the blender. So we're, we're hearing it and I think we can respond effectively to those going forward.
All right, great. We've got a long way to go. So just real quick, John, anything you'd like to add or highlight for the applicant relative to your review?
My main concerns are parking. And, you know, reading the zoning board of appeals letter does not bode well in terms of a substantial parking variance. So I think, I think you need to consider other options of how you can support the church without the three uses on the property that you're proposing. That's my personal opinion, I don't get to vote on it, but I think it's asking too much to put three uses on that site with 30-some parking spaces and especially the 350 size events. I know that, well, at least I, I read in an article that when they, where they interviewed the, one of the former pastors of that church and they said it was designed for 200 people. I'm not sure where the number of three, 38 came up with, but, you know, counting the fuses doesn't mean that's how many people park there. And when they did park there, there used to be parking lots on both sides and even before that, there used to be on-street parking on, behind Walcott. So anyway, that's, that's my personal opinion. I've, I keep summarizing my concerns about parking. The one new point was, since you've gone to a one-way entrance in front of the church, I think you can substantially reduce the entrance radius on the corners. You look at your turning diagrams, I don't think that a one-way entrance needs nearly as wide a throat as what you're showing, based on your turning diagrams. And so I, I think you ought to take another look at that.
Okay. I think that goes to JC's comment from prior meetings too, so.
If it's not apparent, your opinion always matters significantly to us and our deliberations. So, thank you.
All right. I mean, I, you know, I just want to make sure I voiced my concern, but I, I don't get a vote. I'm not, I'm just here to make suggestions.
I'll reiterate, your opinion and your reviews are extremely helpful to us in our deliberations. Thank you, John. Mr. Russo.
Parking is a concern. Pedestrians crossing Walcott is of concern also and how that's going to be handled. With that being said, I'll keep it brief, there's a few minor comments I need to address. We're still waiting for soil testing to be conducted at the site for stormwater.
Okay. So some work to do there. So we'll go to the public. There have been a significant number of and including, as you mentioned, 12 letters in support that the applicant has submitted. Those are in the record. They are all of the same form by myriad different residents. We'll go to the list, there was a sign-up sheet, so we'll go to that in a second. I just want to acknowledge there have been quite a few in the form of petition, if I may, capturing 156 signatures submitted by the president or on behalf of the residents of River Ridge Views by the president of River Ridge Views, Betty Wall. Then there are a number of miscellaneous letters characterizing their concern, the submitter's concerns in different ways, ranging from safety to parking to traffic. So again, those have all been entered into the record. So with that, we do have a number of folks here from the public. Yeah, again, significant, significant amount of sharing of observations by the public, all in the record. And then now we'll go to our list. We had asked, and thank you folks, that people sign up. So we'll go in order. And I'll again ask that we limit our comments to three minutes and that we're always hopefully respectful and that, again, if, if a previous speaker has made a point and that you'd like to make the same point, take that into account, acknowledge that point and keep it as brief as you possibly can. So thank you. First item on the, excuse me, first individual on the list is, I'm assuming this is you.
Jane Riley.
Jane Riley. Thank you.
So we're speaking together, we're from Stratford Avenue. This is Buzz.
John Bono, 10 Stratford Avenue.
Great.
10 Stratford Avenue.
So, so I'll start off. A lot of the things that were said here have been on my mind, so I really want to thank everyone for bringing all of these issues forward and I don't want to repeat them. And I really do appreciate this, this team here and the, the hard work that you do. And I think you've been very thorough in summarizing these requests and bringing forward your opinions. So I want to, I want to thank you for that. The thing that I'm mostly concerned with is the off-site parking on Stratford Avenue. This is where I live. I've been there over three decades and it's pretty much a quiet area and I like to keep it that way if possible. So as I said before, a lot of things have been mentioned, that's my primary concern and that, I, I really don't want to see tension at the time of these events because people are looking for a place to park and they don't have one and it's just going to be a major concern. And the other point I wanted to make is the noise. That's also going to be a big concern is the noise. That was it.
Thank you.
Now on Stratford Avenue where we live, years ago, we used to have curbs. They took all the curbs away. So when people come down there, and I know if I was going to a concert, I go by there. First street on the right, you pull right into Stratford Avenue and you just start parking. Park on our lawns because there's no curbs, you know, late at night after the concerts are over, people are wandering and meandering through the neighborhood, you know, which we don't have there. The pla, our, our neighborhood isn't even patrolled by the police, you know, so we're going to need a police patrol there. As a matter of fact, I don't know what the police are going to be doing during this whole thing. They're going to have to be managing the traffic. They're going to have to be managing what's going on as people are stopping and dropping people off. It's 9D, it's a one-lane highway, you know, it's a, a state road, they don't have another road to go down to. Handicap parking. Has anybody thought about handicap parking? Have we, nobody's even mentioned it, you know, because handicap parking's two spots. So if you've got 30 for the hotel, how many parking spots and then you're going to have to have two for the, you know, for the handicap? Does that mean what?
We'll, we'll, we'll address the comments, I don't want to interrupt you in your.
Oh, okay.
So we'll address, but we do have 80, we have worked in ADA parking to the design. That was a comment actually by the board that was added to the, to the site line. So it has been adjusted, which is why we lost a parking space from the count in the recirculation. But we'll, we will also provide written responses to the comments this evening.
Thank you.
So as to get those, but, but thank you for that comment. We will, we are providing that on the site.
Okay. The, the other thing is with, you know, being a taxpayer in this town, how, how involved are the police going to be? Are we going to have to hire extra police for these events? I'm sure we're going to. We're, we're short on police right now as it is. I guess that's really all I have to say, you know? I, I just know that if I was going to a concert, bang, oh, you know, you guys are living in a perfect world, you know? What if it snows? What if it rains? How many people are going to be down there? How many people are going to want to park in the, in the, in the train parking lot? You know, it's raining, it's snowing. I know what I would do, bang, oh, I'd park at the first spot I could, okay? And, and not to say, say anything against it, being in business, how many big events are we going to have? To me, every, every day could have been a, a big event. The bigger the event, the more money you make. So I would imagine eventually it's going to be, if it doesn't start off that way, every weekend is going to be a big event. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay? Appreciate it.
Buzz and I went to Woodstock 94 together, so he speaks for experience.
Thank you. And we.
Yes, we did. In the grocery store.
And if there are questions that the board wants us to address, we will come up and address them. I just won't go itemize unless you have.
Yeah, do me a favor, if you could, just questions that have been raised during these comments, if you wouldn't mind taking note of them.
Yes.
And then, once we're done with all the public comments, those that you would like to address, you're welcome to.
Appreciate that. And, and we would also note that these events are all, unlike the prior application, these are all indoor events, so they are inside.
Understood. Thank you. Next on the list, forgive me, sorry to read some of the writing, Elliot Stryfman. Thank you.
It was Kelly.
No C in Stryfman. I was here at seven o'clock and member Russo told me that we might be limited to three minutes, so I had to go back and redraft my speech. It's past my bedtime, so I'll speak loudly so I can keep you focused as well. My wife and I moved to Beacon in January 7, 2021, knowing nothing about it, but soon thereafter came to really enjoy it and our home with the views of the Hudson River and the mountains beyond. For some 10 months or so, I have been a member of River Ridge Committee formed out of great concern about the Prophecy Theater's application to transform the church and sanctuary into a high-attendance music and other event venue with hotel. I can safely say that all, 100% of the owners of River Ridge Townhomes are firmly against the application by Prophecy as it currently exists. Many of us have written letters to this board and some to the zoning board of appeals to express our reasons why the application must be denied, and that also runs to the notion urged by the developer of a so-called trial period. I trust you did read, read the letters that we submitted. Some of my fellow townhome owners will be speaking here, hopefully. If not, you will be reading their letters. We recognize that the church needs to be preserved or conserved because of its historical status and that finding another religious organization to buy and occupy those premises has been very difficult. Most of us should applaud the entrepreneurial spirit that makes each of our communities and villages and cities, both individually and collectively, more developed and appreciated by the residents and visitors. However, not every entrepreneurial venture deserves support. For example only, surely not one of us would invest in a telephony enterprise whose business model is to call everyone at all hours of the day, telling them that they need to buy extended car insurance or something else they don't need. Why do we resent this? Because it interferes with our quiet enjoyment of our lives and our homes. Surely, it is not a subjective gripe to want to be rid of those annoying calls. We believe the church project as presently conceived will interfere with the quiet enjoyment in those in our immediate community, 18 homes, as well as those other residential communities adjacent to or near the church. Members of this board have repeatedly raised serious concerns about how so few onsite parking spaces could work for what the developer has in mind for the hotel and entertainment event venue to be held principally within the church. You have expressed doubt about how persons entering the premises could find parking, parking spots and easily maneuver in or out of them, and you have likewise observed that in short order, this would cause serious traffic jams on Walcott Avenue. What about emergency vehicles that might have to attend ill-drunk or drugged event goers? Cars traveling from the north and being forced to decide whether they should continue past the entrance to the property will cause a standing lineup back to the traffic light at Main Street, if not beyond that. In turn, those individuals driving to the site from the south will find it nearly impossible to make a left turn into the church, causing a traffic jam all the way down to South Avenue. Those same vehicles will block or seriously hamper the ability of the owners in our community and the one across the street, among others, to gain access to northern traffic. It is unlawful to continuously ride in the middle lane created for east or west turns arising up and down 9D. In listening to the questions posed by the board members during the six or seven times I attended meetings here, it was plain to me that the questions you all posed to the developer, its experts and its attorney included their answers and that your efforts to remain facially neutral raised more than the specter of doubt that you held any real belief that the parking or traffic issues could really be resolved in favor of the applicant. The applicant's poor parking alternatives are at best speculative and among other things, presumed attendees will find no difficulty walking up hills from the train station or Beekman Avenue parking spots. You are all fiduciaries and while your role is to address the interest of all parties, to ascertain the propriety of an application, with all due respect, there comes a time when the true and objective facts, facts of things known or proved, must prevail. And when so patent, as we believe is the case here, you have the duty as fiduciaries to declare that this applicant's ideas do not work for the subject site, despite the applicant's many attempts to convince you otherwise with promises to return to the planning board with new ideas and amended ones. For sure, Mr. Palmer is a good and seasoned lawyer.
We got you at six minutes.
I'm at six minutes?
Yep.
Well, then let me jump down to something that I think is, I thought so, and I.
The limit is three, the limit is three minutes.
All right. I have, this is the last thing and I would ask, I would ask your trustee secretary to distribute this to the board, because I think, as they say, a picture is worth a thousand words. Our son and his wife were married at a former church in Buffalo called Babeville. It was converted by a singer, Andy DeFranco. These pictures will show you with absolute certainty why that made sense and why this does not.
Okay. Thank you.
And so I, so I'd like to just take one minute to walk you through.
I'm sorry, we have to, we have to limit. So thank you for the example, we'll, we'll take this into account, I appreciate it, but, but again, I'd like to make sure that we can make room in the evening for.
I know that the developer had eight minutes and is.
Uh, sorry.
Yeah, okay.
Different subject? The applicant has the time that they need. So next on the list, Betty Wall.
Hi, my name is Betty Wall and I am the president of River Ridge Views, which sits less than one.
Hi, my name is Betty Wall, and I am the president of River Ridge Views, which sits less than one hundred feet south of the Goodwill Church. I have been attending or watching all planning and zoning board meetings for one-one-one-three Walcott. I have met with the developers. I have submitted a letter from River Ridge Views to the planning board, including a survey taken by all of our residents several months ago. I have submitted a petition signed by all eighteen homeowners at River Ridge Views, and as you mentioned, I am saying over a hundred and twenty-five local Beacon residents who live close by, voicing our concerns about safety, noise, parking and traffic. I've also submitted a letter as a resident, but tonight I would like to read a letter from one of my neighbors who's out of town, who faces and shares a common lawn with the church. So this letter is from my neighbor. As the owner of sixteen River Ridge Court at River Ridge Views, our front yard is directly adjacent to the side yard of the Goodwill Church. We chose our particular unit for its view of the church, which we appreciate for its beauty and history. However, with such close proximity, we are especially conscious of its dilapidated and unsafe condition, and that of the woefully neglected cemetery behind it. We were then initially enthusiastic to learn that the property's new owners plan to give the church new life as a hotel, restaurant and entertainment venue. Unfortunately, as the scope of the project was revealed, our enthusiasm quickly turned to dread. We are now anticipating that just steps away from our front door, there may be as many as three hundred and fifty people congregating every weekend for concerts and weddings, and of course, smaller events for up to two hundred people on weekdays. The problem begins with parking. The current plan for attendees to park at several different remote lots with maps provided to guide them is insufficient and a recipe for chaos. As a hundred or more cars attempt to locate these lots, traffic will be ensnared, illegal parking inevitable, cars will be turning into our development to either park or make a U-turn, and pedestrians will be put at risk crossing Walcott. The expectation that many people will take the train is a faulty and delusional assumption, and valet parking is not a solution. It would make congestion even worse. There are vague plans for shuttle buses, but this creates its own set of problems when the events end and a horde of revelers congregate outdoors. Weddings and concerts engender inebriation, and tipsy attendees would have no problem stumbling onto our property. Fallout might includes, include excessive noise, cigarette smoke, physical damage, and even altercations. Police will be overburdened with complaints. The idea of reinventing the church is a good one, and a small hotel and a restaurant would be welcome additions to Beacon. But prophecy is being cavalier in its overlier, in, in its overly ambitious plan for large events. They have no place on the site, situated on the city's most trafficked artery, and with neighbors living within a hundred feet. We urge you to rein in this project to ensure that it is an asset to our community and not a detriment. Sincerely, May Skidborne and Mary Lou Carlin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Jaffe. Mr. Jaffe.
I'm not Mr. Jaffe, I'm actually, I'm actually gonna take this place. I submitted a letter. Uh, I understand I'm not supposed to reread that, but there are a few points that I did not hear tonight.
I'm sorry, are you on the list?
I am not. He doesn't wanna speak, so I am. Is that permissible or no?
I'm gonna- Oh, oh, so, okay, you're, are you Steve Jaffe?
Yeah.
Oh, so you, okay, I, I understand, please.
Yeah, I submitted a letter. I just wanna be respectful of time, but the primary things I'm concerned about are controlled environments and uncontrolled environments. So you're putting an uncontrolled environment in the middle of controlled, like, you're putting a uncontrolled environment in the middle of controlled environments, so that's residents.
Yeah, you guys, you need to direct your comments to us, not the applicant.
Sorry. I'm thinking about the fact that residential homes are controlled environments, and we are thinking about and discussing plans for an uncontrolled environment. I'm thinking about the fact that, to the point about smoking, you have folks with health issues that's gonna impact them as well. I'm also thinking about traffic. I'm also thinking about the designs that don't necessarily incorporate or include the people who are living around it. When I look at the scale of this property, it's actually not accurate. Church is further back. That hotel is in line with my front door. I share a lawn next to it. So I say this to say that everything's gonna flood into our existing neighborhood, um, and I'm just concerned about the size of that, because again, we're off a one-way street, or a street that only has, um, traffic going in both directions with one lane. So how are we going to actually change that, or how are we going to improve the things that we can't change, which we can't? So I think, I am in support of the church getting what it needs, but I think there needs to be a better plan that's actually functional, because the existing design is not functional. It does not speak to the community. The community was not surveyed about how we wanted to preserve the actual property, in which case I just feel like it's a push to save the church while pushing out the community that lives and occupies the space around it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Rachel Rivkin. Hopefully I'm saying that right. Rachel? I'm gonna go to the next individual on the list, and I'm assuming this says Paolo Brooks. Okay.
So, I did submit a letter, but, um, I did it last minute.
I need you to, please, thank you.
Oh, sorry, so, my letter, though, I submitted like at four o'clock, so that is my fault, so I would just read it.
It's, it's okay, it's in the record, so, yeah.
No, I don't know if it is.
Yes, if you submitted it, it's in the record.
It'll be in the record.
Okay.
Chairman, we just need to make sure that we're getting name and address of each.
Rachel Rivkin, Tower River Ridge Court.
Thank you.
So I'll just read my letter, because it basically states, I don't know where my phone is. I guess we started with history, or the applicant started with-
Sorry, I'm gonna ask you to just really deliberately speak into the mic, into the microphone.
Get close to it.
Right here, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
So, I guess we started with, um, applicant started with history. So, November third, two thousand twenty, I think is a day we all remember. It was one of the most contentious elections in history. It was also the day my husband and I moved our entire lives and came, and became full-time residents here in the city of Beacon. For twenty years, I lived in Manhattan, New York. Okay, twenty years I've lived in Manhattan, New York, and I've also been in the residential real estate industry. I have pre, I've sold numerous new developments and currently work at Sotheby's Realty International. I believe in commerce, as I also bought in a pre-owned construction development, which is adjacent to the applicant's site. I, um, so, that being said, I did also know the church parcel was for sale, but the beacon I bought into was one that four inches was, just a mere four inches of deviation of space, was that that was heavily contentious or fought over. So the fact that we have, wait, I have to do this. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, I don't believe in this project, and I also don't believe in the business model. He told me I had to do this. So this is the applicant's business model, a thirty-unit hotel with one employee. This is from Collers Engineering Design. And it will have two hundred sixty-seven person seats with ten employees slash vendors. So these people are gonna be coming here. I don't know what kind of hotel can operate with one employee, and they're not gonna be generating income on Main Street. They will not be dining here, they will not be shopping here. I pay taxes just like you, in a substantial amount, so let's bring something and make it right. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
Let's think of something, and it's one bathroom for all three hundred fifteen attendees. So I'm not stating the obvious, traffic, this, this and that, besides infrastructure, which I don't know if Beacon even has infrastructure to hold regarding water, sewage, electrical. Um, we helped gather those, we did a grassroots campaign, that shows my age, for those petitions, and they're all residents here.
Thank you. Paolo Brooks.
I didn't quite realize I was on the list, but, uh, that being said, um, you know, Rachel's husband and-
Can you give your address, please?
I'm not gonna get into, uh, my name's Dale Brooks, I live, hello, everybody. I live at ten Rivers, River Court, and, uh, you know, mere two years, I've lived in the city for twelve years, and, uh, beyond that, though, it's just a beautiful area. I might get into like, you know, why things could change. I, I would just say this, having lived in the city, and I'm a lawyer, I work in the insurance world, I just can't imagine with the scale, and then there's an issue as, such as a fire, such as some calamity. And more importantly, um, in the insurance world, I will tell you that, uh, like, New York City, the pedestrian knockdowns due to congestion, uh, they've reduced traffic, you know, um, to, I think it's like twenty, twenty-five miles an hour in the city per se, because of pedestrian knockdowns and fatalities. I just think in general to me, and, and I'm with Rachel, you know, obviously, um, it's about what's best for the city, and also, I think also for all, all of us who are, you know, I'm, I'm, I've been here for two years, so I, I, I truly embrace this town, the city, it's so good to us, but I think that creates a lot of potential. It wasn't me, was it?
You know, honestly-
I do apologize.
I don't think it's anything you did.
I've been sitting in this room every month for twelve years, a lot of years, and that's never happened before, so it might be-
Goes to show, you can have a calamity.
Yes, sir, the calamity, yes, sir, Mr. Warner. So, I mean, I'll just close it with that. I just think it just, it seems like the scale, it's, it's already been discussed, and I, I think it, it could present a lot of different, uh, potential issues. And lastly, though not religious, but a good friend of mine, I, he was gonna come talk a little bit, but, I mean, there's something to be said about a church, what, what does that really mean? And then lastly, I mean, there is a cemetery, and, and what, what happens there? And how, how do we know that's gonna be clearly protected and there's not gonna be some shenanigans going on there? So with that, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, and forgive me, I mispronounced your name. It's Dale, right? Dale, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Next, never heard of her, Teresa Kraft.
Teresa Kraft, I was hoping my battery wouldn't run out. Where to start? What's at risk with this proposal? After all the facts, we're still looking at a proposal for a dense commercial complex that will compound current traffic congestion and replace the scenic gateway to the city with, into a potential danger zone. It will alter bocalic grounds to become, in theory, an overburdened parking lot when the cars can't move in or out of that small lot onto nine D, let alone bringing in buses and delivery trucks. If allowed, the historic church will undergo significant interior changes to this magnificent Frederick Clark Withers structure listed on the National Register of Historic Places. That's one hundred and sixty-three years of Beacon history gone forever. In part, I believe this is a good cultural venue idea, but not at this location. It may not have a future as a church, but bringing in such large events into this site does not meet all the proper requirements. Its overscaled proposal will affect the quality of life for every surrounding neighbor, young and old, and every resident of this city. One, when done properly, smart growth and historic preservation go hand in hand. I hope the planning board and council do not rush this, thinking they'll fill another void, and, and I hope it's not a done deal, as some would like us to believe. The applicant's business plan is lacking, and its parking dilemma needs to work for everyone. They should not be taking it from Peter to Park Paul. This board must not consider taking public parking spaces into its calculations to solve the applicant's failure to meet its parking requirements required by city code. Like my fellow Beacon community residents, neighbors, family and friends, I believe we should be able to live, work and breathe in the most beautiful, livable community possible. Residents should not have to cry foul and continuously battle over development in Beacon. Listen to the outcry of the residents here, not just those involved in the profit. It's too big and it's in the wrong space.
Thank you. Just over two minutes, Teresa, nice. Uh, next on the list, and again, forgive me, it's hard to read some of this handwriting, Katie Sheen something? Or Kate Sheen? Okay, and then John Bono, that's, that's you, right? Yes, thank you. Kat Bartolomew?
Hello, how's it sound?
Good, thank you.
Hi, I'm Kat Tranel Bartolomew. Uh, I live at ten eighty Walcott, right across the street from Stratford, and my mom, she bought the house next door, and nine Rambout, almost directly across from the church. So last Friday, my mom and I were walking down Rambout, coming back from town. It was one of these beautiful sunsets, all these things. The kids were running across the street, and I had this moment of like, yeah, this is it, like, this is why we're here. You could let the kids run around. It's a nice neighborhood, and I'm not here saying, um, you know, don't build anything. I'm not saying, don't turn this into a restaurant. I'm not saying, don't turn it into some kind of public space that can suit everybody. What I am saying is that let's do something that keeps this area magical, you know? So, um, I don't think the proposal that we see in front of us today really does that at all. One of the things I think we should admit that people aren't really talking about, I think, is that this isn't just about a hotel and a conference center. This is really about, like, I think, like, a kind of music venue, right? Um, and a wedding space and a place for like live music. Um, that's what everyone's talking about, and you hear it outside of here. Um, it's not yoga retreats and corporate offsites, it's bands, like, big, loud, maybe awesome shows that like some of us would really wanna go to, maybe if they weren't right across the street from us. Unfortunately, I think that crosses the line from something that betters the neighborhood to something that maybe like creates like a little bit of resentment, you know, and sort of like a bad feeling for most of us who live here. I know you guys really care about the character of the neighborhood, this whole board, this is what you do. Um, and, and you know, I, I love to, you know, hear how we can kind of develop like a mitigation plan for what's going on here. We also know that, you know, I'm not gonna like beat a dead horse here, but like, there's this parking problem, and while the traffic survey commissioned by the developer says that there's gonna be a preferred parking area, that's not true either. Um, people are gonna park where it's convenient. That means Rambout Stratford Academy, Beacon South, right, because there's no enforcement, everyone's gonna park there, it's gonna be easy. I did it the other day in town, like, I don't look for the lot, because you drive into the lot and the lot is full, and you have to turn around and, you know, go to the other lot. No, you find your parking spot and you go. And I read in one of these, I've read everything online, and one of the things was saying how this is like a high-density urban residential area. Maybe, but like, if you're in, what are we, in R one forty, right, which is like my residential zoning? That's like an acre, a lot. That's not supposed to be like a high-density place. So, supporters of this project are saying that this has always been a church, and there are daily events and weddings, but it is a matter of scale and frequency, and there's big differences between a church and a hotel, performance space and conference center and a wedding venue. So a church, what does it do? Um, small crowds, open daily, community events. When there are weddings or big events, they're usually a single day. Um, they often last a few hours. The purpose is generally the ceremony or the service and not the ceremony. It's not about the party. Um, they're inside, people come and go once. They don't go in and out all day, being shuttled from like different locations in the city. Uh, it's usually a non-alcoholic event, and the church that was here at least had more parking space than the one that's gonna be here. When it's a wedding venue, hotel, performance space, music space, you have multiple days, full-time. The purpose is to party. Um, you have people come and go multiple times a day. It's boozy. And in the end, you just have like a place that's, uh, you know, really sort of, I think, degrading the character of the neighborhood. So what I'm asking is to work on it more, just keep, keep, keep working on it, make it work, right? Cut it, I, I know it might not be as financially viable. Cut it in half, get agreement on the number of events per year. What does this mean? Like, occasional is not a number. Set up an enforcement mechano, mechanism for noise, and create an enforcement mechanism to avoid on-street parking. Like, is there a residential permit, parking pass, whatever, like, what can we do so that this is good for everyone and that this, you know, beautiful church gets to stay and be restored? Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Arthur Kamens. Where did Art go? He was just here. Guess he got tired. Okay, Don Palmanzo?
Good evening, almost good morning. My name is Dawn Palmanzo, 19 Hammond Plaza, and I'd like to say that with this project as it stands right now, I had a delightful conversation with Gavin and the pastor outside, it was nice to speak to him, it was informative, I hope on both sides, but living at Hammond Plaza, we have experienced development, development for the last five or six years consistently, including right now. We've had blasting, we've had digging, we've had dust, people with medical conditions that couldn't open their windows because their child had asthma or they had COPD. I mean, we've really gone through it, and I think a part of it that we have to think of with this project is the due diligence. Many of the things that I've heard have been based on the hypothetical. Well, the noise could be loud, we have noise from Newburgh, no one likes it, but it's a different county, and we were told, hey, it's not Dutchess County, it's not much we can do about it. We live with that. Right now, we're looking at this as hypothetical. We could have a safety issue, we could have a noise issue, we could have a traffic issue. What I wanna tell you is that it's not hypothetical, it's exponential. Those things are going on right now. Come and sit in front of Hammond Plaza. This weekend, we had the festival, right? We had police at two different ends of Beakman Street directing traffic. The noise that comes through, 2:00 in the morning. Now, there are certain variables that we live with. We know that we live next to a train station, so you expect a train. You expect people jet skiing on the river. You expect planes, those are things that you anticipate, but when it comes to your quality of life, especially if those things were already there when you purchased, you know what the variable is. What I will say with some of the developments, and I, not pointing out to anyone who's done the modeling on this particular venue, but the assumptions versus the practicality, the time studies, it's, it's made to fit the narrative that you wanna promote. If you actually believe that there is not a traffic problem in Beacon, did you come to this meeting before 8:00? The traffic was backed up past Beacon Street. I'm not trying to be sarcastic or get jokes almost at midnight. This, this is sincere. I'm speaking from my heart, and what we want, what I want, 'cause I'm speaking for myself and my unit, is my quality of life not being affected to the point that I have to call the Beacon Police on a regular ti- a, a regular basis. As a result of our new neighbors here on Walcott Avenue, a stairway was put in. Hammond Plaza, there used to be a cul-de-sac. Now you see certain things in that cul-de-sac that weren't there before. You have the police doing their due diligence, trying to get a little extra trafficking up to keep the, it from turning to just paraphernalia, to an actual potential crime. The through traffic from the train station, dead. We've dealt with all of this. So, when you look at it, don't necessarily look at it just as a situation where probability, possibility, look at it being worse than it is right now. And I thank you for the advocates that have been, you know, taking time to give a balanced profile on this. I agree with you, Mr. Clark, on what you mentioned about possibly looking at the purposes of this venue being maybe revisited, and I thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Matt Bloom.
Hey, Matt Bloom, 30 Beakman Street, and I just wanna point out, I'm on the board of the 30 Beakman Street condo. To my knowledge, no one from this project has met with us, as they claim they have, but let me just say that I think that Gavin's project is a great idea, you know, for a commercial zone, not for a residential area. Luckily, I don't have to go on too long because everything I wanted to say really has been said already very eloquently. I will just say, my wife and I moved to 30 Beakman Street just over a year ago, and we chose our building mainly because of its location, next to a church and a cemetery that are on the National Registry. We currently see from our living room the church, the parsonage, the graveyard, and a hill that's home to deer, groundhogs, rabbits, squirrels, and an abundance of birds. It's a tranquil scene that will be disrupted, the animals will be adversely impacted, which to me is a, is a major concern. And, you know, because things have already been said, and all the concerns with the noise, the traffic, trespassing on our property, having a cafe that overlooks not only the Hudson but our property, which we will, you know, see the light pollution and the noise from. But let me just close by saying that if this proposal goes through, Gavin Hecker and his business partners will be profiting at the expense of everyone living in the proximity of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Claire, it's Clara or Claire Reed, forgive me?
Claire Reed, 13 Hammond Plaza. I share the previously stated concerns regarding parking, noise and safety. My concern, my extra concern is that once we allow this special use permit, we open the door to something that we lose control over. We've been giving, been given a very nice description of events that may take place at this venue, and we have some non-binding assurances that even though capacity can be up to now 350, it's projected to, events to be typically closer to 100 or 200. First of all, in situations like this, we as residents have to hope for the best but be prepared for the worst. We have to understand what can happen now or down the road. We cannot place our faith in language such as, and I'm quoting, "likely limited to" and "generally limited to." Second of all, in September of 2010, Mr. Hecker bought an arts and, or brought an arts and theater venue to Philadelphia, Philamoca, and in a repurposed, I think, mausoleum building. It was offering, a venue that was supposed to offer live performances, workshops, band practices and film screening, sounds pretty similar. I don't know what assurances were given to Philadelphia, but within two years, Mr. Hecker had relocated to New York City. A quick look at the Philamoca website these days reveals that in September of 2019, it was closed for zoning and fire safety issues. Two years later, it reopened with a showing of the supernatural horror film, Mausoleum, rated R. Its current lineup includes offerings by the Philadel- Philadelphia Psychotropic Film Society. It include, uh, its offerings include, excuse me, numerous alternative rock groups, including a group called Gloss, which is Girls Living Outside of Society Shit, a trans feminist hardcore punk band. Is this what, I'm not saying it's the same thing, don't misunderstand me, but I'm saying, is this what we wanna open ourselves up to in the middle of a residential neighborhood? What we're being promised now, what we may have now, or for a couple of years, may not be what we have down the road. There are no assurances, once we open this, open ourselves to this, open the door to this, what we have in the future, and that's problematic. Just as, Mr. Gunn, you mentioned, the parking situation, it may work now, but there are no assurances once we set this in motion that those public lots may be available down the road. That kinda thing is a problem. I see this as a big problem. Thank you very much, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Carol Zakara.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am Carol Zakara, and I live at 14 Hammond Plaza. I have been a resident of Beacon for over 50 years, and lived at Hammond Plaza for the last 21 years. So, I've seen a lot of changes in Beacon over the years, certainly when I was growing up, the area that we lived in was basically shacks. So, I am in favor of new development, and I am in favor of having a nice place for the church. What, my big objection is, I feel like we're being squeezed by so many, so much development there, and the noise level is tremendous. You learn to block it out, but when you have it on all sides, it's pretty distressing. It used to be, and still is, a nice place to live. I have a beautiful view, but the music from across the river, the festivals, the traffic, I mean, I almost could not get into my development the other day because there was cops directing for the strawberry festival. I had to say, no, I live over there. Fortunately, because I've lived in Beacon for so long, I know all the shortcuts and how to get around, but I shouldn't have to be doing brain thinking on how to get around all the traffic. The traffic is horrendous, it just has gotten worse and worse. There's not a parking spot on Main Street, I mean, I just can't, I, with all due respect for your study, I lived there for 21 years, I know what the traffic's like. Claire came to pick, pick me up tonight, she said, we better walk because the traffic is horrible. So, if it's happening tonight, it's gonna happen every night. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Monica Mayer.
Hi, Monica Marr, 21 Beakman Street, which for information is right up directly across from the municipal parking lot and across from the West End Lofts. It's the blue house on the corner. I have given my full remarks in writing already to the committee, but there are a few things I wanted to highlight. No one's met with me either, but I'm not a whole complex, I'm just a single person in one house, but feel free to talk to me whenever you want. The intersection of Walcott and Beacon Street is already dangerous. I don't care what the studies say, I back out of my driveway and traffic is coming from four different directions, plus there are two turning lanes. In addition, there is not a no parking thing across the street, so with all the traffic in all that directions, and then someone parks there, it, it's, it's very dangerous for me and for the pedestrians who are also walking around there. There are school buses coming up and down that street. Now, obviously, they wouldn't, they probably wouldn't be there during the times of the venues, except perhaps the workshops or something like that. I loved that church, it's a beautiful church, they were wonderful people, I, I love the idea of culture in the area, but it's a residential area, and like everyone else, the parking and the noise is, is a problem. I have another specific concern about it, and it is because the new crosswalk that was put in directs the traffic from that side, pedestrian traffic from that side of the street over to my side of the street and directly on my sidewalk. So, people that would be coming from that venue and going to that municipal lot are all gonna be walking on my sidewalk, the full sidewalk. Quite honestly, I'm scared to death, somebody's gonna go over there, they're gonna be drinking or whatever, somebody's gonna fall and I'm gonna get sued. I'm gonna say right now, somehow, I'm telling, I'm not responsible for that. Somebody's gonna be responsible, it's not gonna be me. The, without belaboring the point, and this, I'm gonna be a little bit graphic here, since they've been, well, the additional, since the crosswalk and all the additional building and the increased pedestrian traffic, I will tell you that in the last three years, I have experienced all of the following left on my property, some on the sidewalk and some on the rest of the property, because of the increased foot traffic, I assume, and increased building in the area. Beer cans, soda cans, dog waste, food wrappers, used masks, coffee cups, some of them left in my mailbox, full garbage bags, 30-gallon garbage bags left on my property, and vomit. The rest of my comments, as I said, were submitted in writing. I thank you all for your time. I don't know how you guys do this, this is a long time, you gotta do it.
I gotta get up at 5:30, so I don't know how I do it either.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Stash Jankowski.
Thank you for your patience. Stash Jankowski, South Chestnut Street. I just wanna say, I'd like to see the project downsized, it's too grandiose, 350 is ridiculous, parking, traffic. One possible suggestion to help them financially, maybe the city can give them some kinda tax abatement, but that's basically all I have to say. And thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Stash. And the last one, Dennis Edson.
Hello, I am Dennis Edson at 20 South Cedar Street. First, I'm very excited about this project. My wife, who is a Shakespearean actor, is chomping at the bit to perform there, and I promised the community that she will make sure that they're not throwing beer cans or anything around, you know, those people, the bard. Where I live, I live right across from St. Rocco's, a lar- I imagine everyone here knows that, plenty of parties, lots of weddings, often occasionally, maybe once per month, large events. They have 12 parking spots in the back there, so I get a lot of cars parking around my area, and I can say, in the eight years I have lived there, I have had zero issues. No one, I've had no concerns with car doors slamming, drunk people walking by. I have a seven-year-old daughter who goes to sleep 7:00 PM, and I would say the fireworks from the baseball fields are more of a concern to me than St. Rocco's right next to me. A while back, we had someone break into our house, unrelated to St. Rocco's, but because St. Rocco's was there, they had security footage, and they were able to find the person. To the concern about crossing the street, again, I walk with my daughter across 9D, had no issues there, and, yeah, I don't think I have anything else really to say. Other than, like, people here bring up some very systemic issues, I don't think this really has anything to do with, I mean, we're growing as a community, and I think, Len, you mentioned earlier, that we need to start tackling things more holistically rather than like this piecemeal approach. I will stop talking. Have a great day.
Thank you. That covers the list, anyone else? Yep.
Hi, my name's Donald Aaron, resident of Beacon, here in Sport, oh, the project.
Your address, sorry.
Oh, 21 Henderson Street.
Thank you.
Got a neighbor right here. So, I feel like, like, this entire conversation's, like, really fixated on parking, and I feel like that just kind of, like, derives from the fact that parking is just an issue in this city, and it's gonna continue to be an issue. But in regards to the venue, so, I think of other examples in the Hudson Valley, I think of the Capitol Theater in Portchester, I think of BSP in Kingston, neither of those two venues have parking for the, for the venues themselves, so people have to find parking throughout the community. It is what it is. Like, the will has been invented, and we just kinda need to learn from that. I respect, like, all of these community members who have come out, like, against the project, but the fact of the matter is, like, this project is what this community needs, it's gonna bring not only culture, but it's a community venue, it's a venue for the community to come together and really embrace the pride that we have in our city, so thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mark Waist, W-A-I-S. I'm at Two River Ridge, and while I certainly appreciate the concept of a cultural arts center here in Beacon, you've heard from the masses about the concern from the very close-knit local community, maybe a thousand or so, some odd people, so I won't repeat that, but what I will express is my worries as it relates to the thirteen thousand-plus people who live in Beacon. And one is the potential burden that this could place on the police, and second is the reputational damage to the community in terms of Beacon getting a reputation of being simply because of the congestion, kind of a bottleneck from a traffic perspective, and kind of sometimes there are some communities in Hudson area I stay away from on weekends because I just know it's going to be such a hassle to navigate the landscape. So, I do worry that potential exists if this project is approved going forward. So, I concur with, I think the gentleman in the black t-shirt, love the concept and may be consider downsizing. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, yes.
Hi again, I'm Anne Marie Calucci. I live at 23 Hammond Plaza. Real quick, I just want to say, I love the project and the spirit of it. It's someplace I'd want to go. I get the need to offset the costs of it, but I don't think it's safe to have it where it is on 90 and Main Street. I do cross with my two-year-old on 90, and we've almost gotten hit. Honestly, I'm not over-exaggerating that, so I don't think that's a safe spot, unfortunately. And then our backyard will abut to sort of near where the park will be, and so I'm definitely concerned a little, or just want to know a little bit more about safety in terms of monitoring the park and then the walking traffic that could just lead into our little backyard. Yeah, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you. That covers it for public hearing tonight. We're going to keep public hearing open. What else can we address for you tonight?
I think that'll do it. Mr. Chairman, I think we'll put some written comments together in response to these good comments that were brought up by the public this evening. We appreciate those comments and obviously your time tonight going through this with us. I think we're all hearing it. We want to make sure that we incorporate these things in and understand that what we do could have an impact, but we're doing everything we can to make sure we manage to mitigate that. Notably, of course, this is an adaptive reuse. These are existing structures. We are adaptively reusing them, so unlike much of the development surrounding it, it is not a, it's a new, but it's a repurposed and redeveloped property, so we do, you know, encourage investigating that. We will, you know, address again the ADA comments. Noise, again, this is internal to the building. You know, we also have comments from SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, so there's a number of things that we'll be sure to put in writing, but we look forward to continuing this dialogue with the board and with the public, and certainly we'll reach out to those. They're certainly welcome to contact Mr. Hecker with respect to any comments, too. I know we're going to maintain that direct communication with your board, but we certainly do encourage that to try and put it all together.
Great. Thank you. Great. Here at ten minutes before midnight, next agenda item. We're going to continue our review of an application for subdivision approval. This is for a two-lot residential at 46 Judson Street.
There's still good stuff to come.
Yeah, really.
You know, there could be all kinds of good laughs, I'm saying. Don't you miss that?
Hi.
Jason Snyder with Beatty &amp; Watson representing the applicant, 46 Judson LLC. We have received the last week's memos from the planner and engineer. Well, in brief, the most significant of those items was the interpretation of the off-street parking in the front yard. If you recall, the garage was a forward-facing garage in the proposed house with a parking spot off to the side of the house between the existing and the proposed houses. So, the applicant and the applicant's architect have developed a modified plan where the garage is, the house is going to be shifted back towards Union Street to the fifteen-foot offset. If it's appropriate, can I quickly hand out the sketch that the architect has?
Is this previously submitted?
No. No, no.
Yeah, we can only review things together with our consultants when they've had the opportunity to, you know, substantively review.
We're glad you're listening to the comments.
There's that. There's that, yes, of course.
So, the garage has been detached, so the house has been shifted over towards the, has been shifted towards the Union. The garage is detached, moved back and between the two houses. So, anyways, we're going to, that may lead to some other changes with regard to grading and drainage, and it will in storm water, so, you know, we're going to revisit that with the changes to the house and the garage layout, so we'll patch up the plans and come back for the next.
Okay, great. So, John, just in terms of your review, it sounds like applicants have taken them into account.
Yeah, it seems like he's addressing my comments.
Great.
I just, and maybe John Russo might be better, but there have been a couple of public letters on this project involving street drainage issues and that sort of thing, so he should be aware of those if he haven't seen those letters.
We have received those emails, and they will be addressed in some fashion, if that's the board's intent is to address those comments from the public.
Well, we would hope that you would seriously take those things into consideration as a part of your submission, sure.
Sure.
That's our guidance.
Okay.
Anything else, John?
Yeah, so we did, or the city did receive additional comments from the neighboring parcel tonight. Mr. Flynn had submitted and marked up a map, very concerned, notes that there's significant rock out there. So, he wants to know how the rock is going to be handled, the detriment to his property, is it going to be blasting, how's it going to be removed? I know your plans currently call for a basement. Has anybody done investigation?
I don't believe we've done soil borings or any.
Just any test pits at all out there?
So, this is a neighbor's making an observation that to his understanding, his observation, there's a significant amount of...
Significant, yeah. He's even noted that when Central Hudson was installing the gas main, it took him three days to go about a hundred feet because of the amount of rock. The gas main is only thirty inches deep.
That certainly would make it difficult.
But, so that's going to have to be looked at, the drainage, you're shifting everything around. I know you were starting to do it, but please be aware, the rain gardens you had there, they're not going to work.
No, they're not.
You are going to need to do soil testing for that, but they were also, you had a larger drainage area to them than DEC allows, allows a thousand square feet, unless you start switching to some sort of bio-retention system.
Yeah.
So, but I think a lot of the comments that I have are probably going to get adjusted as they move forwards, especially if they're shifting the entire lot around.
Okay, great, thanks. We have a couple of procedural things we need to get through, but before that, any questions from the board?
No questions.
Comments? Okay.
One quick question I have is, is there any storm drainage utilities in that street?
There are, yes.
At what point do we, you know, would there be a point at which we would request like another catch basin be installed, or, I mean, I'm just wondering like when we're diverting additional flow?
You could request it of the applicant to put it in.
And we look at that, right, that's evaluated, because I just...
But right now, we're, yeah, so there's, one of the neighbors requested additional catch basin be put in on Union, more or less at the high back corner of the site, and to bring everything out when everything is actually draining towards Judson, so I'm putting a structure up a hill and trying to get everything there when there's an actual structure at the intersection of Union and Judson now that can be connected to. Is there a certain location you were looking at, Len?
No, not yet. I haven't looked at it that closely, but I just, you know, especially when there's shallow rock, I feel like some of the locations around that neighborhood that have some of the biggest problems with water management or areas where there's outcrops, like at the back of the St. Luke's Church property or just other, you know, so I just want to make sure that we take a robust look at the impacts to other parcels potentially.
Yeah, one of our recommendations was that they take roof leaders and what they can and actually bring them into the existing drainage system, so if they're not shedding off, they were also looking at doing rain gardens also. And then I couldn't tell from the layout on the plans whether they were ultimately tying in or not. There was a lot left to be determined as far as the drainage goes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so next, obviously, we want to circulate our intent to declare lead agency.
You already did that.
We did?
Yep, so you can go ahead and declare lead agency.
Oh, declared?
Declare.
I'm looking at your notes here.
I do declare, yeah. Yeah, you can declare yourselves lead agent.
Motion to declare ourselves, make this declaration, motion to declare ourselves lead agency.
Motion.
Second?
Motion by Len, second by Jill, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we can, what type of action is this?
Unlisted.
It is, okay.
Yeah.
So, we can talk about directing your office to...
Yeah, I think you're going to want the information that we talked about tonight.
About the rock?
About rock. All of the issues that were just talked about pertain to SECR.
And I think since he's adjusting the plan so much that...
We're going to want to see what the plans are.
Yeah, a little early to direct.
Before we can move forward with SECR.
Yeah, a little early to direct.
I think so.
Okay, then the next thing we can do is schedule a public hearing.
After you complete SECR.
After SECR.
Right.
So, do we want to do a secret public hearing on this?
That's up to you.
That's a question to the board.
Yeah.
We've got a lot of public hearings, but...
We can do just a subdivision public hearing.
Yeah, okay. All right, great.
And include the, you know, the secret comments in that.
So, this would be just the short EAF? Is that what we submitted? Was the short EAF?
So, it's unlisted?
So, with unlisted, the full, the long-form EAF is not required. It's up to the board whether you want to ask for the short or the long-form based on the issues involved.
I think you should consider the long form. Yeah, that's what I was leaning toward. It'll provide information as to soils, bedrock depths.
Thoughts?
I agree. Long form seems like a good, that's the way to ensure that we're to have the information we need.
Yep.
Yeah.
JC, Jill?
Yeah.
Okay. Long form?
Yeah, I mean, there was previously an EAF submitted. Was it the short form that was previously submitted?
I actually think it was long form.
Short, no.
Because it was a short, yeah. So, the request from the board is to upgrade that to the long form based on some issues that we...
Or you can ask for a supplemental narrative about drainage and...
We could, can we stick with the short form and then just give some additional information with regard to the depth of the bedrock and groundwater?
Moves that to the board.
I just think that for, you know, an unlisted action, the type, the short form is a little bit more...
Yeah, I'm inclined to think supplementary information around those specific items is appropriate. Thoughts, board?
But address the soil and drainage issues that are on the long form in your supplemental narrative.
Okay.
Good idea.
I'm okay with that. I was just going to say I'm okay with it as long as we enumerate what we need and we make sure that we get it in that supplemental.
All right. Have we enumerated it?
The concerns are focused, right? And you have to make sure that that's...
Great, so rock excavation and drainage.
Groundwater.
Groundwater.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Great.
See you next month.
Looking forward, thank you. We're going to move to the next item on the agenda, and that is the Mirbo Craig House.
I'm Ed Kellogg. I'm a partner with Mirbo, and we submitted a great deal of information to you back on May 26th, including revised site plans, responses to John Clark, John Russo's, and Creighton Manning's comments, and we've received some additional comments since then. So, we're also submitted some more detail on the building design. We've submitted SWIP reports, you know, a great deal of technical data, updated traffic impact study with a parking analysis included in that. So, what we'd like to do is Henry Thomas with LRC will walk you through the site plan changes. I'll talk a little bit about the parking as it relates to other Mirbo properties and a lot of the numbers that we've included in the parking and our approach for parking. And David Boyce with Arrow Street Architects will get into the building design. So, David, you all set?
Set.
Okay.
Henry?
Henry Thomas, Principal Landscape Architect with the LRC Group in Poughkeepsie. First slide that we have in front of you there is the existing conditions, which we've walked through before, but just to touch real quickly, sixty-four acres, more or less, bounded on the west by Fishkill Creek, on the east by Route 9D, Walcott Avenue, on the south, Grandview Avenue. The property has, sorry, David, go back one second, just to touch on, we have access by way of two curb cuts on Route 9D in front of the existing mansion as well as a couple of entrances on Grandview.
Can I have to, you have to forgive me, but it is midnight, and I do have to get up at 5:30 to get to the city for my day job, so if I might ask you to just sort of focus in on the things that, and I don't want to give you short shrift, but I don't want to go over things we've already gone over before.
Very much appreciate that.
So, I want to be able to focus laser-like on things about your application that are new, and specifically in relationship to the comments that you've received back from our consultants.
We can do that. Thank you, David. Next slide then. So, this is the plan that we had submitted previously. Essentially, all the components are the same as this submission, except that in this one, you will notice that there were a lack of detail in a couple of the future components, one being the farm, second being the cottage neighborhood. And in the proposed, or the current master plan, we've infilled those areas with data showing locations or tentative locations of cottages and supporting them with driveways and utilities. And then the farm area, we're illustrating the contents of that general proposal is to have lavender fields and sunflower fields, a barn to support those activities in terms of equipment and materials. And then down along the Mirbo Lane that runs through the property, we're proposing a chef's garden and a greenhouse, and that's the area where those kinds of activities had occurred in years past. At the main part of the property or at the main hotel and mansion area, there were a number of comments that we've refined and responded to in the detailed plan, which we'll get to in just a second. But those have primarily to do with parking and other organizing things, although the basic bones are similar, we've distributed things and refined things. Why don't you move ahead? So, again, this is the previous master plan. A couple of the comments that we got last time were concerns about parking in the front yard, and specifically, we've responded by removing parking... removing parking adjacent to the cottage in front, and that gave us the latitude to make some adjustments in the entrance drive and move it north, also yielded the ability to increase the size of the islands in the arrival drive and adjacent to it. We also had or heard some concerns with the parking that is adjacent to the large beech tree that's in the upper right part of that, drawing the crescent-shaped parking. And there was concern about the visibility of that that's on the east side of the big beech tree. So we've attended to that and then modified some other parking in response to those changes. Whoops. One more back. So proposed plan, and I know it's a little hard to see, but, so we did delete the parking adjacent to the cottage at the front entrance. The geometry of the drive is simpler and smoother and greener. The crescent has been pulled back so that there isn't parking on the east side of that beech tree, but we still have a return on that parking lot, so they're not dead end. Part of that exercise was also to reconfigure the main parking that's behind the beech tree or on the other side of that. And I think the biggest stroke there was removing what was a drive lane that had no parking on it and basically driving through the parking bays, which gave us back the width of the road and then some. Essentially, parking summary proposed now compared to the previous plan is a net reduction of 19 spaces, and Ed will speak about that in a little more detail in a moment. But those are the larger evolutions in terms of the parking and distribution there. Other planned evolutions have been refinement in the cottages, we have footprints that are a little more realistic and based on a plan. We've provided a sidewalk from the cottages to the hotel now, and to the greatest extent we could, we've got that off of the driveway and tried to make it in the green spaces. We also have added a pedestrian connection from the, both the spa and the hotel to the area of the curb cut onto Route 9. So that, those are new elements that hadn't previously existed. Go ahead, David.
Yeah, just the site plan first. So with, with parking, our approach to parking was to, first of all, try to put parking where there's already blacktop. There's a great deal of blacktop at the property, entrance circle, there's parking out in front of the, the mansion, there's parking down on the west side, which will primarily be employee parking. So we tried to, you know, say, okay, you know, where is this? I'm not sure, Mike has done the SWIP report, so we know what the, the pre and the post conditions are in terms of impervious, and that's all, that's all in the data. But then we looked at where do our guests need parking, our overnight guests, where do our spa guests need parking, where do our employees need parking, and where do our diners need parking? And it's all really driven by overnight guests and spa guests for the most part, so if we can go to the, the table. So Rich D'Andrea did a study of all of our Mirbo properties, so we have Skinny Atlas is the smallest of the properties with 34 rooms and 14 spa rooms. So everything, traffic and parking are generated by those two items. You know, the restaurant spaces are really secondary to those two. The most comparable, even though Beacon will be much larger, is Plymouth, Mass. And it's comparable for a couple reasons. It's 50 rooms, we'll be at 85 here, there's 20 spa treatment rooms, we'll be at 21. It has some more restaurant spaces. Their restaurant is mostly used by overnight guests, like our restaurant, Reinbeck, is used by local guests, local members. So we came up with Beacon, you know, this is, we're just trying to draw a comparison, but the, the fact that is most telling is that at the very bottom, Beacon will have 2.95 spaces per room, which is under Plymouth at 4.34, under Skinny Atlas at 3.62. Reinbeck is the lowest ratio, and unlike Reinbeck, we're on an island with this site. We don't have shared parking, there's not parking on the streets. If we don't provide enough parking for all of our demands, all of our guests, all of our employees, there's nowhere else to go. You know, we can't shuttle people to the train station water. It's totally the opposite of the application you just heard a couple of...
So if I remember correctly, the last time you were here, your, your application exceeded your parking requirement. Is that right?
Our...
So it's still, so I'm just, I'm just curious.
So we went from 272 spaces, so this is just a comparison of Mirbo, okay, of Mirbo facilities. It's not, it's not the code, we'll go to that next. So we have, the site plan shows 251 spaces, the code shows 233. So we, we've, you know, we've met the minimum standard for zoning in terms of meeting the parking requirements by zoning. But what this, this really shows is the ratio of parking spaces to rooms across all of our properties. And we've lived with these properties, Skinny Atlas is 22 years old, Plymouth is seven, Reinbeck is three, so we have historical experience. Unlike Reinbeck, Reinbeck has a couple of municipal lots that people can walk to.
Can I ask you something? I appreciate all of this, but how is this relevant?
This is so relevant, it is the majority of John's comments. This is probably the most important item on the site plan, is parking.
Okay, so, so John, just real quickly, in relationship to what we're hearing here, how does this comport with your observations?
Can I finish my discussion?
Yeah.
And then we can go to that? Okay, so we can go to the next slide. So that, with the parking table, so we went to zoning, and, you know, zoning says we need 233 spaces, we're showing 251, so we only have 18 extra. You know, what isn't in zoning is, you know, some of the special events we might have. Again, most of the special events will be, people will be staying there. We have 85 rooms right now, so there's plenty of space to stay there. You know, there might be a tent on the north lawn, so that's not even included here, but there's really only 18 spaces extra. But again, we're standalone. I mean, there's, if we don't have adequate parking, then, you know, the whole project suffers. So we need to just take care of ourselves on that piece of property. It's isolated. If you look at the density of parking, you know, we average about 350 square feet of paved area per parking space. That equates to about two acres of total paved area, and there's already a lot that's paved. You know, the whole Mirbo Lane or Craig House Lane, that's 700 feet long, we're widening it by five feet. So there's already a lot of asphalt there, but it's two acres on 65 acres. So it's not an overwhelming amount of parking relative to the size of the site. So we've exceeded, you know, your minimum standard, which is, which was the goal, and we also had to make certain that we had the parking where we needed the parking. We couldn't just have parking, you know, down by the creek, that wouldn't make any sense. So we needed, you know, where our customers and where our employees are going. So I think we've tried to address this. You know, we'd be happy to sit down with John and go through it more if we had a working session, but it's probably the most, you know, important item to discuss, but hopefully we have, John.
Yes, I actually agree that it's very, it was the centerpiece of my comments. And, you know, the number of parking spaces is not as important as the location of where they are in my comments. But the number is also a little suspicious because these are shared uses to a certain degree. The hotel guests are going to be some of the spa guests, and so, so by accumulating all the parking and not accounting for any shared parking discount, it seems to me we may be overparking the site. I think we could deal with that by putting the parking in the right locations in terms of the scenic quality of the building and the site, and maybe doing some land bank parking so that if you need the parking and it's demonstrated after a few months, you can pave it. But I, I was trying to say that the front yard parking in front of the spa I find near the entrance particularly objectionable. I think I've said that before.
Right, and it's there now. I mean, there's pavement everywhere.
Yeah, but that was because it was a crappy site plan. You know, we're supposed to do this to restore the historic quality, not to replicate the awful parking plan that was there now.
Right, but let's let David, you know, show you the entrance renderings, which we presented, and we've improved since then, to show that, how this parking fits in, it protects the view of the mansion, it's well buffered. So maybe we go to that, and we can go back to the discussion on parking, but this, this is really, it's critical. David?
I'm going to quickly show you the previous images, and we can talk about how we responded to that. So this was the view that we had shown last time, and one of, one of your comments was that we were blocking it with new trees, which we agree with and we have since modified that plan. We actually, because we moved the roadway a little bit, we had to shift our vantage point for the rendering, so we took new photographs and we, we moved down the street a little bit further to get the view. This is the, the proposed view, and what you see is some cleanup of some of the pines and some of the dead trees, as well as the improvements to the, the front entry drive. And Henry's going to talk about the sections along the screened parking, that same front door parking for, for the spa entrance piece, because those sections have been carefully considered. We do believe this is an accurate representation. It's hard to prove that, I mean, what we have is...
I haven't looked at the site, and this is, you know, go back to the other one, the existing view. This is the worst view of the mansion because you've moved it far enough that the trees are blocking the view of the mansion. If you go to the left side of the driveway, that's the primary public view of the mansion that I would like to see to preserve.
I agree with John, I've dri, you know, obviously not since the pandemic, but I've driven past this site for 25 years, going to work every day on my commute, and this is the, the weirdest view. You're so far north that the mansion in this rendering looks like a minuscule speck, and it's, it's when you drive past it, you know, when you're right across from it, that you're looking at it and seeing the architectural details.
The primary public view is just north of where that monument is on the south side of your driveway. It's on the other side of the driveway, you get a direct view of the mansion, it's very big and impressive.
I share your concern, I think in your, in your site plan drawing, there's that parking area that's got like a 48 on it or something, is that, like in the, if you go back to that, the, you know, the, the lots that are just north of the spa and hotel, it just, I...
40 of them along the long...
Yeah, whatever, is it a 40? I couldn't see from here, was it 40 or 48, the numeral inside the circle, but, but yeah, I feel like when you, when you drive past it, instead of the view you have now where you can look directly at the mansion, you're going to see just a sea of cars in front of it, and it's going to, it's just going to really, you know, suck the life out of it.
I think there's, I think there's three, three views that really are important. One is that view from the street, so people can see the mansion, it's not hidden away, you don't have to pay for their hotel room in order to see the mansion. It's important to preserve that for the beak. And, and then there's the view south coming from the mansion and north coming from the mansion on those big open fields.
Right.
So all three of those I commented on, but this, at the entrance to me is the most important one.
And it's true that I...
Why don't we go back to the, the photograph, David?
I lived here when Craig House was, was an operating hospital, and it's true that there was a sea of cars parked in front of it, but it was, it's not been that way for decades, and it's, you know, maybe we've grown used to the much better scenario, but that's what we've had since then.
Our new driveway is just about the same exact spot where these Jersey barriers are, and then you're driving 30 miles an hour heading south, and you're really, you're driving, you know, to get the view you want, you're looking at the best.
No, no you're not.
I gave lovingly a that mansion, I was going to go past it.
You're hearing very specific concerns from the board about, and we understand your case regarding the need by Mirbo for a certain number of parking spots. That makes sense. It really is, and it comes down to, you know, now that we're looking at this and doing it in a way that is sensitive to the views, let's talk about doing it right relative to these views that the board has raised concerns about. There's nothing here about what I'm seeing that's, that's doing anything to help us understand how you're mitigating those views. That rendering didn't do it for me, so...
Well, we can, we will, we will develop those renderings. I mean, that's all I can say. This is the first time we've had specific locations.
I understand, I understand, I, so, but, but let's make it clear, the board needs to very clearly understand how you're approaching the concerns expressed by our planner and ourselves here relative to those specific views. So...
We will, we will develop those renderings.
The best public view is from where that green post is sticking up.
Again, don't, please don't try to argue what those of us who have lived here 20-plus years consider of this very important property, best views. I know you know the property, you own it, you know it well, we do too.
I've been, I've been sad ever since they demolished the carriage house that was right to the west and north of the mansion, but I, yeah, that, those views are indelibly in my brain.
They, it's between the trees, yeah.
We, we intend to, to address this.
But it's, it's visually close to the street. It appears close to the street.
The mansion.
Not like it, yeah, not in that, that view from the north, it's that street.
Yeah, but it's an imposing building. And so it doesn't look like a recess, I mean, it's a, and...
But we want people to see it.
And we don't want to necessarily see it on a car driving by, you want to be able to see it from the sidewalk.
Specifically, it's this idea of this, the vast expanse of potentially cars, you know, in a parking lot, a number of them, because if you're doing it right, there are going to be a lot of people there that have brought their cars. You're seeing that before you see the view of the mansion, and that's the concern. If, if there are other alternative ways to achieve your parking while also achieving better views, that's the goal, so...
Right, yeah. So why don't we look at these quickly? It's also important to note that the road, the pavement at 9D is about four feet higher than the first floor of the mansion, so you're actually, you're looking down.
You're looking down on it.
Which helps us because you're looking, you're sitting in your car looking over cars, but I think, you know, Henry, why don't we show, well, just briefly, it's a point of clarification, so is the concern of the board more, is the desire to see, basically, is the desire to see the full height of the mansion from kind of the base of the mansion in its full presence vertically? Or is it even cars in the foreground of it, even if it doesn't necessarily, you know, run in front of it?
I'm thinking in the context of the cars in the foreground, not that there's, not that they're like blocking the first floor of it or anything, but, but that you just...
You just don't want them in the foreground at all?
Yeah, I mean, there is, there is a prohibition in the residential district, this is in the residential district, even though it's in the historic overlay district, that says no front yard parking. Now, you know, that to me is the epitome of front yard parking. It's right there at the entrance, it's between the historic mansion and the, and this public view from the street. It, it, you need to figure out how to put that parking in a place that doesn't obstruct the view of the mansion or feel like you're looking at a parking lot instead of a historic landscape.
That's understated, I think this has been helpful clarification in terms of where kind of perceived the, I guess, best views are. We always thought you were talking about kind of from the entrance drive looking that way, it sounds like you're looking a little bit more perpendicular.
Perpendicular, yeah, that, that super acute angle from the street is not the way you take it in. And like I said, that's what, it, it's so perpendicular that, like I said, there used to be a carriage house right west and north of the, of the mansion, it's gone, it's been demoed.
Oh, it's still there.
Is it still there? You can't see it?
It's called the mannequin.
It seems like it's entirely gone.
It's a mannequin in our, in our entrance drive.
Because it used to be very prominently viewable.
So, so our, so just want to make clear what we've expressed as far as our concerns, and again, this was two meetings ago now, that John raised this as an observation relative to front yard parking and that's view of a sea of cars. So as long as you're, you're all clear on what concerns we're expressing, I hope we can move on. Thank you.
So why don't we use one of those quickly?
Well, so what our strategy was going to be or is recommended in terms of any parking that is in that side of the property would be to not necessarily put a screen that is a big, you know, kind of a screening the dumpster kind of an approach, but to do a little bit of gentle filling and a little bit of low planting to sort of take the edge off of grills and bumpers. So in this case, it would rise just a little bit so that it takes off the face of those cars and beyond, the long view would still be there. As, as Route 9D... As, as Route 9D goes south, it's actually rising as you go past this area. So the next slide would show sort of a parked car relative to, uh, the landforms. This is getting down into, uh, the next section is just before the Ginkgo tree where, where the street-
We're down to the, the red dash lines over here, you know, south, so we went, uh, section A, section B, section C.
Yeah, it's that view right there.
Right.
Thank you.
So, and in that location, the parking is below the street much more substantially, so, uh, it doesn't require very much soil to sort of disguise the fronts of the cars or the presence of the cars and then still see over it. So that was generally our strategy, not to try to screen cars by something that would screen all views, but just mitigate their presence.
Yeah.
But isn't the, the ground floor of the mansion, the front door of the mansion at a lower height than those parking lots?
Uh-
So if you screen the parking on the parking lots, you're gonna screen the, the building which is further down the hill?
Yeah, but we do for Route 9, but, but 9D is four feet higher than the ground floor of the mansion is. So you're looking, you're looking over the cars.
No, I think you, you, you'll look, you'll get less of a view of the mansion because you're gonna mound up that, that foreground in order to cover the cars.
You see, you know, John, we can, what would be great if we could go out there and have a working session, cars, cars in front. Right now, existing conditions, you're looking over the top of cars and looking at-
I was just there the other day and I, I looked at it, I took pictures of it, you know, um, and I'd be okay with a working session in order-
I think that'd be very good.
'Cause I've, I've already drawn where I think maybe cars could go that would preserve the views of the mansion and-
That, that's what we'd like to do, I mean, it worked-
It worked in Rhinebeck, so, uh, we're, we're submitting things and there's comments back we're submitting, so it'd be good if we could sit down and just go through this.
Great, that's a great offer, thank you.
I mean, that would be extremely helpful. I think a lot of the technical data that John Russo asked for, you know, Mike is handling, we did, you know, we did, uh, test pits out there, we did 20 test pits and the soils are great, so in terms of perk tests, so. All of the engineering, you know, the water and sewer questions, uh, we need some more surveying information. We know exactly what John Russo needs, you know, in terms of short cutting these comments. Um, I think, you know, Rich has had a conversation with the DOT and, uh, in response to Creighton Manning's comments that it's crystal clear Creighton Manning has jurisdiction over the traffic on 9D in terms of reviewing and permitting as opposed to the DOT. DOT wants to be involved in terms of Seeker, so we'll continue to give them information, but, uh, I think those are a lot of the highlights, um, of all of these comments, you know? Uh, so I think for tonight, you know, we're, you know, we've still got a lot more work to do, but it would be, we would like some feedback on our architectural design, so if you can give us five more minutes, um, that will be helpful.
Well, we've got a couple other, um, sort of things to take care of, one is to, um, declare lead agency, so I'll accept the motion to, to just that.
Motion.
Motion by Jill.
Second.
Second by Len, all in favor.
Aye.
And then we can also, um, talk about scheduling, um, secret public hearing for next month. Thoughts? Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Jill.
Seconded.
Second by Len, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
And one other-
Quickly, have you, you, I don't, you guys haven't done any ARB subcommittee review yet, have you not now?
No, no.
Um, okay, yeah, five minutes.
Yeah, the, the other thing, John, we submitted the archaeological report yesterday, alright, so that's, you have that now. We also, um, the subdivision agenda item didn't show up on this agenda, but we submitted our subdivision, subdivision application for those rental cottages triangle, uh, but that, that didn't make the agenda.
We're aware of that, I spoke to Dan Leary about that earlier today, that's fine. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I read you that.
Do I?
It was in my packet.
Yeah, we submitted that the same day as everything else.
Yeah, it was just a carryover from the last time you were on the agenda because the subdivision was new, it just, it didn't make it onto the listing on the agenda, but it's, it's, that's not a problem.
So just as far as the architecture, being mindful that we still have two, again, I don't wanna, we have a long way to go with you into the future. I don't wanna cut you too short, but real brief, because we still have two agenda items and then our miscellaneous business.
I'm gonna skip over these, these are historical. Um, I just wanted to mention that we've been continuing to work to, to develop this, um, keeping, you know, in keeping with the, the site plan, the things that we talked about previously, reducing the, the, the mass of this building from 9D, making it feel small, um, and, and trying to work with, um, complimenting but not, uh, not detracting from the historic mansion, quite simply, and we have been starting to look at materials and we're collecting those materials so that we can bring them to you at future meetings.
Great.
There's in the design guidelines and the historic preservation section, um, recommended materials and prohibited materials, you gotta look at that because things like synthetic stucco and synthetic slate, uh, the, the roof I think is not a problem, but the synthetic stucco I think is on the recommended no list.
We understand that and we, we will, we will bring both, um, and I, I mentioned this to Ed earlier, you know, about 15 years ago, ago or so, our office would not do any of that. Um, the technology's improved and we think that we can actually create some pretty nice detail with that. At the same time though, we'll bring alternative approaches so that we can have those discussions.
So just be mindful, there's, our code, when it says it prohibits it, it means it prohibits it, we can't do anything to alter that, right? That's prohibits means prohibits.
That's, that's helpful information, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Stark.
I just had one, like, comment, we have other comments, I'm sure Rich and Appkin will address them, but just the long discussion that was had on, uh, sightlines of the site from 9D, one of the recommendations that we're having them do is see if they actually need two exit lanes for their driveway, uh, so that'll reduce the opening there.
We think, we're, we're pretty sure we can go to a single one.
Okay.
We did it a while ago because of stacking coming out of the site and now we have some more room, so we don't, we don't really need two anymore.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that in case you guys are, are working on your sightlines for seeing the, uh, the mansion.
Okay.
One, uh, one really quick question, will the chef garden use the native soils or is it gonna be like raised beds, do you think, or?
The what?
The garden that you're envisioning along 9D to the south of the, the hotel, is that gonna be perhaps raised beds or is it gonna be native soil? I'm just wondering if there's any thought of testing the soil for lead, just due to the, you know, the very long-term traffic, um-
Uh, for lead?
Lead.
Well, a lot of that landscaping that's along 9D is going to remain.
No, you said the farm, it's the chef's, chef's or-
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point, we had to build those plans efficiently, you know? The farm is a proposal future, so we just have to look at that.
Yeah, we haven't really looked at that, I mean, we know there were some old structures down there, you know, there was greenhouses and sheds and stuff, but, but we'll check, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Who wrote the environmental engineer?
Excuse me, next item on the agenda, this is the, uh, excuse me, the review of an application for site plan approval, small, wait a minute, where am I? Yes.
Yeah, you're on it.
Small cell wireless facility on an existing light pole and one antenna, two Flynn Red, two Red Flynn Drive, yep, aye.
Good morning.
Good morning, I'm sorry?
That's, I've only said that twice in my career, both at this board, by the way, but thank you. So I, uh, my name is Scott Olson, I, I'm from Young Summer, I represent Verizon Wireless, and what you have here before you is an application for what we call a small cell, that's what's defined by the federal laws, a small cell. It was actually presented to the board about four, five years ago, give or take. It's, uh, an application where we wanna put an antenna on an existing wooden utility pole down by the train station. Uh, it's a Red Flynn Drive, I believe. Um, long story short, we couldn't do it at the time, there were fee issues, those have gotten resolved. It's in the right of way, so it's not on private property, um, and it's, has everything to do with our plan that's been five, six years in the making to decommission our site on Mount Beacon. Um, that was one of our early legacy sites, it, uh, you can see it up there, obviously. Those sites don't work in a network anymore, so we've, because they just create too much interference and they're, they just go too far, actually. I won't bore you with all that. So we've been working in Beacon over the years to develop new sites to make up for that loss once it happens. Um, so it, there's an existing pole out there, it's 38 feet, and both Mr. Russo, Mr. Clark found the mistake that I made in my narrative. I said it's a replacement pole, it's not a replacement pole, it's an existing pole, 38 feet tall. We're putting one antenna at about the 25 foot level. Um, we've given you some renderings, photo sims to, to show you what it looks like, it's in exhibit six, we think it looks really good. I'll just go right into the, uh, I can address some of the comments-
Yeah.
From the planner?
Please.
Planners, or the engineer and planners? So, uh, Mr. Russo's letter, statement of intent, I will correct that. Um, and then there basically are, it looks like four other comments that really have to do with the plans. I spoke to our, uh, the tectonic engineering, they'll make those revisions, we'll get those taken care of. Uh, wants to make some changes in terms of, you know, show us the, uh, antenna height in terms of the, where the bottom of the antenna is to the ground level, is a 20 foot requirement in your code, we'll take care of that. Uh, and all the other, um, A and E items from that. Uh, moving on to Mr. Clark's, uh, letter, um, it, one, um, the, uh, environmental assessment form, a couple of changes there, we'll make those changes, not a problem. Uh, we'll explain why we can't be at a different location from the RF perspective. Our engineer, he's on vacation at a state, he couldn't be here tonight, you wouldn't wanna hear him anyway, given a late hour.
So couldn't be moved two poles to the south peak to be away from the harbor entrance?
You know, I, I can, oh, go ahead, it's probably a-
For the record, my name is Nika Facy, I can speak to that a little bit. Um, the power company CHGNE and they're very strict on the type of poles they'll let us attach to, it's a very strict requirement. Um, two poles south, there's an underground utility running, you can see the teleco line running on that pole, so that one is not attachable, only two poles are attachable. The one that we're currently selected on and the one directly south of it, which RF engineer didn't select because there's a lot of, uh, vegetation and large trees on the west side, so he chose the one right in front 'cause he's trying to penetrate, um, north, so that's, that's why we couldn't go on that pole.
What about the stealth components and the, I said, what about the, didn't you also have a comment about like stealth components or kind of shrouding to diminish that?
Quick as I can. Sorry. Uh, before I do that, there is, um, the issue of the meter is at the six foot level and apparently, uh, CHGNE will not go any higher. Um, if it was National Grids territory, their minimum meter height is eight feet. I personally don't understand it. We had this issue in Kingston with CHNG recently and they wanted to put the meter higher and they said, no, we're not putting the meter higher, we said we have to, and they refused to do it, I don't understand it.
Isn't it your meter?
I'm sorry, what?
Isn't, isn't it your meter?
So it, I don't know who owns the meter, but they, uh, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm more on the, the technical side of it, so it's, it's Verizon's meter bank, but CHGNE still provides the power. They'll simply tell us that the, the top height, it's six foot and under, if we say we liked, 'cause generally we do eight or nine, they're just, we want power, they just won't give us any power to the site. So they, in there, I even have a copy of it in there, they have all the criteria as to attach to a pole and it states there it has to be six foot, if not, they won't give us any power to the site.
So I spoke to, to Mr. Olson about this earlier, this afternoon, evening, I've, this point, I can't even remember when. It was sometime in the last 24 hours. Um, and I offered that if there's anything the city can do to help, you know, be part of those conversations with CHGNE to try to encourage them to change that policy, um, that we're, we're happy to do that, I'm happy to get on the phone with anybody at CHGNE, I'm sure the city administrator would, would be willing to help as well, so, if there's anything that we can do.
Start reading my meter correctly, too.
The eight foot, the eight foot, um, suggestion is a guideline in, in the guidelines, not the code, so-
Yeah.
We don't have to do it at this eight foot level, you could allow six feet, it's, it only sticks out a, a couple inches from the pole, right?
Right, and it's not gonna be on the part that's, uh, it's gonna be on the part that's facing the sidewalk, so it's not gonna be kind of on the, in the sidewalk right of way per se, you know what I mean? Like it's, the pole is right there and I, on other, I, other streets that I've seen, you actually have equipment at the six foot level and I was walking on the sidewalk and I almost hit my head.
I know, I was worried about.
But that's CHGNE.
Yeah.
Believe me, if it was up to me, it'd be like, yeah, get it out of the way, but if you can assist, great, but, uh, we would do it in a heartbeat. So, but it's the utility company. Going to the stealth thing, so we did a stealth pole on city property, uh, we call it Cliff and Willow and I forget what the street name is now, but it was right off Main Street, basically, it's the parking area.
Cross.
Cross Street, thank you. And, uh, we did a metal decorative pole and we did it because you have metal decorative poles along Main Street, city wanted it, made sense. In this case, I'm not sure it would make sense because it wouldn't blend, right, you have all wooden poles down there. So we think if you did a metal decorative pole, it'd kind of stand out, yeah, so that's-
I was thinking about some sort of shroud for the equipment or, you know, there's other ways of dealing with it.
Yeah, we can, so I think we can paint it, I, I know, and I think your guidelines talk about that, trying to paint it to make it the similar color as the pole, and I'm, I'm sure we'll be happy to do that, but, um, you know, there is a shroud.
Yeah, so, yeah, the current design, I mean, Verizon has worked very hard in updating the current design to what it is now and that's how the shroud came to be, the new one that we have. I think you asked for seeing a copy of it?
It's sort of a metal box with vents.
Right, so it's all, all the equipment is boxed into it, so there's no wires hanging and all the wires go on a, on a U guard that goes right up to where the antenna is. So aesthetic wise, everything is kind of concealed, um, it's very hard to do anything more than that, other than painting it.
I mean, it's a pretty big box, it's 48 by 24, by 26, so.
Does the thing at six feet high?
No.
No, it's, that box is 13, 14 foot up high, yeah, no one's way high, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it is relatively clean.
Yes, yes.
In terms of the wiring and everything else, I, I just know, there, there's one suggestion in the guidelines in which they have banners on both sides of the shroud.
No, so, yeah, I don't know if anyone could like pull up the photo sims, when you, I was looking at it, I'm like, looking at our site and when you looked at the transformers next to it, like the CHGNE had like a big three gang transformer, it's like, our site looked way better, yeah. Like that looked way better than existing power company stuff that was there.
I, I think in this location, it's not, certainly not as critical as it was on Cross Street where we're in the historic district and that sort of thing, Main Street. He's right, the, the poles down there do not look very attractive as they are.
Yeah, so I think, you know, obviously, keeping in context with the wood pole and working to, you know, finish paint, um, the box so that it, you know, blends with the pole itself. I'm just curious though, the six foot high thing that PG&E is, or whomever is Central Hudson, how, how far does this box stick out, does this?
So that's, that's not the box, that's the actual meter.
How, how, how far does the meter, I mean, is it, does this?
Couple inches, this, you know?
The sidewalk there is only like three feet because they put the pole right in the, on the edge of the sidewalk, so you got six feet up and you're two inches, you know, and you probably hit your shoulder at the five feet before you hit your head at six feet.
Doesn't it violate ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act? Anything protruding more than four inches is, uh, uh, below a certain height is in direct conflict with the American disability, if clearance is required.
Something that hits Central Hudson, that would be helpful, to that effect.
Am I right?
They are the worst, they, I, there, there are so many jurisdictions in power companies and Central Hudson is the least, uh, and they're the, they're the worst as far as the public information placement that I've received in my life.
Yeah, anyway, so I, I can't understand, if it does violate a code, um, and actually, uh, the Americans with Disabilities Act, that would not be a good thing. Um, we can talk about scheduling a public hearing, uh, so-
Does the board want to schedule a public hearing? Because you, you can waive it, although, given the fact the public hearings come so early, Mike want one so I can get out of here early.
Maybe you got us on a good night, sorry. We, we have the opportunity to waive it.
So on a small cell, you do, it's an optional public hearing?
Yeah, Stash wouldn't like that very much.
He's wearing a shirt, just for me, right?
Well, there, he's made his public statement.
You had one on, on the last small cell you did.
We did, yeah, so, um, I'll accept a motion to waive the public hearing.
Oh, you did have one.
Motion. We did?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, well.
One up by, had some beach class?
Well, yeah, it was a different situation.
Yeah, yeah.
So, motion to waive by?
Kevin, seconded by Len.
Seconded by Len, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks. And then, um...
You do need to authorize circulation of notice of intent.
Yeah, so we will do that. Motion to authorize circulation of?
Motion.
Intent to act? This is intent to act as lead agency?
Yes.
Yes. Motion by Len.
Seconded.
Seconded by Kevin, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, I think that does it for now, right?
Yeah, we have to get a coastal assessment form. We'll get that in there. We'll provide a formal response to both of the letters, and I guess be back next month.
Thanks.
And maybe go reverse it, reverse alphabetical order. We're Verizon.
We'll turn it upside down.
Good night, thanks.
Thank you.
Just one thing. John, do you want to have resolutions available for next month?
You want to authorize draft?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, otherwise, you're not going to be able to take any steps forward if they can, if they address everything.
Yes, okay, great.
You won't have any way to move forward.
So, they're still here. So, a motion to authorize?
Secret documents and resolution.
Secret documents and resolution to adopt?
Motion.
Both at the same time?
Seconded.
Motion by Len, seconded by JC, all in favor?
Aye.
We did that somewhat in absentia.
Okay, I'll call.
And let them know.
I mean, today.
Uh, yeah. So, oh, grief. Next item on the agenda, last item on the agenda.
Love to be it.
This is our review of an application for subdivision approval, two-lot residential, 67 Grove Street, submitted by Dawn Brill.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And thanks for staying.
Good morning.
Mike Bodendorf, Hudson Land Design, engineer for the applicant. While this thing's loading, and it may not, I'll just continue to talk about the project. Two-lot subdivision located at 67 Grove Street. There's an existing dwelling located on the property, and we are subdividing one additional residential lot from the property. We've received the comment letters from both consultants. We don't have any issues with them. No need to discuss if you don't wish to. And I'm just here to ask the board to declare their intent to be lead agency and possibly set a subdivision public hearing at the next meeting.
Great. So, at this point, John or John, anything you want to highlight?
I, I think, as long as they're okay, they're minor comments, generally speaking. And I ask for a street tree, as I always do.
Yep, we appreciate that.
Yeah, we have no exception.
And the more chain link fence you can take down, the better.
Oh, please.
Sure.
Personal crusade. Take the chain link out of Beacon. Any other thoughts, board? So, I'll accept a motion to authorize circulation notice of intent to act as lead agency.
Motion.
Motion by Len.
Seconded.
Seconded by JC, all in favor?
Aye.
And then, the other request was to schedule a public hearing.
If you're gonna do that, you should also authorize secret documents.
So, we'll do them one at a time. Motion to direct Jen's office to prep negative declaration, secret documents.
Motion.
Motion by Len.
Seconded.
Seconded by JC, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then, motion to schedule a public hearing for next month.
Motion.
Motion by Len.
Seconded.
Seconded by JC, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What else can we do for you?
Thank you very much.
Fantastic.
Good morning.
And to you.
Jesus Christ.
Phew, this has been a doozy. We got five things on miscellaneous business? Holy mackerel. Are, are all of these you?
Yeah.
These extensions?
Yeah.
Okay, so, first one is a request for a 90-day extension of site plan and certificate of appropriate approval for 16420 Main.
Yes, that has been already filed. The subdivision was filed, but the timing of the filing after it had been signed was, was going to be after the expiration, so we submitted preemptorily the extension. So it's a bridge extension, so as to have been able to file that. But that has been since filed, and we have submitted the certified copies to Amanda.
Okay. I'll accept a motion to approve this 90-day extension.
Motion.
Motion by Len.
Seconded.
Seconded by JC, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next one is another 90-day extension of amended site plan and preliminary and final subdivision for Ferry Landing.
Uh, that one is in Amanda's office for your signature, so that one has been fully approved by the city. Uh, it's right there. It has already been signed. Now we can file it with the county. So it's a bridge extension, so to file that map.
So, they already signed it, so do we need to act on it?
Uh, yes, because the timing of the, yeah, so Jennifer, we had a...
Yeah, he and I had a conversation about this earlier. I, I have no objection to the board granting the extension. I think that this will all get straightened out, and this circumstance will not come to you again.
Oh, okay.
So you have to approve an extension.
It's the resolution calls for us to give the, the planning secretary?
I need to take a look at the resolution.
A certified copy after it's filed, so we have to get an extension of timeframe in the resolution, even though the plans are approved and signed.
No objection to the board.
Motion to approve 90-day extension for amended site plan approval and preliminary and final subdivision approval of Ferry Landing.
Motion.
Motion by Len.
Seconded.
Seconded by JC, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next one, consider request for 90-day extension of preliminary and final subdivision approval, 52 Denings Avenue.
Same, same exact circumstance. This one, the county health department, so we just got a full sign-off by your consultants last week to the check set. County today, county health signed off. Now they require you to get a sign-off before signing off. They have their own check set process now, so they signed off today. Those plans will be to you within the next 48 hours for filing, but everything else is done. The board has reviewed all the comments.
Motion to approve this 90-day extension for 52 Denings Avenue.
Motion.
Motion by JC, seconded by Len, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That was it. Thank you. Good morning.
Okay, I'm gonna try to get us out of here before 1 o'clock. And this poor, poor applicant, you, you had an opportunity. I'm sorry. Come on up. Actually, maybe I shouldn't mention it.
This is my, my introduction to the city, and you're gonna know my name many times after I've spoken.
Okay, that's good. So, forgive me, this is 140...
I think there's somebody before me, maybe my car parts didn't show up.
No, 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 there was. She, she requested that she...
Goes first?
No, that she actually go before everybody else, and we granted that. And, and then my colleagues...
I just felt, come late, there was no way of getting out of it. I canceled the flight even.
Yeah, oh, we could have avoided that.
This is, this, you're the person that we'd called, tried to get at the beginning of the meeting, right?
Yes.
Did you try calling?
No, no, not on the phone, but we, we were hoping you were here, so we could just get you in and...
Oh, I came about.
Done and out. So, I'm looking at this certificate of appropriates, it's labeled on the agenda, 149 Main, right? And then I click on it, and I get 145.
That's probably my stroke. I live at 149, it's, for building 145.
Oh, so, it actually is different from 149, so what, explain what...
It is 149, 151, yeah, I think.
No, no, I mean, the actual, even though it's labeled 145, it's different from what we looked at for 145 earlier. So what are we looking at?
I'm 145. So basically, you already approved, this is one of Joe Donovan's buildings, it's existing retail on the front on Main Street, it goes all the way back to this residential apartment, so it's under complete construction right now.
So hang on, I'm really confused.
Is it, we do the...
I can explain, I can explain. We saw earlier, right next to this, 145, it's like the side building to the utensils building.
It's an alleyway.
The utensils building is 145, and we saw earlier, 145A.
This is like the alleyway, so Main Street's up here.
Okay, so we saw 145, I remember it.
But what did she come in for? Is 145 the old bank?
This is, this is, this is what we saw earlier, John, and this is what we're seeing now. That little sidebar.
It's the same building, it's the kitchen utensil building.
That's the little sign. This is what we're seeing now.
We had to sign an application on the little annex.
So why does this...
For that stupid little thing, okay.
Because they're both 145.
They are. So the, so the lady that came was the one with the little weird thing?
The sign?
It's my building, I'm actually looking at the sign.
She was just doing the sign for the...
Got it.
So I want to paint her, this building.
Okay, you're doing the paint, she's doing the sign. Okay, you want to paint it?
This is what you should look at, right here.
Perfect.
This?
Yes.
So the front of her building, I want to paint, the side of the building, and all this. And what you guys already approved was black.
We did?
Go back to Brooklyn, take your black paint down there, yes.
So what you're recommending, or what you're suggesting then is, which one?
Screamy white, I think I said, I, I, I'd know the name if I saw, I can't see what these are. I called it out.
You've got West Highland White, Ivory Lace, Moderate White, Navajo White, Simply White.
White Chocolate, it was white chocolate.
This is for, those colors are for what?
So this is just for the color?
Yes.
Of the second floor?
From lots of white. So basically, the front of her building, which faces me, it's an alleyway with some beautiful graffiti, all the way down to her house, where the balcony